I call to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
Okay, tonight's invocation will be presented by, given by Reverend Kurt Snare of St. Timothy's Lutheran Church. We'll all stand, and then after the invocation, turn and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Gracious Creator, mighty God, we thank you that you have allowed us to live in this city. We ask that you would help us to be good stewards, to treat each other with respect and love, and that you might be glorified in this city and all who work and live here. Guide now our leaders that you have called with your wisdom, that they might make wise decisions. We ask for your presence here with us. We ask all of this in the name of the most high God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to 2023, everyone. I hope everybody had a happy new year and a happy holiday season. We've got one announcement before the meeting begins. Item 19 has been deferred to February 14th, and, I'm sorry, that's, item 19, that's correct, and that's Resolution 2023-22, has to do with a parking lot conditional use for rusty bellies at the Sponge Docks. So we'll hear that in February. Let's go to public comments. Is there anyone here for public comments this evening?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live at 802 Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor down the street. Last month and a few previous months back, there was an agenda item regarding a small residential development proposal that was located on the north end of Lake Tarpon off of Keystone Road. The property in question, I looked at it on a Google Map quest on the computer, and I noticed on the north end and on the south end of the property in question, there were significant easements on the property. And I also noticed that the attorneys that were wanting to develop this property, I see them frequently at other board meetings, Tampa Bay Water, for instance, at their monthly meeting and so forth. I question that possibility that these attorneys of such may have a bifurcated intent for this piece of property, in that appearing initially to want to put in, I think it was 50 residential homes, small lot sizes and so forth, but reserve a quadrant of that property on the northwest corner adjacent to that easement, I feel as though, based on the fact that these attorneys frequent water board meetings, that they're after the water underneath this property. And they haven't fully disclosed that, and I feel as though these men are in contempt of their ultimate purpose for this property. I think they intend on establishing a well point. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Geddes. Next, please.
And Commissioners, Robert Rockline, 755 North Lake Boulevard in Tarpon Springs. First, let me say, Happy New Year to all of you. I wish you and your families both happiness and health, and want to thank you again for your service to our city. I know it taxes both you and your families. Speaking in regards to one of the hearings tonight, number 16, but not specifically about that, just the peripheral effect of development in the area, the venue along Mellon Street between North Jasmine and Keystone is, you know, it's still creaking up in volume of traffic almost on a weekly basis. I waited tonight for about 12 cars to turn at the stop sign before I could continue south on North Jasmine. I had asked the previous board, I believe, probably close to a year ago, if the city would consider repainting the double yellow lines that are on Mellon from back and forth, because there is a crest that defeats the sight line there, there is a curve, and with this development going forward, the North Lake plat, it had some increase of commercial traffic in that for that, but now it's gonna ramp up, I'm sure. There's a little vestige of a double yellow line closer to Keystone, the eastern edge, I don't know if that was done by the county or somebody else, and of course, there's double line on North Jasmine going up and down, but that's kind of eroding little by little. And I know there's plans for sidewalk and other, you know, rehabilitation there, but that double yellow line on Mellon before something worse happens, because I've seen people adapt and correct themselves when something was coming the other way, and I was party to that a couple of times, but as the cement trucks and the lumber deliveries and everything else come, it's likely to go up. So even if it's just a, you know, a simple line, if you get a foul ball sprayer or something like that, but if somebody from Public Works could just take a look at it and give their professional opinion, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Rockline.
Thank you.
See management.
Yes, I have that.
Okay. Somebody will be in touch.
Chris Robowski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Happy New Year. So I just wanted to give you the update on Mr. Clay Colson's case, and his continuing to try to save the 74 acres currently owned by Walmart that will someday soon be a park. So the clerk of the court, that's Ken Burke's office, Pinellas County, issued Mr. Colson a document that gave him something known as indigent status. Mr. Ken Burke has somehow conveniently forgotten that, and he sent a status report to the court, to the Second DCA, stating that he's not gonna file anything for Mr. Colson until he pays his court fee, which he doesn't have to pay. Now, this is the same case, the same case that he was issued this indigent status. So this is really, really beyond the pale. So if you've looked at the motion that Mr. Salsman filed in the Second DCA, and then Mr. Colson's response, you will know that Mr. Colson is going to prevail. So all of a sudden, they decide to move the go-post a little bit, and just say, oh, well, we're not even gonna accept that document, because he didn't pay his court cost, which he's not having to pay in the first place. There's a lot of funny business going on here, so you might want to look into it. You can make this thing go away, you know, you can settle this case with Mr. Colson. He's a reasonable man. I just wanted to make you aware of that. So either the Second DCA is gonna have to enlighten Mr. Burke that he has to honor that agreement, or Mr. Colson's gonna have to remind Mr. Burke that he has to honor that agreement, that he does not have to pay that filing fee. So that's where it stands right now. That ain't normal. Something odd is happening. So I just wanted to make you fully aware. You might want to take a look at that or speak to your attorney about it, but it will be resolved, but it's gonna take even longer now. So they're just dragging out this case that they want to get over so fast, they can barely stand it, as fast as that stay was shot down. That ought to tell you something. Courts don't generally move that quickly. So we keep moving forward, and we will prevail. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Robowski.
Elias Skarnikou Skatzegi, 1482 Hillview Lane. I've got a couple of smattering of things to talk about, and I'll just be direct, and I don't think there's any harm in coming up with the random strange ideas that I do. I've been thinking a lot about the industrial uses that are scattered amongst downtown, and how it really interferes with anything being walkable, and how we could, like, wait until it becomes convenient or profitable for whoever the landowner is to convert that to, like, actual usable marketplace, or literally anything that's not, like, large blight in the middle of our grid. We have light industrial and industrial land that isn't occupied. I don't understand why we can't, like, in, not eminent domain, but really, like, you need to move to this other part of the city to continue doing what you're doing, but, like, this, this is not an appropriate use for the space where it is. People are, people are driving too fast down the street. Martin Luther King in Alt 19 should have raised crosswalks. All of the sidewalks need to be leveled out. I think they're really beautiful with the bricks, but it doesn't make sense, it's not accessible for one, but it doesn't make sense for a sidewalk to basically be an undulating thing that allows cars cuts, cuts into every single entrance. There has to be some kind of cohesion or separation of car paths from pedestrian paths, where they don't have to run so concurrently, and they don't have to use the same space. Cars don't need to be able to turn into every single lot. They can go back through alleyways and be directed, instead of having to be able to cut in front of people using the sidewalk all of the time. I went to Epiphany for the first time this year, and I thought it was very beautiful, and I really was stuck on the fact that Tarpon Springs is stuck to me. I grew up here, and I don't really want to leave, and I find it quite annoying, because many people have told me that I should look for, go find what I seek and look for it elsewhere, go somewhere else, or that I shouldn't care about where I grew up. And it's really stuck on me, just like rice and beans are stuck on me as a childhood staple, like, I don't know what I'm supposed to do but care and find beauty in what there is. And of course, I'm always gonna think more change is good if it's catching up to the stasis that was holding something rotten as the status quo. I, I really hope we can imagine a future together where we have shared responsibility of the upkeep of our public spaces and the city, like, as a functioning mechanism that goes beyond just the commerce, the different commercial people, and whoever the underground network is, but we, people can be here and live here, and it's worth caring. Our importance shouldn't be related to how much money we have, or how much land we have. Have a good one.
Did you want to wrap up? Take a couple more seconds to wrap up, or, okay. Thank you, Mr. Elias. Your comments are always appreciated.
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue, and some interesting words there that I heard, because it was part of my theme also tonight, hope, 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 hope for a good year ahead. I do want to say thank you to all the city staff, and all of you guys, and ladies, everybody who's been involved, but the boat parade and the snowflakes in Heaven Park, and the Epiphany, everything seemed to flow so nice, and it was beautiful. My only thing, and it's not with you guys, it'll be with the Greek churches, what's with the food trucks, and nobody cooking Greek food? No moussaka, no pastizo, no souvlakis. Okay, that's, 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 that's a side thing. Okay. So in regards to hope, I'm gonna read a little Psalm 24. I like this one, I know I've read it before, but it's 1 through 6. It's of David, a Psalm. The earth is the Lord's and everything in it, the world and all who live in it. For he founded it upon the seas and established it upon the waters. Who may ascend the hill of the Lord? Who may stand in his holy place? He who has clean hands and a pure heart, who does not lift up his soul to an idol or swear by what is false. He will receive blessing from the Lord and vindication from God his Savior. Such is the generation of those who seek him, who seek your face, O God of Jacob. So, just to do a little catching up, Mr. Robowski happened in passing mention, and the stay was rejected. In city on December 21st, Mr. Salsman filed a motion with the court to request the city as a respondent, stay any proceedings till the conclusion of your investigation. I've been looking online, the clerk's website, we've been looking and looking and looking, and behold, last night, bingo, there it is, the order denying, filed on January 9th, but executed on December 29th. So 9, and then let's see, the 29th, so you had 30, 31, and 9, 11, take out a holiday, 10 days. Why so late for the public to know? And I don't know what the timeframe on any aspect of appeal for you, whether it's a 15-day or a 30-day, but it sure cuts you off, just like it cut us off when they slammed our appeal and they gave us a rehearing, but we had to do it in 15 days, and they executed it the day before Thanksgiving, and we lost five days minimum before anything could be done the following Monday. So I have suspicion about how the way this court has been doing things. It says it was done in chambers, but I have doubts of whether those three judges actually got together and spoke about the case, or if this is just Mr. Ramsburger just trying to pass it along. If you look at the way they rejected our appeal, many times they say, in the efficiency of the court, we will move on, in the efficiency of the court, because they know they were wrong, and they don't want to have to admit it. So they're saying, oh, okay, well, we'll just move this along, let another court tell them that they made the mistakes, because you know, most judges don't like admitting they made something wrong. So they'll just pass it to another court for another court to say they got it wrong. And we are filing our appeal with the Second District, has to be in by, I believe, the day after Martin Luther, the 17th, but we will have it in in time. And I would ask that y'all consider filing your stay subsequent with ours, such that the court gets notice of your intentions on that regard. Otherwise, they won't know about it, and you know what goes on after that. Thank you.
No, I, we've got an agenda item with the agreement for litigation attorney services, and I was gonna ask Mr. Salsman at that time to give us a snapshot of where we are, and I'll bring this, this question up as well. So thank you, Mr. Delakis. Are there any other commissioners, I'm sorry, public comments on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have anyone.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jacobs, we have one email to be read on the record.
That's correct.
Go ahead.
This is from Tom Coolianus, 1250 South Pinellas Avenue. Mayor Commissioner's staff, good evening. A couple of months ago during the meeting, when Commissioner Eisner was reading emails that indicated staff had been working with certain individuals on projects without public knowledge for a few years, I was reminded of how things had been done in the past. This caused me to speak out to reflect my feelings of vindication. Also feeling vindicated, as my service as mayor 35 years ago had been a subject of certain former elected officials at commission meetings during most of 2022. And speaking out and feeling of vindication for all these months of negative comments, I mentioned something that had occurred over 40 years ago about Mr. John Terrapini. After time to reflect over my comments, I feel that I was doing to Mr. Terrapini the same thing, or the same type of thing that was being done to me, that I felt was wrong. Thus, this made my comments hypocritical. For that, I would like to apologize to Mr. Terrapini on the record. I would hope that, as former elected officials, we can work together to offer our positive assistance based on experience of service when requested. Let us all come together for the betterment of our beautiful city. Thank you, Tom Coolianus, former mayor and commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Okay, that ends public comments. Let's go to the consent agenda. I'm gonna read through these. Item 1 is attorneys' fees. Person, Cohen, Mooney, Fernandez, and Jackson, invoices 2905 and 3034. Number 2, special events. A, Sunset Beach Concert Series. B, fenders for first responders. C, movies in the park. Number 3 is award file number 230061, which is a single-source purchase of 2022 Chevy Silverado flatbed. Number 4 is a, that's a truck, by the way. Number 4 is increased file 220027, single-source purchase of Chevrolet General Motors Original Equipment Manufacturer Parts and Services. Number 5 is review of renewal of file 220001-Q-JL Maintenance of Public Restrooms at the Sponge Exchange. Number 6 is award file 230085, single-source purchase of public records technician services. Number 7 is award file 230088, single-source purchase of Caterpillar Original Equipment Manufacturer Parts and Services. Item 8 is increased file number 220067, jingle source purchase of, single-source purchase of mental health services, resources. Does any commissioner wish to pull any of these items from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull 5.
5?
And 3 and 4.
3 and 4. Any down at the right end? No? Okay. Let's go ahead and have a motion on 1, 2, 6, 7, and 8.
Motion to approve 1, 2, 6, 7, and 8 of consent agenda, January 10th, 2023. Second.
Okay, are there any public comments on any of these five items?
Black's 514 Ashland Avenue. From what I read about in the backup, you're needing to get a records technician because of so many records requests coming, big ones, and we know about the ones that Loeb and them have filed from, you know, and all, so. And I just want to point out, I have no problem with doing this, because it's needed, but cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. When y'all were talking about approving Carlton Fields and the 160,000 y'all talked about later, y'all had said, oh, well, the mayor said, for what we've spent already to get this behind us, and at one point, I think you quoted over a million, million and a half dollars in staff and other expenses, legal expenses, all this stuff. Now, another $45,000, all because a previous board had personal interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. Does any commissioner have any comments on any of these items?
Yeah, I have a.
Go ahead.
A comment on, actually, item 2B. Is that allowed?
Go ahead.
In looking into it, I think there's a regulation, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that whichever 5013C that we deal with in a charity capacity needs to be registered within the City of Tarpon Springs?
Yes.
Since the 5013C, in this particular case that we're dealing with, is a Rotary Club, does that, as far as I know, the Rotary Club was, was formed in Palm Harbor, but I'm not exactly sure.
No, it's a Tarpon.
Is it a Tarpon thing?
Yes. They've, they've, it was from before, yes.
That was my only question.
Yes.
Sorry.
It's been around for a very long time, this one, anyway. Are there any other comments? We have a motion and a second. Comments are out of the way? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Item 3, Mr. Commissioner Eisner, you pulled that one, right?
Thank you, Mayor. I had this conversation with the city manager on Monday. We just keep purchasing vehicles, one after the other. I don't have an issue with purchasing the vehicle if we really need it, but we don't really get a good explanation of, of, is there another vehicle that can handle this? In this presentation, there was no, there was no year of what the vehicle we were replacing. I later had to find, find out it was an '04. If these vehicles don't have any way of being repaired, what resale value do they have? So one of the things that I was bringing up, that we spoke about, and that's what I wanted to share with the board, is possibly looking into leasing and not holding these vehicles until they're worthless, because in the next discussion, which is gonna be for, each of these vehicles, we have to service, and we're authorizing 30,000, and then we have Janine coming before us and saying it's 45,000, and then it's 60,000, and then it's 80,000. And this has been my pet peeve, that we are getting so involved in not only buying the vehicles, but servicing the vehicles, that I said at the next budget meeting for next year, I know there's very little I could do at this point, but I need to keep, I'm gonna keep bringing this up every single time we go through this, because we're spending a just great deal of money, and I don't know if it's the wisest way to do it. So that's my big thing. I know we need a flatbed to move equipment around, but I would really like to know if, if there are any other ways to handle this. The other thing I asked for was a write-up to know all of the vehicles, not on a daily basis, I don't want to know that the water truck has gone out, blah, 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 but these trucks that we have sitting idle, doing nothing, and we may be using it once or twice or three times a year, and we're just maintaining it, we're buying it, we're maintaining it for that rainy day that we might need it. I need a breakdown, and I asked for this, so it will be coming before us, to have a full breakdown of all of the vehicles that are just sitting idle somewhere in town, and how much use we're getting out of it, not how much mileage, but how much use we're getting out of it. So I just keep seeing this, I don't know if it bothers everybody else, but it's bothering me. I see just a great deal of money being wasted, so that's my comment.
Okay.
I'm not against this.
No, 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 let me, let me finish. I've got something to say, but I want to hear from the other commissioners first. Actually, let's go Uh, actually, let's go to public, that's the way you're doing it, uh, public comments on any, on this item at all? Uh, Mr. Jump, are there any public comments on this item? I should've asked for public comments on the, uh, rest of the agenda items, but I did not. But is there anything on this one?
Line at this time.
Okay. Um, commission comments, commi-, uh, Vice Mayor Lunt.
I actually tend to agree, uh, with a lot of the points that Commissioner Eisner made. It took me considerable time to find out that it, we're talking about a 2004 F-450, and the reason for purchasing another vehicle, we're like, parts aren't available. Well, if we're holding vehicles until parts aren't available, I mean, that might've been a good idea when vehicles ran for 90,000 miles, end of life, et cetera, et cetera. But 2004 vehicle, it's 2023, that's a 19-year-old vehicle. We shouldn't have had that vehicle in our, in our fleet for, for anywhere near that long. Um, so, um, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Eisner, both on, on looking at different ways to manage our fleet, and also, when we do things like this, more information being provided than we just need to replace this particular vehicle, not its year, its mileage, um, the catch-off rates, the parts aren't available, just not satisfactory to me, that sort of thing.
No, I, I understand. Thank you. Um, I agree. Commissioner Carr?
Sure, I'll make a comment. Um, I mean, this is the same request that we've been asking for years, so, let's keep your heads up on that.
Commissioner Coolias?
Well, it seems to be a request that's needed. I mean, we'll see that the funding's coming from Rogan Streets and a couple month, you know, a couple months closer to the end of the budget. If, you know, Rogan Streets is short a certain amount of money, we'll understand why. It's a request that's needed, so I understand that the vehicle's old as well.
Um, well, I, I think that's a good idea. I mean, every couple of years, we go through this, honestly. I, I asked about it as a commissioner, and I was provided the, uh, asked for the list of vehicles that we had, and then how many we had in the pool, the service pool and things. And, and that was readily provided, and the philosophy behind that, I know, um, Chief Young's not here tonight, but, uh, police vehicles, there, there's a long history of that. They're replaced every seven years, I believe, and every seven years, we should have a brand-new fleet. We're supposed to, I think, buy seven cruisers, there's about 50 vehicles in our fleet, seven cruisers, uh, per year to keep up with that replacement, because that's that break even as far as the cost of maintenance versus a new one. But I, I think that, uh, we should get a, a report for, not just us, for, for the benefit of the residents, because I, I know that's one of the more common observations that you hear, is all these new trucks driving around town and things like that. But there's a reason for that, too, and, and I understand what you're saying, uh, Commissioner Eisner, as far as buying a truck and it just basically sitting there for, what, you, you don't know if that's the case, or you don't know if that's not the case, and you'd like to have a little more information. So, I, I think that, you, go ahead, uh, say a few words about this.
No, I, I, I just wanna say, um, I, I've heard you over the nine months this has been aboard and working. We've got a new fleet manager, not new, he's been here a little bit, but when he took over, he had a lot of things to do to get his mechanic, he had a lot of things to do before he could get to some of these things. He knows, he knows all the things that this board's been asking. He has ideas about, um, the fleet and doing a lot of things you're talking about, and that's, that's something he is getting on. Like I, I'm setting up with Commissioner Eisner, I'd be glad to set up with any of you a, a tour with our new fleet man, and hear his great ideas. He was a, you know, he came from within, had left us, and loved it here and came back. When the fleet, all his position came over, had a lot of ideas back then that maybe weren't listened to. Um, but he has an idea of a lot of these things you've talked about. We're beginning on them, and he knows that we have to have them ready for this upcoming budget that's coming, because this, this board has made that. And if any of you, um, I'm already set up for Commissioner Eisner, we're gonna work on a date to do that and walk through, but you will be seeing differences on him on, almost everything you mentioned. He is gonna work on a plan and reports and have availability of all the information you've asked him for. So, we've heard you, and, and we have got the guy in that position, Mr. Vaticioni, um, that'll be able to carry it out and get you all that you wanna see for these vehicles and what you're gonna wanna see before we get anything approved in the budget. They know what, what, what you're gonna wanna see, what reports and those things. And to go back in the past times and see what vehicles shouldn't be here, shouldn't, and a plan of how we gotta purchase these vehicles, and what plan do we use? Can we go back, we've looked at lease plans before, they haven't panned out as the better way to go, but that doesn't mean they aren't now. So, so all these things are in the work. We've heard you over the nine months, and, uh, we'll be working, and you'll start to see those things.
No, I, and I think that, I don't know that, um, unless some commissioner wishes to speak up, um, someone wants to speak up. I don't think anyone's saying, let's drop what we're doing to put this, you know, presentation together. I think it
No, no.
There's timing for that, and, uh, on the other hand, I, I think Vice Mayor Lunt's got a, a good point is maybe, because I was wondering about the mileage as well, um, how much, how many miles do we have on these vehicles and things like that. When, uh, we, we were asking for something, some of them are, um, mentioning what the replacement vehicle is. Some of them don't say what they're being replacing. But it would be nice to know what the, uh, replacement vehicle is and how much mileage that one has on it for buying a new one. I think that's what you're getting at, is that right? That, that would be as a minimum, shouldn't take a whole lot of effort.
No, no.
So, okay. All right. Is there anything else on this item? Okay. We have a motion to approve, item three, please.
Motion to approve item three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Coolias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Item four, Commissioner Eisner.
Yeah, this is just added to what three was. We're changing and adding another $8,000 or $9,000. This seems to go on at each and every meeting. I wanna just investigate whether we should have maintenance agreements within the lease. So, I see the vehicles over at Furman Chevrolet. Um, I, I just wanna make sure that we're getting our bang for our buck. This, when you add this along with the cost of these 60, 70, and 80,000 dollar vehicles, it's grating on my nerves. That's all I wanna say, so.
Okay.
I, I wanna see if it's worthwhile to do it this way. If it is, fine. If it's not, uh, we should be leasing. You know, I was just driving today out on 19, and there was a, uh, Mason truck, and it said leased by Ryder. There's leasing agreements galore. And they may be beneficial, I don't know. Where we hold it three years or four years and flip them, um, you know, they're, they're nowhere near the cost of ownership and taking depreciation and then going and selling it at a, you know, public auction for dirt cheap, and we get nothing out of it, so, I think that's it.
All right. Uh, other commissioner comments, commi-, uh, Vice Mayor Lunt?
Um, yeah, I, the only thing I additioned before that I noticed was, uh, pretty much the same verbiage in the, in the justification. I, because of this particular one, was curious as to what specific repairs our fleet couldn't do. I noticed there were some really minor ones on there, and, and I'm going like, so, in my mind, it brought up more, what are the capabilities our fleet department as far as repair? You know, and, and we're increasingly buying OEM services from a dealer rather than repairing it in-house, which is why we have fleet maintenance in the first place. And I just, I'd like more information when this kind of stuff happens as to what repairs those literally are and why we can't do them. And should we be taking steps to be able to do this kind of repair?
Would that be able to be answered during one of those tours and?
Yes, and we'll, we'll work on it, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Coolias?
I have no comment.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine. I, I think as, uh, city manager said, on specific questions, is what our capabilities are versus, um, the advantages of a leasing vehicle could be accommodated at the fleet location where this, this repair work's being done. And, and then, um, and then at the proper time, we'd have a little more information as far as, uh, the presentation, the philosophy behind it and everything. Commissioner Eisner?
I wanted to dovetail off of what, uh, Vice Mayor said. Some of these, uh, invoices, and just by price, 1,300, $53, $100, $79, $49, $1,213, these can't be very difficult-type repairs. So, they should be done in-house, I think. I mean, it doesn't total up to a lot, but these are, um, stuff that we should be able to do in-house.
Get those answers for you. Um, is there a motion and a second? You're not objecting to this item?
No, I'm not, I'm
Okay. Is there a, a motion and a second to this item?
Motion to approve item five?
Second.
Was that item four?
This was item four, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion to approve item four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, it's item four, uh, increased file 220027-N-AM, Single Source Purchase of Chevrolet GM Original Equipment Manufacturer, Parts and Services. There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Coolias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Okay, item five, Vice Mayor Lunt.
Okay, so there is a, a recommendation within this that says, um, we need to decide on whether or not to approve another year of funding this or condition the funding on renovations of the bathrooms. I, I haven't had the time to go down and personally inspect them, but just going by the photos, there's, there's no way that I wanna continue paying for that. It needs to be renovated. They're in visibly deplorable condition. And if this is representative of, uh, you know, what the city wants to maintain, I, I, I don't think it's up to snuff, so that's my only comment. Uh, we need to make it conditional on, on these being renovated.
Do you, do you wanna make any recommendations, or do you have any observations?
Yeah, let me, let me bring Tom up, because he's been working over the years, especially with this issue of the, the renovation issue, um, and what's been going on with them, and, uh, and, and why we say we need to put something in here, um, to make sure they uphold what they have told us. And, uh, I know they've recently, in the past two weeks, had about a $4,000 problem that they've been working on, um, to do before they can do the renovations and stuff. So, why don't you update on this year? We usually come up with some kind of issue with this thing every year, but bring the discussions and what, and, and what the recommendation is to put in there, um, about seeing a change within a certain amount of time, or possibly revisiting this before the board.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I've been dealing with this for quite a few years now. Uh, yeah, I had spoke to the new owners, as we all know, they, they come in last year. And, uh, when I presented about updating, uh, renewing this over here, I did bring the, up the, the issue of the condition of the restrooms. They've been clean, but they, they definitely need upgrading. And I actually got an email back from them, uh, beginning of, uh, December, stating that they will be starting, which they have, starting doing some tile work, and they promised this work will be done sometime mid-March, upgrading the entire bathroom.
Okay. Let, let me just say something. Um, the, this is, we're talking about the Sponge Exchange now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wanna just clarify that. The, the, the family that owns it's had it for about a one, one-year period, and I know they put tremendous amount of effort, uh, into, uh, making repairs that I would consider more of safety issues and, and significant material degradation. They corrected that, a new deck, they worked on the sponge boat, some other concrete work, steel work, and they're continuing on this. I, and, and I know that this is something that, uh, is there. I think you said it's clean, but it's, it's, um
It, it's in need of upgrading, definitely, definitely, yes.
And I, I, and I think you're suggesting, I think you mentioned that they're gonna be starting at least on some of this beginning in March?
Well, actually, they said they'll be working full-time. I think right now, they're starting some tile work, but they're hoping to have it completed sometime March.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I would like to do is give them an, uh, an opportunity to make some improvements before we become, uh, I don't wanna say critical, but of the condition there. I just, I know that they're trying to make some improvements, and, and I, it wasn't an inexpensive piece of property to purchase, and, and I think they've done a lot of nice things down there so far. So, I'd, I'd like to give them an opportunity.
Yeah, kinda the rationale about a reevaluation in six months to make it done. Again, they've got a serious problem with the pipes underneath, that I know they've had, I think, people out there three times in the past, two or three weeks, until they get that piping, the clogging. If they put in new stuff right now before they get that problem solved and fixed, obviously, all the new, you know, there, there could be a disaster. You can't do it until you fix underground, and there's plumbing rules. We verified, um, the, the, the times that they've been out there trying to find out what in the ground, and until the, so, why we said the six months as opposed to the three, they've gotta get a handle on that, and they're working on it presently in January. I don't think they're quite here, so, as opposed to the three, why the six? Again, they, they can't start renovate that thing until they get whatever the clog is, because an eruption will destroy everything they've done. But, but there needs to be, they need to know that, you know, we're looking at, we're gonna come back and evaluate that, and if we don't see the proper thing to put the taxpayers' money in, then we'll review it. But that's why in the recommendation, we recommend to approve the reevaluation in six months to see that they've met what, what they've admitted in writing to us that they're gonna work on and do. But there are circumstances now why they can't, why they haven't been able to get started in December and early January on this process.
Okay. Why don't we, uh, hang on. What we'll do is, um, I'm gonna go to, uh, that was the introduction with Vice Mayor Lunt. I'm gonna go ahead and go to public comments and see if there's any public comments, and then we'll come back to the commission comments.
Sure.
Uh, are there any public comments on this item?
Here at Lax 501-4, Ashland Avenue. I hear the faxes you're hearing, and you probably know a little bit more than I, just reading this, but I do have history with this particular issue. We've always gotten kinda promises. We agreed to the agreement, and somehow the promises have excuses later that they didn't come about. So, don't, not knowing the people, I'll say they're honorable, their intentions are honorable. So, I would only say to protect yourselves, and when you make your motion, yourselves and them leeway, think about how you wanna craft it such that it is dependent on them fulfilling what they're saying to do, but in the meantime, not constricting them in the funds they would receive. So, maybe instead, what is it, 7,500 by 12, what is that, like 1,500 a month? Uh, I'm sorry, my math right?
Six and a quarter.
Say again?
Six and a quarter.
All right. So, instead of six and a quarter each month, you give them half. Once they fulfill their obligation, you give them all the back money you've held up, and then you keep moving on forward with their regular payments. So, again, I'm not questioning their honesty or trustworthiness, but you have to look at it as this is a contract, and you wanna make sure your concerns are fully protected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone on, attending online at this time.
Okay, and I'd already checked with Ms. Jacobs before. The only, uh, write-in comment we had was the one from public records. So, uh, let's go back to the commission. Commissioner Carr, do you have any comments?
I've got no comments on this. I mean, the, other than the bathrooms do need to be updated, I know there's some updates that were done a few years ago, and it, obviously, the updates weren't that great, because they looked a lot better a few years ago, I remember. Um, so I'm happy to hear that the, the property owner's willing to work with the city on upgrades. I've seen other upgrades at the Sponge Exchange. I've seen some new tiles go down the floor, uh, where you walk in the public areas, so, uh, it does seem like there's money being invested here. So, I'm happy to support this tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agreed with everything Vice Mayor, uh, Lunt said. But this is not something that can be done with just tiles, I just gotta tell you. There was not one thing that I looked at in the pictures that looked like they're salvageable. Uh, not the partitions, not the toilets, nothing. These need to be fully gutted, um, and redone. I understand, I have no issues waiting to get structure done before you put the amenities on it. I'm okay with that. But my big question, and I had this conversation with the city manager, what are we paying for? Uh, this 7,500 and 625 per month, is that for the paper goods? Is that for cleaning? Is that for, um, any repairs that go? None of this gives me an explanation of what this actually goes towards. So, it's like, oh, if we're paying for paper goods, I may not have anything to say. Okay, you're gonna supply paper goods, then we're paying too much. If it's going towards cleaning, I have no schedule of when they even do a cleaning, so I don't know how to gauge that. So, there was a lot of missing information for me to make a decision. I'll go along with it for a six-month thing. I know there, they have issues there, and I know they only own it for a year. But I need, this is embarrassing. I'll just be honest with you. I said it to the city manager, I wouldn't use this bathroom. That's how bad it looks, so.
Okay. Commissioner Kulias?
I agree with the Vice Mayor and Commissioner Eisner. I mean, the bathroom does need to be renovated. I have a couple of questions regarding, you know, are we? And I would be interested in doing some type of good faith in paying what the amount is for six months. And if we don't see some type of, you know, good renovation, maybe stopping the payments. But this is probably a regional bathroom for, what, forty, fifty years? And I do have, you know, a question. Once renovation does start, I mean, we're basically paying them to upkeep a bathroom that needs to be renovated during the same process. So, I'd like to see some type of, you know, good faith on both sides of the city as well as the property owner. Six months in, if we don't see some type of significant changes, maybe stop in the agreement. Because we do need the bathroom for, you know, regular visitors in town, but just want to make sure we both hold our ends of the deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me just offer a little backup and maybe answer a couple of questions. First of all, what are we paying for? What we're paying for is the right to allow the public to use the bathroom, period. Doesn't matter, paper goods, upkeep, nothing. If the owner of the sponge exchange says, "I don't want the public using this bathroom," that's the end of the story. That's what the six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month or, what was it, what's it come out, seven-thousand dollars a year? What was the amount on a year?
Seventy-five-hundred.
Seventy-five-hundred.
Seventy-five-hundred. When I was city manager, that amount was nine-thousand dollars. Twenty-five years ago, it was nine-thousand dollars for the exact same amount. And it got almost to the point where, and it was not the ones that had owned it that just sold it, but a generation prior to that. And we used to joust a bit, and I actually offered that the city would maintain it if we were given nine-thousand dollars a year by the owner. And of course, that didn't work out. So, we continued paying to help upkeep. And literally, it was the right for the public to use the bathroom. And also, it was before the bathrooms were in place at Hope Street. We've got those public restrooms. But since then, there's been more and more people visiting the sponge docks. I mean, if we want, and then also, we do have the public bathrooms at the Marina as well. So, the one solution is to, long-term, we talk about parking garages and things like that. Long-term would be to plan another public bathroom down there somewhere. Don't ask me where, but somewhere down there. And that would be the one solution. The other part of this, of course, is that long, long time ago, before you see the exchange in its current condition, it was owned by the Tarpon Springs Sponge Exchange Association. I don't know the correct title of it. But the bathrooms were not in the back. They were actually on Dodecanese Boulevard. And those were public bathrooms. Anybody could go in there. There was for the sponge boats, sponge divers, tourists. It didn't matter. They went in there. So, when the sponge exchange was remodeled, they placed those bathrooms in the back. They were only for the patrons of the sponge exchange, in other words, the stores. And then, because we, many of the businesses did not have facilities because of their age, including ADA, we had to do something down their way, and it preceded me as city manager. So, I know everything that we're talking about. It doesn't change what the current conditions are. As far as I'm concerned, I'm very receptive to whatever the commission wants. All I'm asking for is to recognize that the current owners have only had it about a year, and they've been working continuously to try and make improvements. And I'm sure this is on their list somewhere. I can't tell you where it is. I haven't spoken to the owners at all. But we do need bathrooms down there for the public, and that's what the six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars does. It just allows us to have the public use that bathroom. That's it. So, are there any other comments?
Yeah, I still, I mean, I understand that, you know, that the Kukinos have only had the sponge exchange for about a year. And that the bathrooms, obviously, were in great condition when they bought the property to begin with. I understand that we're paying, you know, whatever it is, six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month or whatever, so that the public can use those bathrooms. The point is that the bathrooms right now are presenting a not-great look for the city of Tarpon Springs. Never mind the sponge exchange, but these are where our tourists go. If they're in the sponge exchange, if they're in that area, they don't always walk up to the Marina, they don't always walk down to Hope Street. They're in the sponge exchange, they're sign this is the bathrooms are towards the rear, et cetera, et cetera. So, my concern is not really so much about paying them to share in the maintenance of these facilities. It's that these facilities are degraded to such a point where it's starting to be an embarrassment for the city to offer them. And I think, I don't really care about the money so much. I care about the aesthetics that this presents to our tourist trade. And I think we need to work with Nick and Patty to get this done as efficiently and effectively as possible. Not eight months down the road, or a year, or when we do our budgets next year. I want to hear about, well, we have plumbing problems. We haven't done anything. That's not an acceptable solution. So, I don't know what we do. I mean, we don't have a leverage point, but one of us needs to go down and talk to Nick and say, "Look, Nick, this is, needs to be done now."
No, I don't, I think everybody agrees with what you're saying. There's not an issue there. It's just, there's a limit of what we can do. I think going down there and having a discussion with the family is a very first step and an important step, and that should be done. I don't know what their plans are. I don't even know if they're aware that we're even talking about this item tonight. I don't know. And maybe what we should do, let me, does this expire? This contract, the agreement expires this week. I saw that it expires January tenth. Is that right? So, today, so the timing is perfect.
Yeah.
If you want to extend it for three months and then revisit it, six months, I think that's what the option is right now, and then come back and revisit it three months?
I want to extend it for three months with the definite.
That's fine. And then we have more information. Like I said, I'm open. My only thing is just to recognize the ownership of the exchanges.
Oh, yeah, I understand. I don't even mind if I'm the one that goes down and talks to Nick. I mean, he's a decent guy to deal with, both with his wife and the family, so, but it needs to be done.
Right. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and have a motion to that effect in a second, and then approve it and get on with the meeting?
So, you want a motion to extend it for three months?
Right.
And with the condition of having a conversation with Nick and Patty?
We'll come back with, reevaluate it in three months, I think, and then whatever we have. I'm sure there'll be.
And we've had that preliminary talk. Tomorrow, we will have the talk from what came from the meeting and what we expect to see in three months to renew it further than that. We'll have that conversation tomorrow with them.
Okay, that's the motion?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes. Okay, thank you. That ends the consent agenda. It's seven-twenty-eight. Let me see what we've got. Our rules of procedure require us to shift over to ordinances at seven-thirty sharp. Ordinances and resolutions, and we've got six of those this evening. And I'm just trying to look at, look over what we've got right now that could go. I don't think there's anything that could go very easily within a, within one minute. Let's just hang on for one more minute, and then we'll just shift on over to the ordinances and resolutions. We're going to continue on with item thirteen, which is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one. Mr. Salzman, if you could read the ordinance by title, please?
Ordinance twenty-twenty-three oh-one, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida. Amending the city of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article seventeen, Public Art Program by revising the definitions, amending the Public Art Committee membership, revising the powers and duties of the Public Art Committee, revising the provisions for public art juries, revising the Public Art Committee procedures, revising member removal, revising the artist selection methods and criteria, revising the bond provisions of the Public Art Fund, and revising ownership of works. Providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That is ordinance twenty-twenty-three oh-one. Read by title only on first reading. Second reading will be held February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Salzman. City Manager, of course.
Yes, before I introduce it, I want to assure all you that this was a very in-depth, thorough process that was gone through. And I want to thank Mr. Joan Jennings, as chairman in the Public Art Committee, for working with us, which my team included Diane Woods, Paul Smith, his active role, he's on vacation there. He would have been here tonight because he was a very active role representing me and planning and Renee. We worked very long and hard and thoroughly and hashed many things over to bring this forward to you. The positive changes we see in a public art ordinance. So, on that, I'll have Renee introduce it and what we're bringing forward to you tonight for the changes.
Thank you. This is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh-one, an ordinance amending our public art ordinance. As the city manager stated, this has gone through several workshops and reviews, quite a long process with various staff and the Public Art Committee. I do, I'll just kind of go through the, just the very highlights of the ordinance. I'm really going to have to rely on Ms. Jennings to probably answer some of the more specific questions. So, the ordinance includes, you know, correction of some outdated references and terms and procedures, updates to our procedures and including the definitions, some of the membership, types of membership, the ad hoc membership, procedures for removal of members, artist selection methods, the Public Art Fund and ownership of the artwork. So, updates to the powers and duties of the committee to expand the scope of their annual reporting, plan and budget requests. There were changes to the maximum visual accessible to accommodate better visual accessibility of artwork such that by specifying that it can't be located on public rights in a way that where the speed zones are over thirty-five miles per hour. There were amendments to the standards for development and redevelopment, specifically to revise the review criteria for the developer-proposed art. And then ultimately, there was an increase in the, you have two options with the public art fee, with the public art requirement. You can either build an actual or commission an actual piece of art as part of a project, or you can do a pay-in-lieu into the Public Art Fund. In the past, the, if you were building a piece, the fee, the multiplier was one percent of the total construction cost had to be set aside for the art. If you did a pay-in-lieu, it was a quarter, three-quarters of a percent to pay, so it was more efficient, so to speak, to pay. That, and so that is being increased from the three-quarters of one percent up to one percent. So, that's a very high overview of the changes. The Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this at their last meeting and did recommend approval. There were two conditions that they recommended, or revisions, I should say. The first was that any landscape art, which that, I'll let Ms. Jennings talk more about that. But any landscape art would have a requirement for maintenance of that art to run with the land through a covenant for maintenance filed in the public records. And that the ownership of the artwork be looked at by a copyright or patent attorney to determine proper language to be included. So, the first one of those, the landscape art, the maintenance requirement is really, really already addressed in section two-ninety-six. There's already a requirement for art to be maintained, and that's provided for in the ordinance as it is now. So, I don't know that it needs to be specific to landscape art, but that was a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board. So, with that, I will stop. The, I do want to just note that we will be advertising the corrected title that was read into the record tonight prior to second reading. It was advertised for tonight with a slightly different title, so I just wanted to get that into the record. So, with that, I'll stop, and I'll answer any questions that I can on the development side. And Ms. Jennings is here on the more intricacies of the public art process itself. Thank you.
The advertising, is it going to cause us to do a second first reading, is it?
No, no.
All right. Let's go to public, well, Ms. Jennings, you're getting up. If there's anyone here that wishes to answer, what we're going to do, Ms. Jennings, is go to public comments, and then the commission will be asking questions. We'll have a motion in a second, then we'll have a discussion among the commission, and then we'll make the vote at that time. So, are there any public comments, please?
Thank you. David Ballard Geddes, Jr., Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. I do have a quick question, more of a concern. As far as landscape art is concerned, I'm not quite so sure as to how specific that is as under section two-ninety-six, where it would require a patent attorney? And I heard something about a bond necessity on such artwork as labeled as landscape art. I'm not quite so sure that I fully understand what's taking, what's being said. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Geddes. We'll get an answer for you when Ms. Jennings gets up there with the commission. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments, remote access?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Let's go to the commission for questions. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Carr?
I've got a question about the thirty-five mile per hour and then the preceding sentence.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, please. Ms. Jennings?
I'm not sure who could answer this one. So, it comes down to the excluding, so maximum visual accessibility to pedestrian or local vehicular traffic, excluding highway speed zones over thirty-five miles per hour, and excluding locations or roadways leading or close to such highways, such as to constitute a safety hazard. So, my question is if there's redevelopment on U S nineteen, which would constitute probably anything that, it's going to be a requirement with redevelopment to have some type of public art there, you then lose the opportunity to have public art in that area of the city. Does that, can I understand that correctly? So, there's not a desire to have any public art along U S nineteen, say, in the public shopping center, for example, where there's probably more visitors than anywhere else in Tarpon Springs. You lose the ability to do that.
The concern was along the highway. So, in other words, actually, city manager LaChorus brought up the, you know, the point, you know, in terms of police strategy for, you know, public safety. You don't want people that are doing fifty-five to seventy miles an hour to say, "Oh, go look at that." You know, so it's actually along the highway, and it is a safety issue.
I've got, I think, a completely different approach to this one. So if you have a piece of public art that's on a property, or a mural of some sort, or something along those lines, a lot of properties offset off US-19. I agree, you shouldn't have public art in the right-of-way of US-19, but if you have a piece of property that you're redeveloping in US-19, it'd be great to have a piece of public art there as well, too. So there's not much debate, I just don't agree with that one, that one section, and I think that's something that we need to strike for that very reason. So example, publics, for example, is set way back off US-19. You've got plenty of other areas for redevelopment where that could additionally be there as well, too.
But that's not in a 35, a 35 mile an hour plus zone, then?
It's, the address is US-19, though.
Yeah, but it's not affect, it's not, doesn't have those kind of speed limits.
US-19 does, that's 55 miles per hour, right?
Right.
So then you're, you're missing the opportunity to put public art there. That's what I'm getting at with that. So if, I think the way of getting there would be to putting it in the right-of-way of any highway that's over 30 miles, 35 miles per hour, considering to be flexibility to still utilize public art for any redevelopment along US-19 that's set off the road. And I think that would do a lot better for the city as a whole.
Well, if you look further into the ordinance, you'll also see that any developer-proposed art has to be approved by the committee. So if somebody wants to do something in the, in an area or a situation that you're suggesting, they can just bring it to the committee.
But then the guidelines, you, so you have to be careful because it's ordinances law then at that point. You can't just decide, well, we're going to bypass what the law states.
It's not bypassing it if it's not affected by the speed limit.
So what my recommendation would be is that this would be clarified, Renee, to have something along the lines of any highways that are over 35 miles per hour, the public art wouldn't be in the right-of-way area, but you'd have the ability to put it on the piece of property.
Can I back up just one sec, just to have a full discussion? So it, you know, under the, it says artist selection criteria, and it says the following criteria at a minimum shall be considered by the Public Art Committee in the selection of artwork. And then you have this list, and that's where that says maximum visual accessibility to pedestrian or local traffic excluding highway speed zones over 35 miles per hour and excluding locations or roadways leading or close to such highways so as to constitute a safety hazard. I mean, I think that, I think that gives interpretive ability to the, to the Public Art Committee to say in a situation like you're talking about, if the public shopping center or whatever is redeveloping, and there's, you know, an area that's, you know, accessible through the, you know, the internal public access, you know, that it's, you know, such that it's really not going to be a visual, you know, hazard driving down the highway, or someone's going to catch someone's eye. I think they have the ability, the way it's written, to make that interpretation.
Renee expressed it better than I did.
I appreciate that, but I think it's pretty clear here. I think there's an opportunity to refine it a little bit further so that the future boards are, understand the intent of the Public Art Committee and what the intent is from staff to put all this effort behind there. So I just don't want to miss that intent
Sure.
for an opportunity here in the future. Thank you. I'm in agreement with everything else. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, ma'am. There's two things in this that I have a little bit of an issue. Does it state anywhere, I know it says on maintenance for down the road, but what if something becomes non-maintainable, where it just is destroyed, corroded? Is there any stipulation in there? Who pays for that? Who has to correct that?
Well, it's written into our Public Art Committee budget to have the maintenance of all the artwork.
I understand that's maintenance, it's keeping it clean, shiny, or whatever it needs to be, but act of God, I mean, I don't know, I know, I'm just saying, if it does not hold up, what happens? Is there any onus on the develop, you know, the developing, or does it just come from the art committee?
It would probably come from the art committee. That would be, because
So you would have to replace it?
We are obligated to maintain any public art projects in the city.
Okay.
And I think that in the first place, if we put something outdoors, it's going to, you know, implicitly last a long time in the elements. You know, like the mermaid on the bayou, we have that, you know, looked at regularly so that it doesn't corrode. You know, we just, we just redid the wood on the storytime bench to make it as waterproof and sunproof as possible. So, you know, we do our best efforts to maintain existing artwork and to select artwork that will stand up. Like currently, we're working on a Black Heritage project, and it consists of a lot of images, and the material that contains all of the images is specifically graffiti-proof, scratch-proof, you know, it's meant to be outdoors, and it's meant to hold up.
Okay.
But it's just, it's struck by lightning, all bets are off.
Yes. I understand. If anything struck by lightning, it's pretty much history. The other thing, and I know I've brought this up to you before, I'm strongly into a consideration if a project's under a million dollars, that there should be incremental charge for that.
Well, that was something that came under intense discussion.
I understand, but I'm not in agreement that it has to hit a million before there's a art fee put in. I think it should be incremental, so I wanted to make that a public statement.
Okay. Now, we actually, our first revision had it $250,000 and under, but I think given today's economy, it'd be hard pressed to build a dollhouse for under a million dollars. But, you know, it's, it's, you know, realistically, you know, like, for the longest time, we were told that Flagship Bank didn't reach that benchmark, but it did, and they, we got, you know, a contribution from them. But, you know, the thing is that something, most development projects are going to be a million dollars and up. I can't imagine, you know, a major development that would be under that. But the thing is that, you know, Tarpon is becoming saturated and built up, so the likelihood of, you know, having these large developments happen is decreasing. So we're basically cutting ourselves off, and it would also, you know, discourage developers from coming to Tarpon, that was one of the points of discussion we had, if, you know, they know that they were going to get, you know, hit, if somebody was just building, say, a, you know, a small house or something like that. So as I said, we had long, serious discussions about all of that. So, you know, the provision was put in that if we do have a project that's approved by the Board of Commissioners and the mayor, and we don't have the funds to do it, then we can make an application to the city for the shortfall.
Was there a discussion to make it incremental, 750 to a million, a million to?
No. The benchmark was set at a million.
Good. That's where I would go with this, but.
Commissioner Coulass?
I want to thank staff and the Public Art Committee and Planning and Zoning for just reviewing it all, and Commissioner Carr did bring up a good point with just the semantics of words. I don't want to miss out on the opportunity of being able to put some public art in a 15 mile an hour parking lot, you know, it's set 300, 400 feet behind US-19, so, and those words shall be considered or all included, so happy to support it all.
Okay. I, I don't have any questions. I'm going to have a few words to say in the discussion. I want to reiterate, Ms. Vincent, your opinion is the issues that Commissioner Carr brought up are taken into account in the current language in terms of your opinion?
I mean, I believe they are. I have no problems between now and second reading, you know, seeing if we can make it a little clearer. But, I mean, I think it's there, but we'll look at it again. Twenty-first, second reading.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you. Would it be reasonable to
Sure.
approve this on the first reading, take a look at that for the second reading, and come back with an opinion with Ms., our second reading is February 14, I believe?
Yes, sir.
And your Public Art Committee, the next Public Art Committee is when?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Well, there you go. We'll have an answer at the second reading.
And to address Mr. Geddes's question.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thappas and oranges, they're two different, two different items. They're not connected at all. Okay? Give me any other questions?
Can I just add to the record regarding Commissioner Eisner's, you know, question about the value in the 1 million? We did have a lot of discussion about redevelopment being, you know, going forward, that's going to be the lion's share of what we're going to be looking at, and we have, you know, a lot of structures that don't meet current building code, they might be in flood zones and don't meet FEMA. So from a redevelopment standpoint, we were concerned about lowering that threshold, you know, in those redevelopment, you know, because when you come in to do a redevelopment project, you're automatically going to get hit with building code issues if you happen to be dealing with FEMA as well. There's, so, and those, those drive up the cost of a project already. That's going to get captured as part of the overall value, but we were just cognizant of, you know, hitting another one of, you know, that was some of the discussion, I just wanted to frame that a little bit around the price point of dropping it down versus leaving it where it is.
Yes.
I've got one other question. Renee, this is something I've asked in the past, so multifamily development applies, single-family home developments do not apply?
The creation of a subdivision itself and the site construction is subject to it. Once it's platted and you're building individual homes, individual homes are not subject to an, you know, the 1 million dollar, so it's the initial construction of a subdivision versus, you know, we can't, you know, it's, it would be virtually impossible to, you know, to monitor, you know, individual, single-family homes on platted lots that have existed for, you know, in some cases, 100 years in this town, so.
Yeah, but if a developer is developing the whole neighborhood, though, let's say, for example, they're coming in and developing the whole neighborhood, not just the utilities portion of it, that would be the difference, right?
The fee would, the calculation is based on, would not include the value of the homes because you don't know when they're going to be built. Developers generally don't come in and spec. I mean, sometimes they do, but they're not going to build, you know, 35 single-family homes and spec those out. You know, they're going to come in and an individual's going to put a contract to have a house built, you know, by that developer, or they may just buy a lot, and it may be, you know, somewhere else, you know, built by somebody else completely. So that's always been the threshold of, you know, it's the site plan, you know, the subdivision creation itself, all the site construction, everything, but the individual homes, as those come through for permitting, do not get, are not part of the calculation.
Okay. Just for clarity, so it's roads, development of the subdivision itself?
Yes.
Retention ponds?
Yes.
Landscaping?
Yes. Cumulatively, everything that goes into it.
If that's under a million dollars, then there's no
Correct.
payment, okay. I just want to make sure that the board is aware of that.
Correct.
If there's any issues.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion and a second?
Prove with additional verbiage to clarify the miles per hour above 35 miles per hour.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Vice Mayor Carr?
Nope. I just want to say thank you for all the hard work. I know this was a bear to get through.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I could, the same thing the Vice Mayor said, thank you for putting some effort behind this. I know there's a lot that goes behind that, behind the scenes, so, and we just vote on it short-term.
And the whole committee worked on it, as well as staff, and I do want to also thank Pat McNeese. She was, yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Eisner?
Just thank you. And I always thank you, Joan.
Yes. You're welcome.
I obviously want to thank Mrs. Jennings and the entire Public Art Committee, Ms. Woods, Ms. Vincent. Also wish to thank City Manager because he was at the receiving end, a lot of the ideas.
They're being charitable.
The incremental funding was not foreign to me, it had been brought up some time ago, and my solution was, well, buy the, actually, I think it was the City Manager, don't take this the wrong way.
Right.
But the City Manager told me, he says, this is what they want to do. I says, well, buy them off, tell them you'll offset it in the budget. So I think that's, actually, that's exactly what's going on right now, so I want to to
I guess I shouldn't tell you, but that's exactly what I was hoping you'd do.
And I want to congratulate you because, quite frankly, this was a very complicated ordinance to revitalize, revamp. I know we've struggled a great deal with this in the past with the acceptance of whether public art was actually important. I think we all recognize it's important. I think we want it to continue into perpetuity. I do know there's probably some remaining questions, issues, such as the, who replaces artwork if it's hit by a truck and totaled or something along that line. Those are questions that could be worked out in the future, but as far as an ordinance goes and the condition that this is coming into us, I've read every word of it, I think it's a good ordinance, and thank you, Ms. Vincent. I know your office is the one who actually
Yeah, I had very little to do with this, actually, but Ms. McNeese and Paul
Well, take the credit anyway.
Yeah.
All right.
Not here, so you take the credit.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Coulass?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mary Luhesus?
Yes.
Oops.
Okay, thank you.
They said Almuses.
I'm sorry. It was just
I didn't say yes?
Yeah, you could. You said yes, good.
He's been around a little bit since in 1950.
All right.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I didn't even realize what I did.
Too much joy, too much joy. So, all right, item 14 is quasi-judicial. This is a, an application for the Sponge City Brewing Site Plan. Mr. Salzman, if you could read the title, I'm sorry, the ordinance, resolution, excuse me, by title, please.
Resolution 2023-05, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 22-128, requesting site plan approval to construct a 620.75 square foot covered patio on 0.36 acres, more or less, located at 501 South Pinellas Avenue in the T5A South Pinellas Avenue transit zone of the Sponge Docks and community redevelopment area, special area plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. If we can give the instructions for quasi-judicial and then swear anybody here that is for this particular project.
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established by the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant, applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant.
Would you like to swear anybody in that's here?
Anyone who's going to speak, please, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Vincent, the applicants are here, I see them, okay. Is there anybody here in addition to the applicant in the city, of course, that believes they're an affected party that are against this project? I have to ask that. Okay, I see none. Has any Commission had any, Commissioner had any ex parte communications that they'd like to report? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. City Manager Corus, I'm going to Yes, Renee? Ms. Vincent, proceed, please.
Thank you. This is application 22-128. This is a site plan approval for a project known as Sponge City Brewing. Project is located at 501 South Pinellas Avenue. It is in the Smart Code area and the T5A South Pinellas Avenue transit
It is in the smart code area in the T-five-A South Pinellas Avenue Transit Zone. So the existing building has been there since, I believe, nineteen-fifty-six. It was originally a, a gas station or auto repair building. I think through time, it's been used for various other things since then, a vegetable stand, and it's been vacant for quite some time. So the applicant has been in process of renovating and, you know, basically doing an adaptive reuse of the structure to, to put in a brewing facility. So the, the, what's, what's before you this evening is actually for, it's really a minor expansion for outdoor seating in the back. It's a covered patio area, but, and it just barely tipped the threshold to be in front of you as an actual site plan versus an administrative review by the technical review committee. So it is an expansion for six-hundred-and-twenty square feet of a covered patio in the back of the property. Again, this is the location, South Pinellas Avenue, the north street is East Oakwood, this is Santos Isles, so this, the site here. So the existing building, again, is just this little, you know, it's like it's like thirteen-hundred square feet, and then you have the, you know, the existing canopy over the, the structure on the front. It's pretty much, all the paving is, is in place, it's been there for many, many years. This is the area where they want to add a covered patio area. This is all natural back here, there's nice mature oaks, this is being left alone. So just kind of a view from the back of just, you know, basically a patio structure, kind of like a lean-to type of structure on the back for outdoor seating area. As I said, this is an adaptive reuse. As such, it doesn't trip any real thresholds for, you know, major improvements to bring it up to a full code with the smart code, so the existing parking and everything really functions as is. So staff does recommend approval of the site plan with the following conditions. These are our standard conditions. Site construction plans have to be consistent with the approved site plan. Details for any new site lighting, you would have to comport with the Land Development Code requirements in section one-twenty-seven, and the site plan will expire within one year if a building permits not applied for. The Planning and Zoning Board did review this and recommended approval by a vote of seven-oh at their last meeting, and there was one member of the public who did speak in favor of the, of the project. So with that, I will stop and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vincent. Are there any questions from the commissioners, Vice Mayor?
I have no questions, one comment is an excellent addition to that. Thank you very much. I'd much appreciate sitting out the back than sitting next to all of the nineteen.
Okay, Commissioner Carr, any questions?
Yeah, Renee, so this is just a covered patio we're approving, right?
Yeah, yes.
All right.
It just, it tipped a threshold of increasing in the, the footprint of the, you know, so kind of an abundance of caution and, you know, by me, but I'm like, let's go through the full process.
Okay, I've got some comments I'd like to make, but...
Comments.
That's my only question I have right now.
Questions? Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. I didn't see any criteria. Is that a missing?
So because of the, the, it's not, it's not hitting a threshold, you know, greater than fifty percent of the existing structure, the site plan review criteria, the smart code criteria really don't come into play, so it's an adaptive reuse of the existing structure. So it can, it can remain, you know, non-conforming for parking, landscaping, everything. So it, it hits a threat, it doesn't hit that threshold, so those criteria are not included, so.
But in the attorney's speech, it speaks of, you know, that we do have this quasi-judicial hearing and it has to follow criteria. I was just a little lost because I keep looking around and I'm not finding a criteria that justifies to it, so...
Okay, point taken. I'm, I'm going to have to ask you that, that, you know, to follow me that it did not trip a threshold. It's in the staff reporting that it does not, does not meet the threshold of an expansion of that structure where those criteria would kick into play, so.
Well, that's usually how I...
Yeah, understand.
...make my decisions, and if I don't see it...
Understood.
I don't know what I'm going up. Not that I'm against this at all, it's, it's a gimme, it's, you know, for me, but...
That's actually useful information for me because, you know, as we try to, you know, from the planning side, as we try to respond to what it is that you want in staff reports and what you need to make decisions, thank you for that feedback. We'll, we'll do better.
No worries. Still love you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kuyas?
I have no questions for staff.
Okay. Do the applicants, if you could state your name and address, please?
Bill Henson, one-one-two Carlisle Circle, Paul Marber Florida, three-four-six-eight-three.
Okay.
And Aaron Henson.
Do you have any questions for Mrs. Vincent concerning what she presented?
I do not. We appreciate everything that you've done.
Ms. Vincent, would you like your presentation entered into evidence?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if the applicants would like to make your presentation, if you have anything you'd like to offer in terms of your project?
We, other than this, I mean, we're just excited to be a part of the community, and we'd really like to get this going, and I think it's going to be great and a good addition to Tarpon Springs.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to commission comments, I'm sorry, questions, Vice Mayor Lunt, any questions?
Done.
Commissioner Carr?
I just want to welcome you. Thank you for joining us. I love the town, I hope you do as well, and hope you prosper.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Will you be brewing IPAs?
We will.
And I just thank you for what you've done and your just investments to the community. You've renovated that building from what I remember it being, a, a produce stand growing up, and hopefully it's another step towards building up the entertainment in that area, which seems to, we've heard some rumors of, some future applications in the future, and just thank you all, thank you both.
Thank you.
I like the name. I was going to ask you, where did you come up with that?
We actually, we, you know, going through this process, we were trying to find the, the right name. We, we wanted to pay tribute to Tarpon Springs somehow, and we actually saw it in a newspaper article, I think...
The Honey Bear Storm.
Around the Honey Bear Storm, when they did the news story. Somewhere in, in one of those articles, there was Sponge City, and it kind of just clicked, and I was like, that's it, it has to be Sponge City. Sponge capital of the world, Sponge City Brewing, it kind of all came together.
I think many of us are looking forward to looking, seeing your label when it comes out. I'm sure it's going to be very characteristic of, hopefully, of the town as well, so. I don't have any further questions. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments here? Anybody here that'd like to make a public comment? Mr. Delakis?
I do swear and affirm that I will speak the truth, nothing but the truth, because I didn't swear in before, so if that's sufficient?
Is that sufficient, Mr. Sausman?
Beer Delax, five-one-four Ashland Avenue. I want to thank you for your efforts because ironically, for months, we were across the street with our yard sales, and we watched the realtors come and go, and then all of a sudden, we saw painting and cleaning out, and we were wondering what's, what's going to go in there? And finally, I know. So I think it's a good endeavor, but I want you to also look at what's happening in this area. We are starting to revitalize this southern corridor. So small businesses like this can be small anchors for some of the other potential vacant properties right across the street. That building, I'm not, I think I know who owns it, but it's been vacant for years. And then the place that was the car place turned over. So it's good that we're having some renovation in there, so I appreciate the fact that these people are willing to take their time, their money, their efforts, their blood, sweat, and tears to invest in our city, but I also want you all to look at the overall picture. As Renee has said, this special area plan allows for, to bring in more things that create vibrancy, self-sufficiency, and I think this will be a good start, but we also need to maybe look at other incentives possibly to bringing in some other factions. Now, I know they're renovating the Manatee Village, and, and then that'll be a big boost. Hopefully, they bring in some good tenants that generate more information, you know, more excitement into that area, but, but as far as this project, I appreciate, and I'm sure they do also, the fact that they will get the green light to move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access public comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have raised hands, so I'll allow the first person in.
Okay.
Sharon Landrum, forty-five West MLK Junior Drive, Tarpon Springs. Thank you, Mayor, and Board of the Commissioners for allowing me to speak, and I'd like to welcome this new business. I live in the area. I've watched the produce stand deteriorate over the last few years, and I'm very excited, and we welcome you, and we look forward to doing business with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landrum. Mr. Jump, is there anyone else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay. I, I need to ask whether you have any offer, everything was positive, which is good, and usually if there was somebody that had any, an issue, you would, you would offer a reason as to, or some additional information. So I'm asking whether you have any additional information you would like to offer in response to what any, anybody has said?
I don't believe so.
You don't have to say anything, that's okay, too, so, okay. Closing summation, Ms. Vincent?
I have nothing to add, other than I'll enter my staff report and presentation into the record.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. You can sit down now. And I'm going to go to comments now. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any comments other than...
What comments are there? Have you made already?
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, a couple of comments on this. This is a great asset to our community, so thank you so much for your investment. Obviously, this has been a blighted piece of property for many, many years. You've retrofitted basically this piece of property to make it a very unique building with a very cool name and a cool concept as well, too. So happy to support this extension of the patio, which we're approving tonight, but looking forward to you all opening and being very successful in many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
I've said my piece. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Thank you both for the application.
I wish to welcome you to Tarpon Springs. I think it's going to be, I always love when we brand something with Tarpon Springs that's got to do with the heritage or the history of Tarpon Springs, that it helps continue keeping Tarpon Springs on the map and, and defining who we are, so I, I very much appreciate your investment in that regard. If I can have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve Sponge City Brewing number twenty-two dash one twenty-eight.
Second.
Okay. Any last comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is that with the conditions as recommended by staff?
Yes.
In the motion?
Yes. That would be the case. Ms. Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you. Thanks for pointing that out.
Were no additional...
I'm sorry, let's, one person at a time. Ms. Vincent, that includes the conditions that you had put in there?
There were no additional conditions added by the planning and zoning.
That's what I, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is that correct, Ms. Jacobs?
That's correct.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay. We're going to go to item fifteen, which is Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash four, and this is the Susanna Two Site Plan. It's quasi-judicial. Mr. Sausman, if we could read the resolution by title and then go to the instructions for the quasi-judicial and swear anybody in that's here for that item?
Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, oh, four, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number twenty-two dash ninety-one, requesting site plan approval to construct a seven-unit multifamily development on zero-point-four-six acres, more or less, located at the northwest corner of East Lime Street and South Gross Avenue in the RM Residential Multifamily Zoning District, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. If we can have the instructions for the quasi-judicial and the swearing in.
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners act in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. If anyone is going to speak, please come forward, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I see that the applicant is here. Is there anyone here that believes they're an affected party that would oppose the project as an example? Okay, I see none. Has any commissioner had any ex parte communications?
None.
With the applicant? Okay. Same manager, of course, we're going to go to Ms. Vincent.
Yes, Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. This is application twenty-two dash ninety-one. This is site plan approval for the Susanna Two project. Hopefully, this looks familiar to you. This, the board previously reviewed this as a conditional use specific to an alternative dimensional plan several months ago, so now the, the project is back before you for the site plan approval portion. This is a seven-unit multifamily development. The, inclusive of the conditions of approval that were required by the board for the conditional use and the land development code, it does meet all the requirements of the land development code. This is located at the northwest corner of East Lime and South Gross Street, and you can see the project area here. And so this, the, this is the layout, this is a seven-unit, one-story apartment building, parking to the rear, accessed off of the ten-foot alley. The resolution of the twenty-two dash oh-nine approved the conditional use with the alternative dimensional plan with reduced front yard, front, side, and rear yard requirements. The actual site plan came back doing a little better than that, so they were to meet the, push the buildings, you know, a little farther away from the street. I know that was a discussion point. The building elevations, these have changed. The roof line previously was a pitched roof. They are opting to do just a flat roof type of structure, but there is building undulation so that it's not, you know, a monolithic type of, of appearance. You do have porches fronting on to the, the road furnaces on all sides, so they're, you know, they're primary entrances off of the street. The resolutions of, the conditions of approval in the resolution discussed requirement for buffering of the parking lot. There's, this is a cottage court development to the east, and so there are three units here that kind of back up to this property, and they have like these wooden rear decks on them. They're actually not conforming as to the way that they're located on the property, but the applicant has proposed to put in a, you know, screening hedge on the backside of the pond to provide some additional buffering along with the, the tree plantings. This would meet our required buffering requirement for parking lot screening in the land development code. There also was a condition of approval regarding working with waste management for a workable solution for the collection of solid waste, very similar to the project that you also reviewed recently by the same developer. The proposal is to have toters stored along the alley, and each unit will be responsible for bringing them out to the street on trash pickup day. And then the ten-foot alley must be maintained clear, so that is what has... pickup day. And then the 10-foot alley must be maintained clear, so that is what has been achieved through the site plan as well. Staff recommendation is to approve the site plan with our four standard conditions, consistent with the site construction plans, consistent with the site plan, details for site lighting, have to be compliant with Section 127, requirements for the public art program if the aggregate job value exceeds $1 million, and the site plan would expire within one year unless we have an application for a building permit. Planning and zoning board did review this on, at their last meeting, and recommended 70 to approve, and there were no members of the public that spoke on the item. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have, and I would enter my staff report and presentation into the public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Any questions from the Commission, Vice Mayor Lunt?
Not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Renee, I know we had some discussions with the last application when they came up before us like a month ago about the toters. Is there any requirement for, any shielding required for the, where they're located, since they're like right along the alleyway in the code?
I would say specifically, no. I mean, they're going to have like a corral type of area. I'll let the applicant speak a little more to the details of what that is. They won't just be like floating around. They'll have to be contained. But there's no, there's no screening requirement for them like there would be for a dumpster.
Okay, yeah, I just see that there's a concrete pad there. I mean, that would be somewhat of a concern. It's a narrow alley already, out to pull in and out, but I would just hope that the applicant would want to look at having some type of screen there to protect it from going out in the alleyway.
Said it.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Eisen?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Would I be correct in saying there's no criteria on this one as well?
This one, you know, the conditional use was your, the more specific criteria. Again, trying to not present you with volumes of information, but this is with land development code criteria.
Okay, just so you know, though, in the future, I would like to have that, whether there's five criteria, seven criteria, just so that I know what I'm going against.
We'll talk. Yes, because I do want to give you what, what you're asking for. The site plan criteria is, it's parking, it's landscaping, it's, you know, stormwater, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
But just as I said before, the
Sure.
In order for a ordinance or resolution to be passed, and it's quasi-judicial, it has to balance against the criteria of whatever that is. So, I mean, like I said, this is not brain surgery for me. I can see what it is, not in dispute of it, but I would like to have that in the future.
Understood.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Kuyas?
I have no questions for staff at this time.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Okay, good.
It certainly is.
Good to start.
Okay. The applicant is here. If he can get up and give us your name and address, please.
Samer Aldofari, 2166 West Bush Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 23612.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Vincent in what her presentation was?
Absolutely not. We are content with her presentation, the content of the staff report, and the conditions that are listed in there.
Okay, that's okay. Let's, you don't have anything. So I have to follow a particular process here to make sure we've got it all. Ms. Vincent, you want us to accept your presentation and evidence?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, you can, if you've got anything that you would like to offer now as part of your presentation?
I will address that those toters will be placed on a concrete pad. They're not just anywhere. There's defined area. There will be, it's defined by the building wall on, on one side and a fence on the east and the west, but they will have the easy access to be pulled out from that location into the alley. And that's what we've discussed with the waste management staff at the city and to be in the code and the requirement.
Let me go to the rest of the Commission as well. Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any questions?
I don't think so. I've seen this before, but could you confirm to me that there's, excuse me, actually a fence on the west side, on the opposite side of the pond? I know there's, I know you've made allowances for screens, but
There is no fence on this side because the code doesn't require a fence, and we have, it's a compatible use for both ends, for both properties, multifamily, for our project, multifamily on the property on the west, but we are having hedge and screen from landscaping. On the other project, we had a perimeter around the pond that required fence anyway, so we, and we didn't have a compatible use, so we built the screen.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my whole concern here, it comes from, there's houses next door. Houses mean there's children sometimes. Children get into ponds. I'm always nervous about that in Florida, but that's okay. If it, the code doesn't allow it, it's another discussion.
Yeah, the pond is only two feet deep, and it's a 4:1 slope. It meets all standard safety side slope for ponds through the water management district, county cities, including here, the city code.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, do you have anything else? Commissioner Carr, do you have any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Eisen? Commissioner Kuyas?
No, I'll have comments for later.
Okay, I have nothing. Ms. Vincent, anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Public comments. Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. I, I'm going to ask the applicant, if you don't, if you have any rebuttal, there's nothing that was said, so obviously, there's nothing to rebut, but we need to kind of close the loop on that. Ms. Vincent, do you have a closing or summation that you would like to make?
No, sir.
Okay. We're going to close the public hearing now, and I'm going to go to comments from the Commission. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any comments?
No. As always, it's a, it's a welcome design, and we need this kind of housing in Tarpon, so thank you very much. Personally, I'd like to see a fence around the pond, at least on the west side, but that's just me. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Eisen?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also ask you if you could consider a fence. I'm not fond of the, having even a one-foot pond exposed to having youngsters. If any of those plants have spaces between them, kids find it, so. But otherwise, I welcome you. I, I, this is exactly what our, all the residents wanted, to have more buildings and more housing in and around this kind, not tall, five, six-story buildings. So I thank you for bringing it to Tarpon Springs, and I, and like I said, I had one, one question, but I can't ask the question now, but I just, it'll be a statement. I just hope that there will be somebody coordinating these totes going back and forth so that they're not just left around. And I, I can't ask you that question. I just hope it's included because that's always an issue. People leave it and on their streets. So this is a small 10-foot area, and I just hope it's taken care of. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisen?
I just want to thank the applicant for having a larger, increased setback with the proposed. I appreciate that. Now, I'm very, for other future projects, especially that area, I'm not too crazy about those setbacks, but I understand what you're trying to do, and I appreciate it. And thank you for being receptive to considering subsidized housing in the area, as I stated before. So, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a motion in a second, and then we're going to wait for Commissioner Carr to return. Is there a motion in a second?
Motion to approve Susanna II number 22-91.
Is there a second?
With staff conditions?
With staff conditions, always, yes.
Second.
Yeah, just for clarification, Mrs., Mr. Salsman, that ought to be like an automatic?
It should be, but on the quasi-judicial, if we should automatically put that in the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any last comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to go to item 16. This is quasi-judicial as well. It is the North Lake Trail plat approval. Mr. Salsman, if you could read the resolution by title, please.
Resolution 2020, 2023-06, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving the final subdivision plat, application number 22-97, North Lake Trail, accepting all offers of dedication as described in said plat, approving the appropriate city officials to certify approval thereon, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could you read the procedures for quasi-judicial and swear anybody in that's here for this project?
Yes, Mayor. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in the, in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant.
Anyone that's going to testify, please raise your right hand. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Is there anyone here that claims to be an affected party on this item? Have there been any ex parte communications with the applicant, by any of the Commissioners? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing, and City Manager, of course, I'm going to go to Ms. Vincent.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. This is application 22-97. This is the final plat for the North Lake Trails subdivision. This is an 18-lot, single-family subdivision on, located on Jasmine, at the intersection of Jasmine and Mellon Street. A little, little bit of background on this. This was originally proved as a preliminary and final plan development in 2022, prior to several of the board members sitting here, so you may not be as familiar with this one. So the, it's a, it's a small lot, single-family subdivision of 18 lots. It, as I said, it went through the plan development process. It has its own specific setbacks that are recognized as part of the plan development. So when we review this, again, we're looking, the, the site plan, the final plan development was the site plan. The site construction plans had to conform with that. The property has been under construction and is largely complete. The roads are in, most of the infrastructure is in. At this point, the applicant does want us to go ahead and go forward with plating. We have an engineer's estimate of the outstanding improvements that have been verified by our engineer of record, and we do have a standby irrevocable letter of credit in the amount to cover those improvements. You know, that's just in abundance of caution. If the developer would walk away from the project, the city could call the letter of credit to finish those, those remaining improvements that haven't been done. But this allows the applicant to go ahead and plat, and he can begin selling lots. And so until that, until it's actually platted, he cannot do that. So the plat itself has been reviewed by our surveyor of record for compliance with state statute. So we're at the point of where we are ready to approve Resolution 23-06, which is the final plat for the project. The conditions of approval on the final plan development, just to note those, they have met conditions one, three, and four. Number two will take place as each individual home comes through permitting. We will verify that the setbacks that are in Resolution 2021-26, which was the plan development, are adhered to as each one comes through. So all these stormwater issues were resolved prior to site construction permitting. We have the municipal easements that were required prior to construction permitting. If you, there was also a, just for a little background information, there was a, there was a remaining 35-foot right-of-way here that was vacated, this was Cypress Street, that was vacated prior, as part of this project development. So that, and we had to retain easements for city utilities in there. So that, that's all been accomplished, so everything is, is ready to go for plating with the, excuse me, with the few remaining improvements that have been secured by the letter of credit. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Eisen? Commissioner Kuyas?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Stamis, you're going to be giving the presentation this evening?
There's really not much of a presentation.
All right. Would you just step up and state your name and address for the record, please? And congratulations on your grandson, George, retrieving the cross on January 6.
Thank you. Real honor. George Stamis, 46 West Lemon Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida, representing Pioneer Developers. Renee did a fine job explaining where we're at, and this is just the final step of completion for us to be able to start marketing and selling lots out there, and we're, we're ready to go.
Okay, hang on. Ms. Vincent, should we enter your presentation into evidence?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And that was your presentation, Mr. Stamis?
That's it.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, do you have any questions for Mr. Stamis?
I do not.
Okay. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments concerning this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. There is no rebuttal to anything? Ms. Vincent, do you have a closing or a summation on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. We're going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask the Commission, do you have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, comments, comments. No comments? Okay. May I have a motion in a second, please? And include conditions?
With conditions.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes, thank you. Okay, before we get to this next one, I'm going to ask, does the Commission wish to take a break? I know one Commissioner stepped out, and there may be others. Would you like a break?
No breaks needed.
Okay, so let, let's adjourn and reconvene at 8:45. Let's adjourn and reconvene at eight forty-five.
No breaks needed.
The applicant. Anyone's going to testify, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any affected parties here this evening on this item? Has any commissioner had any ex parte communications with the applicant? Same matter, of course.
Ms. Vincent, you proceed.
Thank you. This is application 22-105. This is a conditional use application. I do want to state that for this particular application, the planning department's not specifically making a recommendation, so I'll explain a little bit of that as we go forward. The application, the location is for 136 East Oakwood Street. This is an existing, originally was a single-family house. It has been used for, I believe, 14-plus years as actually a dog grooming establishment. The request that is before you this evening is being brought forward as a conditional use for the purpose of a dog training facility with overnight boarding. And the overnight boarding, and sort of the applicant will do a much better job of explaining this than I will, is part of the training process. So it's not, you can't call this person up and say, "I want to board my dog." It has to be part of it, as part of a training program. So it's a little bit of a nuanced type of use. This is located in the T4B residential and industrial transect. And just, so in this district, dog training with boarding is not, is not listed as a permitted or a conditional use. What is listed is veterinarian, veterinary office with a kennel. So the, the use of dog training itself, we would consider a personal service use, just like the dog grooming. It's not listed really, it falls under the retail category of the district. The boarding is where we were struggling with frankly, as to how to treat this. And so since we, there is a use in the district of veterinary office with a kennel, which clearly indicates overnight boarding, we, we took the approach that it's a somewhat similar type of use, and so we elected to allow it to move forward as a conditional use and bring it to the board. So I just kind of wanted to explain how we got here. We've done this in the past, where something isn't cleanly laid out as permitted or conditional, but it has similar characteristics with another use, we would consider it under a similar path. So that's, that's how we've gotten to where we are at this point. So as I said, this is in the special area plan. Just a little location and context. This is Penales Avenue, MLK, the trail, Santos Isles, and then the rest of this is commercial and industrial around the property. So a little closer look at the site. So this is the house here, actually, as I said, it's been a dog grooming facility, you know, without incident for about 14 years. This is the Santos Isles apartment complex, and again, you have a mixed storage and industrial here, and then, you know, commercial out on alternate 19. So the conditional use criteria, we have to review for conformance with the land development code. This project is an adaptive reuse of an existing building, and it can meet the requirements of the building code. The requirements of the land development code really are the conditional nature of the, part of the conditional nature of this. But for parking and site characteristics and stuff, it is, it is compliant. The big question on this is the compatibility. We, as I said, dog training we view as a personal service use that would generally be compatible with the area. The boarding component may present impacts to surrounding properties, especially in terms of noise, outdoor activity, or hours of operation. The subject, the property, the use would be subject to compatibility requirements of the special area plan. Again, that, that compatibility aspect is really going to, you know, again, be, you know, issues of noise, outdoor activity, and hours of operation, so that is a consideration for the board. We don't think this will adversely affect and, or impact historical or environmental The dog, the condition, the condition of, you know, effects on adjoining property values. Again, the dog training is, is not substantially different than what was there before as the dog grooming facility, so we don't think that that's, you know, would be an adverse impact. It's, again, it's difficult to evaluate, does the overnight boarding aspect of this come into play and affect adjoining property values? We have no issues with the ability of the city to provide services to the property, and this is an adaptive reuse and a mixed-use area, so it is, you know, in a manner of, you know, efficient and orderly development. So we recommend that the board consider this. If you do recommend approval or want, if you're, we do have some recommended conditions of approval. Overnight boarding of, should be limited to a maximum of 10 dogs. The boarding, overnight boarding must be supervised 24 hours a day by onsite personnel, and a solid six-foot fence shall be installed around the entire perimeter of the property behind the front yard setback. It's mostly fenced at this point. We've had no public, no public input on this at this point. We did do mailed notice to the surrounding property owners. I will note for the record that that mailed notice that we are required to do does go to the property owner, so that goes to the management company. It's my understanding that the applicant has had discussions with the management company itself. We, you know, Ms. McNeese also directly reached out to the, to the onsite manager for Santos Isles. They, they're aware of the project. I'm not sure if they were fully aware about the overnight boarding aspects initially when, from the discussions between the applicant and the, and the owner of, or the applicant and the manager of the, of Santos Isles. And we are not, we have not been able to confirm that, that individual residents were notified by the management company. So I'll, I'll just, you know, I'll leave that as it is. I did want to get that into the record. At the planning and zoning board meeting, I want to take a minute to, to talk about what happened there. There was, they had a full board. Ultimately, it was recommended for approval and, by a four-three vote. During the board discussions, our board attorney, Kardashian, introduced a section of the land development code, section 72, overnight boarding of animals, as an applicable section of the code for review. And we initially did not, we did not include that in the review criteria because in the smart code, there is a specific list of the sections of the land development code that are applicable for review. And this, the overnight boarding of animals, section 72, was not included. That was discussed with the, you know, at, at the meeting, and the attorney still indicated that even though that that specific section was not in the list, that the preceding sentence in that section would allow for that consideration. So there wasn't a lot of discussion at the planning and zoning board about that section 72. I have included the, it's an attachment, the section, for this board for reference. And since then, I have done some, some measuring. It's really distance separation requirements, so I can answer questions about that if you want to introduce that and discuss that. So the planning and zoning board did recommend, as I said, they recommended approval and with some additional conditions. The conditional use should be non-transferable, so it's for this particular operator only. It cannot transfer to another individual. The applicant completes an agreement with a veterinarian for 24-hour service, and that the applicant is required to carry general liability insurance. So those were the additional conditions recommended by the board. I'm going to stop there. There's a lot of information in the backup and answer questions that you might have. And, you know, I really think the applicant's going to be the person that's really going to have to explain the operations and how this is unique. So with that, I'll stop and try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I'm going to just jump ahead myself just for a second, just as a point of clarification. I, I don't know that you mentioned that the training is by right and is considered a retail service, is that right?
We put that under retail service, it's just like we did the dog grooming facility, yes.
Okay, all right. So let's go to questions. Vice Mayor Lerner.
Hi, Renee.
Hello.
So I struggled looking at the backup material and, and looking at this whole situation with the fact that the transect code doesn't include this. You know, it does do the veterinarian with overnight boarding. However, overnight boarding has a different connotation and a different explanation as to what overnight boarding is that's pulled in from the land development code, which is section 72. So because this is quasi-judicial, and we have to follow the law, my sort of interpretation was that because the, the transect code does not cover, the smart code does not cover this particular application, we should read and default to section 72. The problem I have with section 72 is that the application here doesn't meet a whole bunch of the regulations under what overnight boarding of animals is. So you had mentioned that it kind of sort of met it, but I guess my big concern is when you talk about overnight boarding versus what is being offered here, we're talking about, you know, you said, I think we agreed on, or somebody agreed on, a minimum of, of 10 animals per night?
A maximum.
Yeah, maximum. But, but these animals are going into crates. They're not going into kennels. That's a whole different environment. From the photos that I saw, I saw four crates, and one had to be piled on another. I'm not quite sure if there's adequate space for 10, nor I'm not quite sure if I want to put animals in a space where, I mean, that's not my...
So you're asking for clarification, is that correct?
So, okay, so section 72 actually says it requires a minimum floor area per animal of 125 square feet. Would this meet that criteria?
I had, that specific calculation I have not, have not, had not calculated. What's the square? I can, I can run that particular one as we're sitting here, I can figure out the square, the square footage.
Renee, if you look at the building on the property praiser, it's 1,490 square feet.
Got a calculator.
10 times 125 is 1,250 square feet.
So?
It's, meets the criteria.
Meets the criteria.
You can make that final judgment, though.
I think Ms. Vincent needs to make that finding as a...
It, it doesn't say that it has to be dedicated for each individual dog, so yes, that math, you know, would, would be compliant.
Right.
And I do want, and again, a lot of this is going to be on the applicant to really answer a lot of the questions about these operations. This is not a boarding facility. And that, you know, that's why we've gotten, I did not feel like that, that I had the ability to just tell this applicant, you can't...
I understand.
Exactly, and you're right.
I disagree with you as whether this qualifies as a boarding facility, but I understand it's right on the edge, and it all sounds good, except that I'm looking at 10 dogs in a, what looks to be a 16-by-20 room at max, in crates, and that looks to me to be more like a puppy mill-type boarding facility.
I will let the applicant speak to that.
I'm not happy with it, but anyway. So the other things, does it meet minimum setbacks? So apparently...
For section 72?
For section 72, 100 feet.
Yes, the, the building itself is not, is greater than 100 feet from the res, from the residential building, building to building, and the outdoor, if you want to call that the exercise area, is also compliant from, of more than 100 feet from the residential, the buildings. Now, if you're talking about measuring to a property line, of course not.
This says property, not buildings.
If you're measuring to a property line, it would not be compliant.
Okay, so it's not compliant with that. It's not using outdoor runs, as far as I know.
No.
Setback for any outdoor exercise area, which is pretty much the rear of this property, also is subject to 100 feet distancing. I'm not sure if the building, you looked at the building specs, does it have soundproofing that's done already?
I believe the applicant actually did indicate they were installing soundproofing as part of their normal efforts. I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Uh-huh. And do you know if the air handling systems have been developed for proper overnight?
It's a standard air conditioning, it's a residential structure.
Then that's a no. Because there's, air handling systems for kennels are entirely different than air handling systems for whatever.
So, and I will, you know, the, the building, excuse me, the fire marshal has to look at this from there in, in his, looking at the numbers that were being, he did not deem this a kennel. He, he did not, he didn't look at it from the building, from the fire code perspective because of the numbers as even, you know, as a boarding facility, so...
I understand from the fire marshal's consideration, may not have done that, but if I'm going to put 10 dogs in crates that are stacked on top of people, it has to have proper ventilation, and proper ventilation is not standard AC. Anyway, sorry, that's...
Can I, can I push back one time on that? All right, never mind.
So it obviously doesn't have any outdoor runs, we're not really concerned about four-foot berms. I think that's all the questions I have of you, the rest are for the applicant.
Thank you.
It's, I, I'm struggling with this. I want to say yes, but I'm seeing too many things that tell me that it's, doesn't follow the law. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Renee, one of the struggles I'm trying to understand is how do you define a training facility that offers overnight stays? Can you lump it into an overnight boarding animal facility? It's an element of the training, it sounds like. It's not open to the public if I want my dog to go stay there, and I'm out of town, and I want him to go stay there overnight, I just can't, my understanding...
That's, that's how the applicant has described it, yes.
Well, that's my, that's what my understanding is. When I think of overnight boarding, and I don't have a great definition of what overnight boarding is and the code, but that's what my thought process is of overnight boarding. The board has experienced similar applic, not this type of application, but like an overnight boarding application or a doggy daycare application on US 19 before in the past. I don't recall when this happened. Section 72 is definitely in discussion about it, and it, it measured from the, I believe the property line of the applicant to the building of the closest residential building. And that's, again, it seems like it's a kind of open for interpretation in the item 72B2. So that's, that's how it was utilized back then, and when we looked at it. The issue back then was that the residential building was within 100 feet, and it was denied because of that very reason. Is this, is there any residential buildings with 100 feet of this property that's being applied for here?
If you're going from the property line of the applicant, the...
It is.
So from the, from the property line, so the outdoor area where they may have dog training going on, so from that closest property line to the...
Building.
To the building, to the residential portions of the building. Because that, the closest point of the building is actually the clubhouse that wraps around the end of the building. So the close, to the closest residential area is 160 feet, to the closest point of the actual building itself would be, you know, probably about 125 from the outdoor, from the outdoor area, the edge of the outdoor area, the closest point.
Okay. So from a setback standpoint in that area, I feel comfortable with that one. The other elements, I think there's some more building elements that are in play there. It's not really for me to decide what's considered a adequate AC unit or filtration. The minimum floor area makes sense with the requirement of 1,250 square feet if there's 10 dogs in there. How dogs sleep or how dogs are kept or boarded, that's not, I've got no professional expertise on how that should be done. Creating versus kenneling, I don't know what that looks like from a training standpoint, so I would defer to the, the professionals in that one. I think the biggest, the biggest question that I had was the B, sorry, 72B2, and I think I've felt comfortable with what Renee, you're explaining to me, am I understanding that correctly, that it's not within 100 feet, property building?
It says the minimum setback from any residentially zoned or utilized property for buildings shall be 100 feet.
Okay.
You know, so I think you have to look at these in the context, you know, I think you need to look at building to, to, to building. I mean, if you're looking, if you're measuring to edge of property to edge of property, obviously...
Butts to each other.
Yeah, you're, you're not compliant. But if you're looking at the out, you know, if you're looking at the outdoor area, which is the property line in the rear yard, its closest point...
One other...
100 feet.
Okay, just one other additional clarifying question Vice Mayor brought up, and was pertaining to the 125 square feet per dog, that just talks about, or per animal. That just, that doesn't say that that's a required dedicated space for the animal, it just talks about the building itself.
Says minimum floor area per animal shall be 125 square feet, I, I, that's...
Okay. Thanks. Mayor, if you have any further questions.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. Renee, I want to ask you a question. Why is it that when we have BOA meetings or planning and zoning, there are signs placed out, and on this particular property, there were no signs placed out to inform the residents of Santos Islands Isles why this was here? When the mayor asked if there were any parties, affected parties, how would they know if they don't get the notification? I understand we notified the managing agent. Why would the managing agent inform their tenants that they're about to have a headache? I mean, it just doesn't make sense. So my question to you is, why don't we do that?
The, I mean, the simple answer is, for conditional uses, the required notice is to do mailed public notice within 500 feet. We do not post conditional uses. We do not put a physical sign on the property. It's not required in the code, and we've never done it. So I'm not saying that the code shouldn't, maybe that shouldn't be expanded, but we don't. So we try to treat everybody applicable under the code for public notice and not go off on tangents, so that's, that's why we did, you know, we'd follow the code.
Right, but we also didn't notify the tenants by mail as well?
It, it is, we notify the property owners. We do not notify, you know, renters. It's not, it goes to the, we, we don't have the address list for the inside of that. We, we have a, the address list comes from the property praiser records, it goes to the, to the owners. Again, I mean, that's...
Well, I'm saying...
I know it doesn't satisfy, that's not the answer that...
No, it's not going to satisfy them, right.
Doesn't satisfy you, but that is the answer, so...
So I'm not only saying it for this particular case, but I'm saying it for a possibility to change that section of the code, because it's not fair to the people to not have an idea. They're not here to represent, so I think they should have a say in the matter, one way or the other. So whether we have it in the code, we should have it in the code, is my statement, even though I know it'll be a question eventually. Thank you, Mayor. I just think it's fair to all concerned to have that in there. So my question to you also on criteria number two. You have here, the proposed use is appropriate in the property in question, compatible with the area. It's, the comment that's in here says, "The boarding component may present impacts to surrounding properties." I don't even know how you could say "may," it definitely will. And especially in terms of noise, outdoor activity, and hours of operation, those are all gimmies there. That's exactly what it's going to cause. So I don't understand how these are, explain to me how you say that it may.
I'm going to defer to the applicant, because if you hear, once you hear how the operations of it, how it functions, it may or may not be a compatibility issue. I mean, that, we're, we're simply saying it could, it could, I'm presenting to you that it could. We're not saying it does, we're saying it could, or does not, frankly. I mean, it's, I think that's an open, that's an open question for, you know, as to the question of compatibility.
So let me ask you this, on overnight boarding, kenneling, whatever terminology we want to use towards keeping dogs overnight, would you agree that there's a difference between boarding sick dogs that have been mostly, for the most part, had surgeries or whatever, and they're being kept overnight, and they've had, they've been on meds, they're healing, they're on tranquilizers, different than a definition of kennelled dogs that are, are stored for training?
I, I don't have an opinion on that.
Okay. I do, but I mean...
I, I, and that's just why I was, you know, at the end of the day, the applicant has a hard, has a burden of proof here, and, you know, I'm, they're going to have to make their case. You know, we're not recommending approval, we're not recommending denial. We're trying to present what needs to be considered by the board in this instance.
So another comment that was made, so I need to clarify this, there was a comparison that this will be used for something similar to a dog grooming, what it was used prior, correct? That's what...
The prior use was dog grooming. I think the statement was dog training, you know, is a, I think that's a similar, you know, similar enough use as, we would consider dog training to be...
Well, there's a dog present, so it's similar.
There's a dog present, there's a handler, there's people on site. It's not, you know, that, yes, we would consider dog training similar to a dog grooming establishment.
Well, but a dog grooming is, you groom the dog, they may stay for an hour until the owner comes, picks it up, and away it goes. This is completely different. This has completely no relation to grooming, so that's why I, my question...
Oh, oh, again, I'm going to let you, I'm going to defer all of that to the applicant.
Well, these were the applicant's words or staff's words?
Based on how the applicant has presented, what they're doing, and the control that they have over these animals, they're training these animals. Dog groomers, have you been to one? I mean, they bark, they carry on, they howl, I mean, so they're, I mean, yes, I can say that I think that these are probably equivalent, you know, but again, I'm, you know, I'm going to defer to the applicant to make their case here.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify...
I understand.
Some of the things that have been said versus the true definition of these things, that's...
And part of the problem is lack of definitions. You know, again, the reason we got it here is because there's enough similarity of other uses that are in the transect code that I felt like we had an obligation to at least bring it forward to be able to let the applicant make their case. That's, so...
Well, it's comparing a car wash to a car repair shop. It's still both being cars, but...
I'll, I'll defer to the applicant.
I'm done with my questions.
Commissioner Cullias.
All my questions are for the applicant. Thank you.
Ms. Vincent, I, I know this is a tough night, or at least this is a tough item for you. I just have one question on, on the section 72 of the land development code. I, I understand how you're, you're kind of weaving it together and everything, that's fine. But on the, the, on the conditional use now, on these, I don't know whether you would call them guidelines or requirements in this 72. Are they, are they hard requirements, or are they guidelines?
I think they would be, looked at as for guidance.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't, I would not interpret them to be hard guidelines at this point.
Okay.
If they, if, if it were listed with the other list of code sections that are applicable, absolutely hard guidelines. These are not.
But what you're saying is it, because of the way it was, it was, again, woven into this application, this 72 versus the transect, or the smart code, it's, it's fair to consider those as part of this review?
Yes, I think it is for guidance, yes, absolutely.
Okay, all righty. That's all I have. Are there any other questions for Ms. Vincent? This is the last chance you're going to get to ask her questions.
Excuse me, can I clarify then?
From what I just heard, section 72 is for guidance?
Yes, so the, the way that this... You have, says, "Where applicable, refer to the standards and regulations as found in this, in the land development code as referenced below." you have, it says where applicable, refer to the standards and regulations as found in this, in the land development code as referenced below. And there's a whole list of code sections that are applicable for, specifically applicable for review. Section 72 is not listed there.
I understand that, but if it was listed there, would it be for guidance or would it be for legislation or ordinance or law?
A hard requirement, a requirement or guidance.
Is it a requirement or is it a, a wannabe?
I, I'll stick by the, I, I believe you can refer to 72 for guidance. If you want to apply it, you know, chapter and verse, that's your choice. I don't think you have to.
Okay, could we get a, a legal reading on this is because, I mean, obviously the, the lawyer that stood in for P&amp;Z brought section 72 up.
She said they could, she ultimately said they could be considered. She did not say they were.
We're going to have an opportunity. Would you like to weigh in on this?
Just that I would, I assume that what Regina Kardashian was saying is that there was nothing else in the code that was applicable other than when you look at this section, something similar to what the request was. So I think that's the guidelines that she was probably looking at to try to give some understanding as to what the codes require in these circumstances. There's obviously nothing exactly under the code.
So it'd be more of guidance than a requirement.
I would say it has to be guide, guidelines because it's not exactly what they're requesting.
I'm just trying to understand whether, if it's a guideline, that's one thing. If it's a law, then that's another thing.
I, I don't think it can be looked at as a requirement because it doesn't, it's not really what they're asking for. You don't have anything in the codes that meets what they're asking for. So there is some interpretation involved in this that the applicant still has the burden to show you that it meets your requirement.
Okay, could I ask another question then?
Yes.
If there's barking animals and people complain, code enforcement enforces the noise law against barking dogs under the land development code, under the transect code, what, what applies here?
Noise is noise. The, you do not get a walk at any point in time from the noise ordinance, so, and nuisance ordinance. So that can be enforced through code enforcement. While I have the opportunity, you know, I would say that you may, if you, if you get to the point of where you're trying to make a motion for approval, you may also want to consider a specific condition that says, that specifically that says that, you know, if there are documented excessive noise, odor, or anything of that nature, that the board of commissioners, that, you know, documented that can be returned to the board of commissioners for, for revocation. I mean, you have the ability, I think, to put a condition like that on here to, to, to capture that. I think you could do it without it, but I think a condition makes it very clear.
Alright, thank you. Did you have, you, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'll go for the others. And then if that conditional use were to be violated and the condition revoked, the training facility could continue as a training facility, but without the overnight boarding. Okay, by right. Okay, thank you. Let's see. The applicant is here. If you'd like to come up forward and state your name and address, please.
Andrea Bolander, 258 Banana Road, Palm Harbor, Florida.
Okay, now the only thing, the only question I have is do you have any questions concerning what Mrs. Vincent had said? Not your presentation, but any questions for Ms. Vincent in terms of her testimony?
Not at this time.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, would you like to have your presentation entered into evidence?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed with your presentation and then the commission will have an opportunity to ask you questions.
I would just say that as it was presented in planning and zoning, that is, that has gone well. No changes or additions or anything else has gone on. So what has been presented here is the same that we'd like to present. So nothing about it has changed as far as the presentation.
Let me, if you don't mind, I'm going to, you're done with everything that you've got to say at this point?
I'm available for questions, yes.
That's, that's fine. I'm going to go to the commission for questions. Vice Mayor Long, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I actually do. How do you feel about the possibility of 10 dogs being stored in crates within the space that's at doggy? I'm, you know, I'm not going to say, you're obviously probably not going to put kennels in the washroom. You're not going to put them in the, in the lobby. So we know they're going into that room there. So how do you feel about that?
So that's a great question. I've been in this business for a long time, mainly having a large number of dogs. So I've gone from large numbers of dogs, 60, 70, 80 a day, to now a very intricate, one-on-one training type of environment. So I feel really good about it, actually. There are multiples of those areas. I, everybody who looks at that crate stacked on top of the other, apparently that's not a very good visual, which I didn't realize that that would be bothersome. But it was to, just to be able to show that those particular type of crates, they're $1,500 apiece. They are very sturdy. They're very roomy and dogs love them very much compared to the wire crates that, you know, is most common seen in most people's homes. So there are multiples of those rooms and in those rooms, there's two of them in particular, that are five crates in each of those rooms. And the groomer, they use what are called cage banks where there are lots of crates and they are stacked one on top of another, all the way to the ceiling. So after, for example, a dog gets bathed or groomed, it goes into this holding area and I wish it was for an hour. It's very common that it's all day long. So anyway, to answer the question, I feel really great in my experiences.
Okay, so are those crates liable to be stacked or they're not going to be stacked?
No, I think I was, my point in showing that was to show that they're very, very sturdy and they're very, very safe.
I'm sorry, I have a breeding background, so I, I know about dogs, I know about crates, I know how they react and, and and I'm just, my concern is for the dogs at this particular point.
And it depends on what side of the fence you're on. If you're a no crate person, then, you know, that, that can look terrible. But if you're my background kind of person, you know, those look phenomenal.
Okay. So I've actually heard good things from your neighbors.
I appreciate that.
About, about positive things. So I'm, that wasn't a problem with me. The fact that your dogs are going to bark.
They actually don't.
You put five dogs in a room, they're going to bark.
They actually don't. They actually don't.
I don't know how you're going to control that.
I, I do it very, very well.
So I, I really.
I don't want that headache either. You know, I don't want a headache. I don't want, I don't want anybody to be bothered. That's the least concern should be. There's.
Okay, so I, when you train your dogs, there's a limited rare facility that I'm, I'm assuming you go through, through standard training methodology with. Do you do it singly or with other dogs or does it depend on what you're trying to accomplish?
Yeah, so this business is huge. It's very, very needed. There are a lot of people who have adopted a lot of dogs out of, you know, the local humane societies and they get them home and the dog is tearing up the house, you know, making a mess on their floors, chewing the furniture, can't take it on leash. And the evolution of the pet dog has changed dramatically. If somebody would have told me 15, 20 years ago that somebody would have paid me to babysit their dog during the day for a doggy daycare, you know, I would have looked at you like you were crazy. So, and I bought and really produced a very high quality, the only one in this area, off of 19 and Curlew. It was known as Canine Adventures and they were doing an average of seven dogs a day and I sold it four years later doing 70 dogs a day. So I know what I'm doing. I know I don't want to do that and I know what that looks like. It's, you know, it's busy and it's loud. But my clients were saying to me, my dog is not only tired, but they're listening better. So I don't know what you're doing, but if you could keep doing it. So after I sold the business, I really wasn't sure that I wanted to be in the dog business anymore. I have a corporate background. So I have a business background, but my family, I grew up, were horse trainers and dog trainers. So my mother trained dogs for the Georgia and Alabama's police departments and she traveled and represented the USA in the Olympic Shuten trials. And so I've spent hours and hours and hours in that realm, which is the highest form of obedience that you're going to get. I am a pet dog trainer. I just want to help the everyday guy and gal who has a dog and wants to take it to the Sponge City Brewery and it not aggress another animal and know how to lie there and walk on leash and get in the car and go home. So I spend a lot of hours with these dogs and they do need to be crate trained for many reasons. An injury, you know, being overnight at somebody, a sitter's home, you know, all of these things. The dog has to learn how to be crated. It's not uncommon. And so to be able to go through that process and be onsite 24 hours a day with that process, the dogs at the end of the day are so tired because they've been in training off and on all day long that they're like, if you people will just turn off the lights and let us go to sleep, we'd really appreciate it. So, and I'm there going, you know, are you making any noise? Are you okay? And they're like, they're zonked out on their sides, just passed out. So while I appreciate, you know, everybody's concerned about the noise, there's truly no noise. I mean, there just isn't.
Do you have an overnight staffing plan?
I do, yeah. We've been practicing. So that building was, needed some beautification. So we have, I put it back in like a house. After I sold my business in 2019, I started training out of my home in Ozona. So I really enjoy that aspect and it really helped me form a niche in this business that I can help a dog get through the process of a doorbell ringing, you know, of your mother-in-law or your grandmother coming home and not jumping on, you know, and causing all of those headaches that people don't want. So I have staff and we've all intermittently figured out even if the neighborhood is, you know, is good at 10 o'clock at night, at 2 o'clock in the morning, what goes on. You know, you don't know unless you're there. So, you know, I've got dogs of my own and I know that I could have 10 dogs at my house right here across the street right now. There's no ordinance, ordinance for anybody having any certain number of dogs. So I could personally buy a house and have 10 dogs in the yard.
I understand you can't. Are, so back to the overnight monitoring, are you going to monitor them or is somebody actually going to be there?
No, we're physically there. It's one of the.
Somebody's physically going to be there?
Yeah, my clients require that, which I think is great. I mean, I'm not paid a, a small pittance to do what I do.
Yeah, I understand. Is, are you okay with the veterinary on-call requirement?
To me, that seems odd when there's so many 24-hour, you know, veterinarians. If I called my vet who is open till 8 o'clock at PM, he'd say, you know, call Dr. So-and-so over here, animal emergency and go there or go to Blue Pearl or, I know every vet in the area.
Is that a yes or a no? You're not okay with that requirement?
I am okay. If it's, I mean, if it's mandatory, I'm going to do whatever needs to be done. That's the bottom line.
I, no further questions. Commissioner Carr, questions?
Have you had no questions?
Nothing. Okay. Commissioner Eisner. My only question I have for you, and I don't know how you're going to answer this, I, well, maybe I do know how you're going to answer it. I don't know how you're going to keep the dogs quiet. And we have a situation where we have people over at Santos Islands who don't know this is even going on. So I don't know, I'm not adverse to your training at all and I just don't know how to keep dogs quiet. Not just me personally. I've had dogs all my life. I know all they need to do is the slightest sound and they're barking. So I, I know you kind of guarantee it.
Certainly do.
Right, but there's no formula that you can give me that would guarantee that, correct?
The moment you have a complaint about a barking, you let me know. I'll be glad to take care of it. I guarantee you won't.
But you can't explain to me how that.
Yeah, I'm training this dog off and on all day long. When the nighttime comes and it's, and that's, that's really the concern is the, the overnight lodging, because so we're there. So dogs do not start in unison, hey bud, you want to bark? And then all of a sudden they start doing that. These dogs literally have gone through the, a structure which they've never been in before. So they're now in structure, they're on a schedule. They, I clock probably 10 to 12 miles around these streets a day with these dogs. Every day I beat it up and down the streets. So you, if you haven't seen me, you probably will, because my staff and I are, we have multiple dogs and, you know, we're going up and down the streets doing it in a down, in a sit. Just visually participating. It's mental stimulation. So it's not like a dog in the backyard who doesn't have any interaction. It's truly a different type of mental stimulation as well as physical. So I, we just don't have it. We just don't.
How long do you expect to keep dog A comes in? How long does that dog stay with you?
That's a good question. So it depends. There's three different, a puppy training is about 10 days. A, what is considered a board and train, basic obedience is about three weeks. And a behavior modification can last as long as six weeks.
How long does it take from that dog A coming in?
Mm-hmm.
Till it becomes obedient, doesn't bark from your training?
I'm just, I, I'm going to tell you, I don't have any barking problems. It is one of the least problems. It gets under control right away because they're not around other dogs. There are other dogs that have been in that process and once that dog gets introduced to, let's say, a dog that's been in the program, dogs teach each other and there, no one dog is left for any period of time alone so that the barking would begin and then not be addressed.
So there's no formula that you have and these dogs can be with you three weeks or more?
When you say formula, yeah, the formula is we're up at, you know, early in the morning, the dog, you know, relieves himself while he's with supervision. So there's no barking then. The dog comes back in, the dog gets fed, the dog then goes back out again with supervision, typically on leash, all of these dogs. I mean, it, it's, it's kind of like boot camp. It's not just run amok and go have a big time and, you know, no one knows what you're doing or how you're doing it. So it's kind of like classes being held. When the teacher says it's enough, it's enough. And, and if not, then we work the dog so that the dog can understand that, you know, we go from alert barking is one thing, nuisance barking is completely another. And so if a dog is barking, it gets addressed immediately. So I want to know why the dog is barking. And so if the dog begins barking, then we address and, and we squash the, the problem of why it thinks it should be barking.
Are you aware that the Santos Island is a senior facility?
Yeah, I met a lot of them. They're super great. They think our dogs are like, your dogs always seem so smart. So yes. And I've spoken with Hannah, who is the onsite manager there and I was very clear about what we do. And I'm a, you know, we're always open for any comments, concerns, addresses, we'll, we'll take care of it.
I have no really questions. Okay, Commissioner Cullias.
Thank you. Ma'am, you said there are multiple trainers at the facility?
Yes.
Including yourself?
Correct.
What credentials do you need to be a, a dog trainer?
So that's a great question. So anybody, I guess, could go around calling themselves a dog trainer. I am affiliated and associated with the American Association of Canine Professionals. Typically you spend hours and hours and hours and hours with animals of some sort. I have a college-educated individual who's with me who did her internship at Lowry Park Zoo. That type of animal training is very different than it is the type of dog training that we do. And so there are many educational pieces and there are different sides of the fence on the type of training that gets done. I come from a long background of canine police work, but I pet dog train. So there's no certifications, you know, so to speak, that one is required of. It's typically history and if somebody is willing to pay you the money because of the results that you get. because of the results that you get.
Okay, and now, um, I looked over the backup, the, the dogs will be housed inside. And so, you can only, a, a, as a service that you're providing for dog training, you can really only have them at that facility, a max of 10 dogs at any point in time, correct?
Yes, and I do, I'm one of the few people who still go to people's homes and train. So, I do in-home training too. So, I go to people's homes and train dogs at their houses as well.
Okay, and, um, um, the noise seems to be an issue, you know, with the board and, you know, uh, um, dogs are like people, we can be stressed at times, and, you know, being changed in our environments. I, I, I like to think that. Is there a certain initial point when the dogs start training where they may be a little bit unsettled or stressed because of the sudden change in environment in boot camp that's being, you know, presented to them initially?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, yes, and we kind of take advantage of that stress 'cause the dog doesn't know what they don't know. Uh, oftentimes, we'll do five weeks' worth of training in a client's home to get the dog prepared to come, uh, and stay with us. So, we do once a week in their home for five weeks, and then we take it to the next level of intensity, um, for the type of training that the client wants. So, typically, a dog is dropped off at our facility, um, or at my home for the longest time, and then I get the dog underway in training. So, I start leash handling skills right away. So, the dog will come with some port of foundation. They can sit, they can down, they can do those things, and then I, I start working the dog.
Okay, and, uh, you briefly described different types of training. Can you just, any type of training you can think of that you will be doing with these dogs? Can you tell us now?
Be more specific so I can answer the question clearly.
Um, obedience training, you stress obedience training, um, are you gonna teach?
Riding in the car training, leash skills, being able to take it anywhere to do it, being able to go to the groomer and not bite the groomer. Um, we go through those, getting your toenails done, getting your teeth brushed. I mean, all the basic care and husbandry work as well as basic obedience.
What about, uh, protective training or attack training?
No.
None of that's done at the facility?
No.
Okay, and, uh, Commissioner Eisner brought up a couple of questions regarding, you know, the length certain types of training can take, and you were able to, uh, elaborate on that. Um, the overnight supervision, so there, there's gonna be an individual who's staying there, sleeping there every night? Is that a rotating issue?
I don't think my clients would have it any other way. A lot of clients, there's a, a particular gentleman here and his wife, he has two shepherds, and they sent their dog off for training. And when he dropped off the dog, he's like, "I had no idea and what he was gonna be there at that facility." You know, he didn't know. And so, um, I've been doing this long enough, uh, and I've cared for dogs, a large number of dogs in the daycare environment, grooming as well as lodging. And my other, we didn't have anybody overnighting there. And it's, you know, it, it works fine, but, um, for this level of care that this dog is receiving, that just, it can't be any other way. So, someone is there, yes, and will be there.
Okay, and, um, my questions have been answered, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, um, I was gonna ask, you, you, do you say you have a dog? Commissioner Weissman, what?
I said I have experience in.
Okay.
I have the dog.
Do you still have one?
Dog.
No, I, I don't have, my dogs anymore, unfortunately.
Let me, do you have a question? Yes, I do. Commissioner Eisner, go ahead. How many, uh, how much staff do you have?
Uh, so it's myself and three others.
Are, now, I would presume, what are the qualifications of all of the four people?
So, um, my husband likes to say that, um, I'm the inspiration, he's the perspiration. So, he manages all the, uh, needs of the facility. We've upgraded, the fencing was, uh, in pretty poor state, so, uh, we did all of that. We've updated all of the backyard landscaping to be outdoor turf for the dogs. Um, so, he's kind of the maintenance guy. Uh, and before a dog goes home, I hand the dog to him to say, "If you can walk it, then it's ready to go home," 'cause he is not a dog trainer. So, if he comes and brings the dog back and he says, "No, it's not ready yet," then I know we have more work to do. Um, the other two, uh, staff, uh, Kaylee, uh, is, and I have worked together since 2016. And then, we hired an individual before I sold the company. Um, she too has been, I don't know, four years, uh, donating all of her time to the local humane society, and then began working with us, and she's now with us full-time. And she will be our house manager, who will be onsite.
Does she have any training, any titles, other than?
No, a lot of this stuff comes hands-on.
Right.
You know, um, a lot of the, um, high-profile trainers I've trained with since the eighties. Um, and it, it's, it's really referral business. I don't advertise, I do nothing. Everything is word of mouth. If you Google me, you can find me. Um, I have all very good reviews, even in my previous business of doggy daycare, which I would never do again. Um, so, this is really, uh, that next level, uh, of income earning, um, professional delivery of some pet care services where families really want to take the time with their pet to the next level. And if you treat a dog like a kid, you often don't get the results you're looking for. So, you start looking for help. And there, um, is all kinds of help out there. I usually am the person who, I say, "Have you gone to this person? Have you gone to that person yet?" Uh, "Yeah, we've gone to them all, and, and they can help us, but we understand you can." So, I like to be the last person that gets called, not the first.
So, let me explain to you why I'm asking the question, and I will also clarify another question with it. So, your husband is a hands-on guy, but not a trainer?
Right.
The other two people that you have on your staff, in your words, they're not trainers, either they just have some experience. But in addition, you're also explaining to us that there is 25, 24-hour hands-on service. You're also explaining to us that you do a lot of your training onsite. What you make, the question that you're making me think through, and I want you to explain to me how to make me feel better about that, is you're not gonna be there all the time.
I feel like I am.
I, I know you feel like that, but you just explained to me that you're not. So, even though you, I, I need you to try to, you know, convince me how your training, um, is going to keep dogs quiet 24/7, 'cause you're not gonna sleep there 24/7. You will have other people, um, sleeping there, and if their training is not, um, up to your standard, how do you present to this board that you're gonna stop the barking or the noise or the, it, the many issues that could come up?
So, our training that we're doing now, we've been there since, since September doing training. So, there are dogs there, um, going through the process. The people see us out there with them. Um, I would say to you that the other two staff that I do have, they are, um, they are training. They have been, especially the, the younger, um, of the two of us has, has been trained by the Humane Society in how to handle a dog, how to quiet a dog, how to, um, apply first aid to a dog. Um, and then, running my facility, they also went through training in order to care for pets in that type of environment. So, uh, if I, I don't want to mislead you to think these people don't have training. They do have training.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
No.
They do, and they're, um, we have SOPs, so we have standards in which every one of us operate in the same caliber. Um, so, there's no deficiency in one person not being able to, to provide a deliverable based on our, what our standards are. So, uh, I, yes, you're right, I'm not going to be there 24 hours a day, um, but I am there seven days a week, and I am there all waking hours. And so, there, my, my assessment of their ability to, um, meet our standards has gone very, very well. And if, whatever this imposition of, um, "I can't transfer it," or "Somebody else can't buy the business," or whatever, you know, my neck is the one who's on the line in making sure those things are done.
How many dogs do you have there now?
None overnight. We do during the day, so people will come and go, depending upon who's calling and who's not.
So, so far, since you've owned this, or?
Yeah.
There's been no overnight dogs?
No, and I'll have mine, I'll bring mine, they will bring theirs. I really wanted to get an idea about what it's like there overnight. You know, whether there's, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a mixed-use area. So, there are people up and down the streets at 2 o'clock in the morning, and, you know, those were my concerns, and safety and, uh, those type of things. So, so far, so good. It's been great. I mean, I, I think everybody here has been very welcoming to us, and I've had no one complain as of yet. We had the local artist, Emily Taman, do a whole mural on the side of the building.
I, I know who that is, yes.
Yeah, she's done fabulous work. So, you know, we really wanted to just be part of that. But, uh, overall, so far, no complaints that I'm aware of.
Let, let me just ask you this one last question.
Sure.
If you don't get the conditional approval?
Yeah.
For overnight, is it still a viable business?
That's a great question. So, I probably have a half million dollars in this business, uh, in this building. And my option, um, after a very long conversation, a meeting with zoning and planning prior and getting here, you know, uh, I would prefer to be able to do the overnight because the, the care that you can give, um, and I do field trips now. Let's take, let's, let's use that for an example, uh, not to change points. But yes, I can, yes, I can make a living, um, you know, but I, I own another property in the Gainesville area. So, we set up a whole facility there where dogs do field trips. So, I'll take, you know, seven, 10, 14 dogs at a time on my motorhome, and we go up there and we'll stay up there a long weekend so that we can develop, uh, a more relationship specific with those animals uh, so that they can come back and live in, uh, an environment, and they're much more in tune with what it's supposed to look like in somebody's home. So, you know, overnight care is very important. It just is.
I have no further questions. Okay. I think you've been asked many, many, many questions. I'm not sure I can find anything to, to do my duty. Um, I, we've, we've talked about the various types of, or you talked about the various types of training requiring, um, overnight boarding and the amount of time. Is there any type of day boarding that, I'm sorry, day training that occurs there that didn't, does not require any boarding at night?
Yeah, so, um, for clients who have already gone through training, the dog is smarter when they go home than before they got to me. The parent is usually lacking in skill on how to hold that dog accountable and how to, what we call, drive the dog to those obedience skills that they've learned. 'Cause follow-through is everything. Holding the dog accountable is everything. And so, while that client is learning how to do that, then the dog will come for what we call a maintenance day. So, they'll come and they'll spend the day. We keep the dog on track and drive the dog all day long, make sure the leash skills are going as they should, that they're in a formal heel, you know, and they're not doing all those other things that we've trained out of them. While we're holding the, helping the parent, we go to the parent's house once a week. So, it's a balance of going to the parent's home and having the dog at our facility, make sure the dog doesn't fall off.
Um, you're, you're just training, you have, uh, training by right at the location, notwithstanding the, um, overnight stay. Um, would you, could, could you kind of guess as far as the number of dogs that you might have there during the day? Not with, I know that we're talking about.
It's about the same.
Limiting 10 at night.
It's about the same, give or take a couple, yeah.
So, that's pretty much your capacity, is about 10 dogs at a time?
I just don't want it. I've already, I've already, I've already gone down the 70-dog-a-day route.
Um, is, or, I, I, I know that, um, you do, uh, I mean, I, I don't think that it's just, people view you, whoever brings you your dog, their dog, is gonna view you as a resource. And, and I would suspect, um, you being a, a person that loves dogs, um, do you have any, uh, uh, associations with adoption services or anything?
I'm referred by quite a few of them.
Okay.
Especially dogs who, the...
Do you help people adopt dogs? I guess is what I'm getting at and things like that.
Yeah, I work with the German Shepherd, um, Rescue. I work with Suncoast Animal League, who's close by. Um, and I'm known as one of the very few people who will handle a dog who may not be the nicest in the world.
Okay, yeah, that's good. That, that's, I was just wanting to try and get an understanding of how you would fit in with the community other than just a, a business, which that is very important to me. Um, okay. That's all the, um, the questions I have. I know everybody had a, many other questions. Do any of the commissioners have any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Um, Ms. Vincent, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Okay, so what we're gonna do now is go to public comments. Um, are there any public comments? Please come forward.
Erin Henson, 112 Carlisle Circle and 501 South Penelope Sponge City Brewing. Andrea backs right up to where we are. We bought the property in October of 2021. She purchased the property in September of this past year. There was more noise when the dog rober was there, when they would let the dogs in the backyard while they would dry off because they would, didn't like the crates or whatever, for whatever reason. Um, we have had zero complaints with her dogs. And like she said, I don't know if you've all gone to First Friday and things, she is out walking the streets every single day. Um, no issues with any of the dogs. I, I don't understand, um, I don't understand the issues. And my, my one concern is, Mr., is it Eisner? I'm sorry, I can't.
Commissioner Eisner, yes.
Commissioner Eisner. Um, when you said you store a dog, we don't store dogs. Dogs aren't stored. So, I don't, that breaks my heart when you say that as a dog owner. My dog stays in a crate at night. It's for his safety, too. He loves his bed. It's a place where they go, they're comfortable there. It's not a bad thing to be stored. It's, it's a good thing. It's their home. That's where they stay.
I apologize for the word usage. I just was curious if she holds dogs overnight, that's all.
I, I understand. Um, I understand. That's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other public comments?
Peter Lacks, 514 Ashland Avenue. All right, guys, I'm gonna have to scold you. Unequal treatment. Unequal treatment. Earlier, you approved Sponge City Brewing right next door. Was there any questions to them of noise? No, not a word. Not one word. During the break, I walked outside to catch the lightning update. Three to one headman, oh, hit, hit it off the crossbar. What do I hear? Sound probably from either Morgan Mays or the, the Jamaican place that used to be Ballyhoo's. You can hear that. Now, another thing, something that wasn't pointed out that I think might be helpful. You're talking about the seniors next door at Santos. You ever drive by there sometimes during the afternoon? You see some old ladies or some people walking their dogs. Right next door, they got somewhere to help them train their animals. This is a needed service. And what the lady is explaining is a specialty service. It's all tied in together. It's not, "Hey, we're gonna, we're going out of town for the weekend. Can we drop our dog off?" No. Now, if you're that concerned about noise, we had an issue a while back. You can request for them to do soundproofing in the rooms. If there's two rooms, shouldn't be that much difficulty. But I don't think the noise is gonna be the problem. And what about the other nuisances that are already in the area? Safford Avenue, sometimes that gets a little wild. I'm sure Officer Trill can give you some stories. Mark probably has a few too. So, you can't put what goes on in the neighborhood just on their laps. So, I would say the way conditional uses are worked... So I would say the way conditional uses are worked, and Renee wisely brought it into the record, the fact that conditional uses are revocable. Now, I'm not putting it as a threat, I've just, so the knowledge is out there. And it appears to me, from what I've heard, that these people have the integrity and the reputation that they wanna maintain for their services such that they will meet your standards. And as I mentioned earlier, this area is revitalizing. You already proved Sponge City. You proved this. Maybe this stuff is the catalyst that revitalizes some of this area. You have two different individuals, two different groups coming from out of town but nearby. And I have to say Palm Harbor's not that far. So if there's an issue, I'm sure, is it Andrea? Andrea would have no problem responding. So I think some of your concerns really have been answered. And I would say, and I apologize earlier where I outspoken that, on the conditions, the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Board are reasonable and can be added in. And if you wanna add in, you know, soundproofing, the boarding rooms. But this is what conditional uses gives you the flexibility to allow for some of these things that we can't totally define. We're coming into a new world where there's a lot of new types of careers and enterprises coming that we don't have all the rules for. And you as judges have the ability to weigh all the various facts and make an equitable decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. Um, are there any other public comments?
Uh, hi, I'm Kaylee, 224 Countryside Key Boulevard in Oldsmar. Um, I have worked with Andrea for a very long time. I've also known her for a very long time. I know her family very, very well. Very, very lovely and sweet people. I've also worked with animals for a very, very long time. And I know the difference between a kennel and what special place that she is trying to put together. Um, it's very structured. It's very calm, you know, a very limited amount of dogs. Um, and we work with them in and out of the day constantly. And so I think this is a really special place. I wanna thank you for welcoming us to the city. Um, I know this has been a difficult case, but, um, I just wanna say thank you. And I think, um, we'll do a great job and hold accountable, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other, uh, public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access public comments?
Would like to speak on the side. Please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time. I'll allow the first person in.
Okay.
Yes, greetings. Can I be heard?
Yes.
All right, thank you. It's Robert, Rockline 755, North Lake Boulevard. Sorry I had to leave the meeting earlier. Uh, there was a lot of interesting stuff. I was online the whole time. Uh, I just wanna offer a little individual perspective here. Uh, as a, a dog owner for, I hate to admit, uh, over 55 years, and also an employee as an adoption services manager at the largest no-kill shelter in the United States for over two years. Uh, dogs will bark and it's what the people do about it. It is, sometimes it's the people that need the training, not the dogs. Uh, so I live in a very tight community now, the tightest I've ever lived in my life, even growing up in, in Queens, up in New York. We have about 15 feet between, uh, dwellings here. Uh, and the majority of owners out of the 122 old homes have dogs. And if they're outside, you'll hear them bark cause it's a fairly quiet area. If the dogs are inside, and I have two dogs that love to bark, they love to eat, they love to walk, and they love to bark. They do not react to my adjacent neighbors, both of who have, have dogs and are 15 feet away at, at the most, wall to wall, uh, when my neighbor's dogs barked. So if the dogs are outside, and my dogs are outside, they may respond. And I hear other people's dogs barking all the time. And they are usually quieted in a very brief period. Uh, that's what responsible people do. So the fact that you do have a noise co ordinance and it's all to all properties and all uses, and it's a, it's a tool, uh, should there be, you know, some negative impact, which I, I don't anticipate in this. I, 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 I don't like to be predictive. I don't like to say a dog will bark until it does. Uh, and then of course, you know, that's reasonable. Babies cry, dogs bark, uh, I whine with my back and my knees sometimes. But it's controlled and it's reasonable. So, uh, based on the fact that I am wall to wall with dogs in this community and yet suffer zero impact from that, and I may be somewhat cautious because I've been a dog owner and I've, I've worked with dogs. I don't predict that this will be a, you know, uh, an impact or a factor in, in this type of use. I have to agree with Mr. Delakis's statement just before, you know, you, you approve the use next door. Uh, the outside overhang is likely to be used, uh, for, you know, a music player, uh, on a rainy day. Normally they try to project back to the building, but you get some reflective, uh, you know, noise reverberating from that. It, it's, the other building is so far away that, uh, I really, and if it's, if it is aged people, they may, they may be like myself, a little less, uh, able to hear, uh, the noises that they used to. I, I really don't think that there's gonna be impact here. And, uh, I don't think there's gonna be impact from the brewery too, because I think they're gonna be responsive to the community. And they wanna participate, be involved, and join us. They're not against us. So, uh, with that, I'll close my comments and I, I leave it up to you to vote in accordance.
Thank you, Mr. Rockland. Okay. Mr. Jump, any other comments?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay. Um, does the applicant, everything was positive. And you have a chance to rebut anything that you disagree with what you heard. I would assume you don't have any rebuttal. Ms. Vincent, um, do you have any closing or summation that you would like to make?
Uh, the only thing I would just note that the conditions that were recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board are not in the resolution right now. So if you want those included, then make the motion so, to do so. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So what we're gonna do is close the public hearing. And, um, the next is to go to commission, uh, comments and, and give the commissioners an opportunity to, um, to discuss this further before we make any kind of a motion. So, um, Vice Mayor Lunt, you started off with some pretty good questions. What, what are your thoughts?
You know, I think from the onset, I'm looking for an excuse to say yes, even though this doesn't fit into a category that I wish it fit into. In other words, we haven't categorized this yet. I'm a little nervous about whether it really follows 72 or whether it really follows the transect. I've spoken to some of the neighbors personally. I haven't found anybody saying this is a bad thing, even in the daytime. I'm kind of a trust and verify guy. I'd like to go along with the motion with the conditions placed upon it by the Planning and Zoning Board and with the additional, uh, condition that it'd be revocable based on excess noise violations. Except that I don't know how to classify excess noise violations. Maybe Major Trill could help us with that.
Hang on, hang on. Let, let the city manager handle this.
I might want the city attorney to-
I'm sorry.
I might wanna, to him instead of, uh, for some more, even to help you where you wanna go.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Salzman?
Well, I, I have a couple of thoughts. One is that obviously it can be handled as a nuisance issue, which we would take through code enforcement. Um, we could put a provision, but it's hard to craft that particular language, um, tonight. Because it would be, I mean, how many nuisances? When do we determine what is a, an adequate nuisance of finding? A lot of times chief will tell you that they can go out and, uh, to a noise complaint. And by the time they get there, there is no noise. So it's a little difficult to craft that.
That's what I was-
I, I would rather it really be handled through code enforcement.
Okay.
All right. So barring that, I'm, I'm gonna say I'm gonna go along with this, with the conditions placed on it by Planning and Zoning.
Okay. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, um, thank you to the applicant for the detailed information. There's a significant amount of data that you provided. A significant amount of data. Uh, and I think you proved that this isn't just a normal kennel and it's just not a normal training facility either. Uh, so I appreciate the, the diligence and the amount of effort that you put in behind this. I thought you answered the questions great. From the board's perspective, I, I think you guys have had some really good questions overall and trying to figure this out. It, it, it's not a straightforward, um, condition. Uh, so I understand the questions. I understand the, the going back and forth. And I, I think it's a good sign that you guys are putting into practice kind of some of the things that are, I guess, learning some of the different things that are happening on the board. And I would commend you on that. So with that, I, I think it's, I think they've met this. It's not a super clear, is there a training? Is there a overnight boarding with training, um, stipulations in the, in this? I think it's something that's important to, um, understand is that it's a conditional use. And so conditional uses can be pulled back. Uh, and that's something I think, I don't, maybe you mentioned it, Mayor, I can't remember who mentioned it. But that's an important facet to understand in a situation with this, with this piece of property. Um, if there's multiple complaints because of dog barkings or something along those lines, um, the city staff, or I'm sorry, code enforcement through the police department would probably notify the city manager and notify the planning department. And then there would be some type of process in place and at that point to figure it out. So, um, with this, I'm happy to make a motion to move forward and approve this tonight.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I did wanna do is I did wanna make a clarification. There's a major difference between approving a beer location where people are drinking till whatever time and they can be told to keep quiet. The dog is a little more difficult to keep quiet. But I have no issues with the training part of this whatsoever. I do have, um, I, I have trepidations about approving, um, 10 dogs. Um, I know we keep speaking about approving it, a conditional approval and being able to pull it back. I come from the opposite and I would like to go to approve it with lesser amount of dogs and seeing that they could come back before us if there's no issues to add to that, to make sure. I prefer to take the baby steps rather than take 10 dogs and put it in that situation. I wasn't fully comfortable with, uh, I'm fully comfortable with the training of Andrea. Um, I had no issues with that, but she's not gonna be there all the time. And I can almost guarantee we're gonna have issues with dogs barking. I've heard every kind of comment. I live on dog, I have my own dog. I have dogs next door to me. One starts, the others go. Um, I heard Mr. Rockland say that in his house, his dogs don't, you know, there's no two dogs that are alike. So everybody can make their own comment about what their dog does. That doesn't mean anything about the dogs that come and Andrea would have to agree. She doesn't know how these dogs are gonna react. So I would prefer, if we're gonna take a baby step, um, I would not agree to the 10. I would agree to whatever it would be, three or four at a time and see how that transpires and then we'll vote.
Okay. Commissioner Cullias.
I've listened to everything. I've, um, been able to make my decision just waiting and balance all the information that's been given in front of us. And, uh, I'll be waiting to make my decision. Thank you.
Okay. You know, there's, there's a variety of ways of, um, cutting the pie on this thing. You could, you could, uh, I, I think as, um, Ms. Vincent gave us a couple of suggestions. The P and Z board has got some conditions. The staff gave some conditions. I think Commissioner Eisner, your idea of, uh, starting off with, uh, slow steps. I, you know, we've got our code enforcement. I, you know, I, for me, um, it, we also heard one, and I, I think Commissioner Carr recalls, we had one that was gonna go into, uh, the old, uh, Philippe House down there. And, and I think Commissioner Cullias, you were involved in that, uh, at least on that side. And we, we, I didn't really have an appreciation of, of really what that was gonna be, unlike what we heard tonight. I'm, I'm very comfortable with what I heard tonight. I'm also, um, you, you've invested a whole lot of money. It's not like you're renting that if things go bad, you can walk away. So you've invested a whole lot of money. That's a big factor to me. And then also the fact that it's not transferable. It's to this applicant that we have this evening. So I, I don't, and, and my suspicion is, if code enforcement shows up at the front door of that business, I think with the investment that you got and how it would affect the bottom line, I don't think you're gonna allow that to continue on with whatever the problem is. I mean, I just, I just have to have that faith in a business owner here in town. And I also like the fact that, um, um, that you're willing to help with adoption services and rescues. We have a rescue dog. Turns out to be a perfect dog. Didn't need any training, never needed any training. So, um, of course, we waited 40 years to get the perfect dog. All the other dogs, I can say, haven't worked out that well, but this one is a keeper for sure. So, um, and she started out as crate train. It didn't live too long. My wife insisted she doesn't belong there, so she's got the run of the house. Anyway. Getting back to the, the main point, I, I'm gonna support this. I, I just have, um, earlier, the city manager and I had conversations. I wasn't sure how all this was gonna play out. I, I would've felt better if somebody would've showed up from next door complaining that this wasn't gonna work as we did with the, how the residential. I know Mrs. Vincent was probably put between a rock and a hard place on this one, given what she had to work with. And, you know, quite frankly, um, we can get scolded, but quite frankly, I really appreciated all the hard, hard, uh, questions that this commission came up with because it kind of drew out how the applicant reacted. And the applicant did not tell us what we wanted to hear. She answered the questions. Many other applicants tell us what we wanna hear. And then we, we wind up walking away scratching our head as far as the way that's gonna go. So, um, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, bet on you this evening that it's gonna work out. And, um, I'm, I'm sure you're not gonna disappoint us in the town. And, and, um, so I, I would be ready to entertain, unless there's any other comments. Any other comments? Last call on comments. I'm gonna entertain, um, uh, a, a motion and a second. And we need to adopt both the staff recommendations and the P and Z board recommendations and that. And is there any other condition that a commissioner wishes to add?
My only condition is I wanna have less, but I don't see that being a popular vote, but that's okay.
You know, and, and no, you're right. I mean, I don't, that was, when we started out initially this evening, I was trying to figure out a way to kind of walk this way in. But at this particular, if, if there was somebody, uh, that was showing up that was out there in, in the audience that questioned what was going on here, I could see that. But everybody's been very positive and it seems like there's a great deal of experience behind this business. It's not like, it's a hobby that I wanna make a, a, you know, turn it into a business. So there's quite a bit of an investment in that. So I had to, I have, me myself, I have to weigh those factors into this decision. And I, I think saying that, um, we're gonna limit you to four dogs first and you have to come back, I, I'm not so sure that that's, uh, that's necessary at this point. I might be wrong. I mean, I, I, but I would, in my opinion, the chances of my being proven wrong from, based on what I heard tonight are, are very slim and, and, um.
What I was gonna say to you is the people have not been notified. That's the issue that I have. The management were notified, but not the people, so.
Well, I understand. We'll find out. And they'll let us know if they, if, first of all, if, if the applicant, um, isn't keeping the, uh, the, the dogs quiet and then the residents are upset, we'll start hearing that and we'll have to deal with that. I understand what you're saying. I'm just gonna have to have a little faith in, you know, the fact that this is a little bit, this is, as, as far as I can see, a very above board applicant. And they were very direct in answering the questions. And, and I don't think she's telling us everybody is, um, um, you know, experienced and, uh, she's very honest. you know, experienced and is very honest in that, so. I, I don't know you. I'm sorry. So whatever I sound like, I don't know you, so I'm not advertising for you, but that's just your, based on your presentation this evening, so thank you. I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Commissioner Eisner, if you want to add that on as a motion, you can. I don't know that you'd get a second, but it would be up to you to do that.
I'll remain silent.
Mayor, I make a motion with staff, to approve with staff recommendations with the conditions and then the additional three condition by, conditions by the planning and zoning board.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. If there are any, if there are no other comments, and this is Commissioner Carr, I didn't quite hear, that included the, both P and Z and the staff comments.
That's correct.
Conditions.
That's correct.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
No.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Okay. That ends the, we're done. That ends the ordinances and resolutions, and.
Mayor, we have another.
We have the right-of-way vacation.
We have another ordinance.
Oh, the amending the right-of-way, yes. Okay, thank you very much. Item 18, ordinance 2023, amending the right-of-way vacation. Mr. Salsman, if you could read that by title.
Ordinance 202302, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending section 216.00 of Article 12 of Appendix A, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, to re, to reinstate the requirement for calculation of the application fee based on land valuation, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That is ordinance 2023.02, read by title only on first reading. Second reading will be January 24th, 2023.
Okay. This is not quasi-judicial. City manager, of course.
Ms. Vincent.
Yes, this is per the board's direction of, of last year. We finally have this back in front of you. This ordinance reestablishes the fee for vacating right-of-way. This is essentially restoring what was in the code prior. So if an applicant wishes to vacate right-of-way, they will have to pay a fee of 50% of the appraised value of that right-of-way to be vacated. So I'll answer, in the interest of time, I'll ask, you know, if you have any questions, but essentially, it restores the code to what it was before.
Okay. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Public comments?
On the vacation?
Yes.
Well, we need to be scolded again.
This is one of my items.
Thank you for bringing this back. And again, we have to remind the public who is responsible for this original ordinance change that cost the city money. Ed Armstrong. Now, I know we knew it was for the public process, so you can probably put in some amendments for exempt organizations. Two things I want to point out. Based on the property that was vacated to the North Trails, I think Renee said it was a 20-foot easement. I remembered 15-foot of the vacation. By 620, that gives you 8,750 square feet, which is basically equal to 2.6 lots, based on them having 3,500 square feet. They bought the property for roughly $600,000. 18 lots comes out to $33,333 a lot, times 2.66, that's $88,666. Divide that in half, $44,333. That's how much the city got shorted on North Lake Trails. Now, I know this is for, what is it, 216, am I correct? The ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. But if you look at the conditions above as to what are the guiding principles for allowing a vacation, the last one is, it doesn't provide access to water. And that was because we wanted to make sure people could have access for boats, walking, and stuff like that. You have the opportunity in changing this, because it is an ordinance and it's the first reading, to also look at that factor. And maybe a new addition to that line, not only access to water, but how about access to open space? This allows you to have another criteria that allows you to decide whether you vacate or not. And the reason why I point this out is because the one that was off of Bayshore, I forget the side road they wanted to vacate, which kind of, I know was denied, but part of the reason there was vacant property that was open space, that we were saying, well, could we use it for something else? So not only should we change it to put the fee back in, but maybe we should also expand our idea of what the public interest is beyond just access to the water. Is public interest access to open space? Is public interest access to maybe a, let's say, a retail area that people would have the ability to make passage to get to that more easily? So there's, there's a, I think, a broader view that can be taken as to what that vacation giveaway access is. So I just wanted to throw that out, to see, show you again how these outside attorneys have cost us money, but also to look at how we can better utilize or have a little more criteria of what we're actually looking at in the interest before we vacate. Thank you.
Mr. Leikis, I've got a question for you. I'm not sure understood what you meant by access to open space. When you were saying, oh, access to open space, you're talking about using the unimproved right-of-way to access open space, or that is open space?
Well, let's say on the other side of this road, there is wooded areas, or there's an area that is already open space, but it's not access to water. So is that not as important to have your residents be able to access open space as much as it is to access the water? Because sometimes these.
Public, public open space.
Say again?
Public open space.
Uh, that would be for y'all to define. Public or just open space in general, depending on the property boundaries that it would abut to.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any public comments?
And there are no raised hands at this time.
Let's go to the commission, whether you have any questions for Mrs. Vincent. Vice Mayor Lunt.
I don't really know if it's a question or a statement. So can we, we can obviously change section F to reflect that the valuation should be decided as the average of the surrounding property? Is that, rather than leaving it up to the Pinellas County property appraiser, who doesn't appraise city-owned land?
They appraise the city-owned land. Well, they, they appraise the surrounding property owner.
Yeah, but they don't appraise streets.
No, and I mean, that, typically, what happens is, when we get an application like this, when this was still in place, we look at the adjoining property value, and, and you can look at it as, there's a, there's various appraisals. There's, there's a, you know, there's the tax appraised value, there's a, it's not fair market, but there's another, there's a sales, you know.
I know, there's a fair market.
Yeah, so, I mean, so that's, I think, is where the gray area is. You know, I think the reason that this was, has been done, you know, or the reason it was probably the way, usually, these are small, small tracts, so to pay the price to get an appraisal, to find out what it really is, you know, it's a, it's kind of a balancing thing.
You know, so could we put the cost of paying for the appraisal?
Deducted from?
On the proposed vacatee, I guess?
Um.
On the proposed property owner that's asking us to vacate?
Certainly. I mean, I mean, if you were going to require an appraisal, then yes, it would be on the, it would be on the property owner, the person seeking the vacation to, to pay for that. If that's, you know, if you want to change the methodology on this to not look at this, you know, the surrounding property values and come up with a calculation, then certainly you can do that.
I mean, I look at the property appraisers site probably more often than you would It's less than what it should be in some cases, more than what it should be in some cases. It's all over the board. I would much more trust current evaluation rather than be subject to somebody's.
I mean, yeah, that, that's a decision of the board. If you want to, you know, if you want to have that be subject to, you know, an appraisal or, rather than this methodology, then we'll have to rework this and, and bring it back in second reading, the methodology.
Well, this is going to come back for a second reading anyway, is it not?
It will, yes. Yes, it does.
So that's, that's my only question. I just, I just like to verify who, who values this and the fact that we get paid for.
Okay. Commissioner Carr.
Thank you. I'm just trying to recall, wasn't there some type of memo by the old city attorney stating that there is some conflict with receiving costs or dollars in this situation? Was that reviewed by anybody, or?
Basically, he was, he, he didn't say it was illegal. He said it was unlawful, in the sense that he felt that he could not defend a case if it went to court as far as, if somebody challenged this. But then he also said he wasn't sure who would challenge it anyway. So the whole, I mean, if you look at the record.
That's fair. That's fair.
Okay.
From this standpoint, I, I under, it makes sense that there's some type of compensation. It's almost like you're giving a piece of property to somebody, or you are technically, outside of the application fee. So I'm fine with seeing this move forward. It's fair to ask a question about an appraisal cost. I, I know in past presentations, when you have like a funny piece of property that lays next to another piece of property or within another property, there's not much value to it unless you add it to a piece of property. So that can somewhat be sometimes a surprise at times. I was surprised a few times when I, when I found that out, when I've looked at a few of these that were presented before the board in the past, that there's really not a whole lot of value there unless it's connected to it or the budding property. So I've got no issues with the appraisal side of things. With the open land and the, and the public comment, I'm not there yet with that one. That's something we could look at further down the road, but I'm fine with supporting this tonight, the way it stands.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sort of agreement, in agreement with what Vice Mayor said, only what I think, let's see if you're okay with this, where we charge accordingly for the surrounding property that's adjoining it at 50%. So for argument's sake, if there's 1,000 square feet that you have, and you're going to be vacating another 100, you're getting 10%, and then you're just going to pay 5%. So you don't even have to involve an appraiser. It's just going to go at the going rate of what the other land is. If that's okay, that's, otherwise, I have no real issues with this.
Okay.
Well, what if they haven't purchased it because, because the contract is dependent upon them vacating that particular property? Then there's no real valuation there. But there has to be a value on the property that they're purchasing.
This, okay. Is there any other comments right now?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Kulyas.
No, I'm happy it's written and following up and changing a lot of things that were changed for certain reasons here in the future, so, thank you.
Yeah, I, just a couple of things. One, before this was changed, it was, it was in place for, as you read it right now, for 25, 30 years or something like that.
Correct.
So it's withstood the time, the test of time. Other municipalities, there's a memorandum I wrote that do things a variety of different ways.
Right.
And, and, you know, you, maybe the city manager can resurrect that memorandum and give it to you to take a look between the first reading and the second reading. The other thing, Ms. Vincent, I, I don't, I don't recall reading, I, I mean, obviously, when you said it's going to be put back the way it was, I read the edition that was in there to see that, but I didn't look over the rest of the ordinance. That's not changing. Is it in there that says what we use this money for?
No.
And that might be something that I would appreciate adding, and I don't know how the rest of the commission to add that to our land preservation fund, I think.
Oh, I take that back. It says, "The proceeds of which shall be utilized solely for the purpose of acquisition of future rights of way by the city." So it is specified in, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's, as a matter of fact, that was the rationale that other cities gave, is that we're giving up right-of-way, therefore, the money that we will use to get from that, we will purchase additional right-of-way because it's not free. That was their rationale. So if that's in there, I'm fine with it. I just didn't want it to go somewhere and then, you know, used for something else, so go ahead.
Could you, I mean, would you be interested in clarifying that? Because future use as a right-of-way then kind of goes to a, I don't know if there's an actual fund for future use as a right-of-way, but there's a land preservation fund, so it might be advantageous to add.
Or we could add it, for that, or land preservation, whatever we would like. The one right-of-way would be something, for example, like, you know, we, we're putting in a side, a trail. We're putting in a trail, we need to buy some additional right-of-way for a trail or something like that. I think that's what it would be used for, but I, I'm open for adding to that as far as the land preservation fund, which I think is established, right?
It's established, and that would be the, if it's proper, that would be the easiest place to put it for multiple uses, again, of acquiring land.
Because we don't, we don't have it for right-of-way, we don't have a right-of-way acquisition fund, right?
No, I mean, Mr. Herring could set that up to do it that way, but it'd be starting at nothing. You'd probably have more use of it for future things, for land preservation.
Maybe that's what we should think about.
I agree.
So it would be, we would be approving what you have tonight with a, a change to add, to change that, you know, you look at the wording, Ms. Vincent, and.
So you want it to be for the purchase of future rights of way or for land preservation?
Well, what I think the city manager is saying is, we don't have a fund.
Right.
Where right-of-way, money for right-of-ways goes into that fund. It's, goes into something, and then we'd have to resurrect about how much money. It's like, you know, we don't do any bean counting. We just assume we're going to use that money for something, but in the meantime, it's used for something else. And the land preservation fund that we established, that's actually an account, and that's what the city manager is saying. So it, it, I think that's what you're saying, is putting that money.
Is there a restriction on the land preservation?
See, I think there's a restriction on the land preservation fund and how it can be used. I don't think you can take money out of the land preservation fund and buy future rights of way. So that's, I think that's a, I could be wrong, but I think there's a specific limit on what, you know, on how, yeah.
No, no, you're, you're right about that.
Yeah.
Well, if there's restrictions on what we can use for land preservation fund that discludes buying further right-of-way?
Yes.
Or excludes buying further easements, then that's not good.
No, that, that's, that's right. And so what we need to do.
I think we'd have to set up a new fund.
Why don't we just?
We'll work on it between now and second reading.
You and the city manager can talk about that and.
And if we leave it that way and do a new fund, we can always address it later on if we do.
That's fine.
The main portion of this is getting this back to the way it was. We can bring that up later, and.
Okay.
And Ron will have a fund set up within 20 minutes to, a place to put it, so that's not going to be an issue.
Yeah. We haven't done that in the past, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
We, that's what it's for, but we don't know how much money we've accumulated over the 25 years or whatever it is that this fund's been set up for that. Unless we go back each item of vacating and figuring out how much money that we've.
Oh, in the past, yeah, you're right.
That's what I'm getting at. Let's just leave it as it is right now, and if we need to change it, then we'll change it later. That's all the questions I have. Are there any? any other last, okay, is there a motion in a second? Well, we did the, we did the public records. Is there a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay. Now, we'll go back to the special consent.
As we call all the staff back into the audience, because a lot of these things are staff, and it's Billy's coming up for the next one. I will tell you, Dan, since I'm probably not going to have time at the end of the meeting as looking at the time, but the issue of the Santos Isles and notification management company, I can assure you, it's put down on the list of things to change. But in the meantime, before that change, we will make sure, we will make sure even before that's done, that the policy and I'll work with Renee how to do it. We will make sure, however we have to do it, posting things, door hangers or whatever, that we are going to make sure until that change comes or until this board goes different, that not only the management company, because I don't trust most of the management company, no offense anyway, the ones I've dealt with. So, so, however the way, and I know it could be if it's somewhere like Riverside Apartments, a Trojan tab, but whether it's posting stuff in there some way, we'll find some other way even before we actually change the documents or the, or the way to do it. But we'll make sure that's happened so the residents are notified in future.
I think it's only fair.
Yeah. I, I do too. Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's one of the reasons I walked.
So, now Billy's been waiting lately, so. Turn it over to Billy.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. I won't take but, but a couple of minutes this evening. I've presented, I put on the agenda audit number 042023 of the police department, specifically the property and evidence unit within the police department. There were, there were no, there were no findings in the audit. There was seven observations. So, I won't really go into too much detail. I, I do, I do want the board to know, though, while this audit of the, the police department, the police department along with about three or four other departments will be, I don't want, I don't want you to think this is a one audit and then we're not going to look at the police department again. It's, the police department is one of those departments that has a lot of inherent risks. So, it'll be, they'll be audited more often than, than some other departments and then, say, library services. So, the, the, the only difference is the, the audit objectives will be, will be different. So, this audit just focused on property and evidence. And the reason I chose property and evidence is because it's a, it's a, it's a high-risk area because you, you know, you don't want a, a police officer, you know, stealing evidence. You don't want evidence being tampered with or, or, you know, someone being exonerated, wrongfully exonerated or wrongly convicted because evidence was spoiled or mishandled in any way. So, it's, it's a high-risk area, but it's an area that, that can be managed through, through proper controls. So, what, what I did was I basically just, just broke down the, the property and evidence process into five phases: intake, processing, storage, checking in and out, you know, as needed. Some, sometimes you check out evidence to, to go to court. And then ultimately, the disposal of the evidence. And then I, I did an audit test for, for each one of those phases. And, and, and all the tests I did, I, there, there wasn't one exception at all. So, it was about as clean of an audit as, as, as you can get. So, without going into too much detail because of the late hour, I mean, I'd be happy to answer, excuse me, any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Poulos, for your consideration of the hour as well. I've, I've read your audit in detail, and it, it's, it's excellent. So, thank you for that. But let me get to some of the commissioners. Vice Mayor Lunt?
Um, okay. I'm interested, I guess, more in, and when you said, "Well, I'm going to audit the police department," you just picked property and evidence as the highest risk area? Or, I mean, with the fire department, it was personnel and time. So, how, how do you make this determination?
That, that, that's a good question, actually. It's, it's the, the hardest part of, of, of the job, to be honest with you. And I'm grappling with it, with the same thing right now with Public Works Storm Otter. It's, there's no such thing as a, as a, you know, you, I've heard people say, "Oh, do an audit, do a top-down, you know, top, you know, it's from top to bottom, look at everything, blah, blah, blah." There's no such thing. You have to, you have to come up with audit objectives, and, and I use a risk-based approach. So, it, with, with the police department, there's no, there's no, there's no lack of, of risks, whether it's, it's, it's personnel, whether it's equipment and, and asset management. Property and evidence, that's, that's a, that's a major one because of, of all the risks there with reputational risk. And it's, it's, if you didn't have controls with property and evidence, you don't want to be on the news because a rogue police officer did something wrong. Or, like I said earlier, someone, someone, you know, gets, gets exonerated that was guilty because the evidence got spoiled or, or the reverse happening. So, I guess to answer your question is, I do kind of like a mini risk assessment for every audit. And I'll, you know, I'll pick three or four things, and then I, I go from there. There's some, some things I, because I also have to take into account the resources. It's just me, so I can only look at so many things. So, I, I, I hope that answers your question. It's, it's, it's difficult to, to choose. In this case, I chose property and evidence. And if you were just to Google, you know, police audits or something, you would find most auditors, do you look at property and evidence when they, when they audit a police department?
Is it likely that you're going to do another audit of the police department based on something else but B and E?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I would, yes.
Firearm handling or, or armaments or, you know, whatever else the police is?
Absolutely. And that, that's what I was getting at. The next audit wouldn't be about property and, and evidence. It'd be about, you know, like I said, asset management or, or how they're, how they're booking their hours. Because the way, it's just like, just like the fire department, all first responders, the way they, they, their hours are calculated a lot differently than ours.
This was just not the only audit you're going to do with the police department, was one of several.
Yes, correct, correct. Yes, that's a better way of saying it. Yes, yes. Sorry, I probably got a little wordy with it.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
I thought the report was well, well-written, and it's good to see that the, that things are doing, things are being done well at the police department. So, great job, Major. Keep up the great work. Thanks.
Good.
Do you want to make, should I?
Why don't you go ahead and we'll get to Vice Mayor Lunt after Commissioner Kuyas.
Okay. I read it in detail, and I was impressed with our police department, as I've always been. And I thank you. I didn't have any issues with it. It was exactly as I would hope and thought it would be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Mr. Poulos, it was a great audit. I, no doubt, property and evidence would be in a tip-top order, especially with operations, Major, right next to us. And we'll just look to see in the future and just, you know, our police department's accredited, and you did a good job looking over, overseeing everything, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Poulos, I, I appreciate what you do. And, and again, you continue demonstrating why we needed to have our own internal auditor here in person, on staff. And so, I really thank you for that. I wanted to also give, if you don't mind, give Major Trill an opportunity if he's got anything to say. Major Trill, do you have any comments on this or?
Yeah, I would agree. Property and evidence being important for the credibility and accountability. But it's, I, I can't take the accolades they can give me here because it, it falls under, Casey Johnson's done a phenomenal job, Sergeant Crawford overseas, and then it falls under Frank Reggero. And one of the main reasons, not just the personnel, but the accreditation. I knew, you guys said you knew, I knew, it was going to be tip-top shape because of accreditation to CFA. And that is really thanks to retired Chief Cochin, current Chief Young, and Frank Reggero, who was our accreditation manager, really not just got us where we need to be and passed it off to Mathis to carry the torch, but he really set us up as, like a template to look at on how to do things with accreditation. So, mad props out to those gentlemen and Casey Johnson as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, if I could just add, yeah, Casey, I worked closely with Casey. And usually with, with audits here, I have access to pretty much every, anything I, I need. With the police, it's a little different because they, they're, the, their records management system is, is, it's, I guess, I don't know what the word would be. I guess partly owned by Pinellas County, so I didn't have the access to the records. So, I had to work closely with her, and I, I really put her through the wringer. And she, 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 she worked hard to get me what I needed. So, I'd, I'd like to give her a shout-out as well. She's very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Poulos. I, I should have gone to public comments first. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments concerning the fire depart, I'm sorry, police department audit?
And there is no one in the queue at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments on the commission?
Good.
Uh, roll, I'm sorry, motion in a second?
Motion to approve internal audit, the police department, property and evidence.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Poulos.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good evening.
Okay. Item 10, award filed number 230082-C-JL, purchase of vehicles utilizing Sourcewell contracts. 091521-NAF and 060920-NAF, vehicles, cars, vans, SUVs, and light trucks with related equipment, accessories, and services. City Manager Lacourse.
Yes, I'll turn this over to Janina to just go over this, which is obviously brought up by price. And I'll let her go forward with the subject.
Good evening. Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. I'll just be pretty brief. You have the package in front of you. Basically, what you're looking at is all of the vehicles except the one were approved in the line item budget workshop that we held for 2023 last year. And these are the replacement vehicles that Fleet has put in the package for this year's buy. We do have a couple others coming along, but they aren't put together yet. What we did was, we took all these vehicles, and since they're all coming from Allen J, that's why they're all on this particular memorandum. The one vehicle that was not in the 2023 budget was the one that was totaled. And the police provided a separate memo, and the insurance is pretty much going to cover the cost of that vehicle. And I'll turn it back over for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this item?
Here to Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. Kind of want to tie it to the discussion during the consent agenda about items three and four.
Sorry, say it, say it again?
Well, y'all earlier had items three and four with regards to a purchase of a Ford truck and replacement OEM parts. And the discussion was about the inventory of quote-unquote unused vehicles or little-used vehicles. I think it's really time to get a full inventory of all the vehicles the city has, including what's in the police department. As you notice here, it does say in here in the backup, the police department will be purchasing four new Ford interceptors for $314,000, but they're not replacing anything. We're adding vehicles, so let's just clarify that. And then the 2023 Chevy Silverado, it's being replaced from a Dodge Charger. So, we're going from a Charger, which, let's put it this way, 2023 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD, probably a diesel, is going to burn more fuel than a Charger. So, we're, we're getting heavier and bigger vehicles. And from my understanding, in part of the backup, it's for carrying stuff around for special events and such. Whereas in the lower part, the police department purchasing two Toyota Camrys that will be placing vehicles 6552 and 6405 Dodge Chargers. So, we're replacing Dodge Chargers with Camrys, but in one section, we're placing a Charger with a big, old, heavy Chevy Silverado. But I, I really want to go back to the point of looking at all of the assets. And I know Mr. Poulos has left, but to me, that would be something to see if we really have a need for all of these vehicles. Because if you look between the two sections of what the police want to purchase, you're close to half a million dollars. Half a million dollars. And I don't know about you, I drive to Publix, I go to the post office, I drive down Lime Street. And I've had this question in my mind even from before. I look to the left or to the right, depending on if I'm going east or west, and I see a lot of vehicles in that police parking lot. Also, maybe it has to be tied to how we utilize those vehicles. Is it one officer per vehicle? Are we no longer doing tandems? And the other thing is, sometimes when I see stops, there's five vehicles with five policemen. So, if you need more policemen, maybe have a couple in each vehicle, so you don't need as many vehicles. I'm not to here criticizing the police department in any way or their need for vehicles. It, to me, it's more of a fiscal aspect, an efficiency aspect. If we're going to be purchasing more vehicles, we need to be looking more at hybrids and more fuel-efficient, but also the actual need and usage of these vehicles. So, those are a couple of the thoughts that I had with regards to this. I know it says that some of this was already approved in the budget. And to me, next time you have a budget, you should, before that, have some kind of inventory of vehicles. As it was mentioned, you know, the year, the mileage, the amount of daily or weekly or monthly usage. So, you have a better idea of what to put in your capital expenditure budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We're, can I, can I make a motion to extend the meeting?
Can I make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:20?
Yes, that's what we need to do.
Okay. I make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:20?
I'll second.
11:20?
Yeah.
That's not going to get us anywhere. Roll call.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. It's an interesting 20 minutes, 11:20. That's good. We'll do it again. Okay, so, that was public comments from Mr. Delakis. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access public comments concerning this item?
And there was no one in the queue at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments? Vice Mayor Lunt?
Sure. Comments or questions or?
Either one.
I just have one sort of question. It's not really about the vehicles and where the cost and where they come from, et cetera. Since we already budgeted for them, I do have a question, though, as to whether we shopped any other contracts outside of Sourcewell.
We do, but typically, we tend to get the best rate from the Allen J.
I mean, we do doesn't mean, did we do that in this case?
No. They've gone, they've, they've used them in the past, and that's the one we've, we used, chose to use this time. We did not compare on that one.
All right, thank you.
The Sourcewell is the one that we approved about a year ago or less than that as far as the statewide contract. Is that the one that we're talking about?
Sourcewell is a national contract, national co-op, and it's called a fleet, kind of like a fleet sales. And the Allen J is part of that fleet sales management.
It was, it wasn't a year ago, about a six years ago. I mean, six months ago, we had some conversation. I think they're all already competitively bid within that.
Yes, they're competitively bid before we even reach, make the decision to go to that particular contract.
That was brought up by me, by the way, that conversation on Sourcewell six months ago. Was it six months ago?
Yeah.
It's, my stance is the same. We need to shop these contracts. We need to take a look at more than just Sourcewell. What happens is, these things are bid for multiple years. Because they're bid for multiple years and nobody knows what's going on with the, the economy, out two or three years, they do lower discounts. You can take, look at other, other contracts. Houston has a, a fleet vehicle contract. I don't recollect all the details off me, but there's, there are other contracts there. I think. I think we're doing the city a disservice if we don't at least make a cursory attempt to shop this kind of stuff. We're talking about half a million dollars here. If we shaved off another 10%, that's, that's $50,000. That's another vehicle, so.
Certainly.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I know I harp on this.
No, is that it? Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, thanks. I, I'm in support of evaluating additional contracts that are available to the city as well, too, when applicable. So I think this would be an area that would apply in that as well, too. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
I'm in agreement as well. I'd like to get more, more bids in, but at the same time, as was said earlier, I am hoping that within the next month or so, I can get a breakdown of what we have and what we need, what we don't need, because, I'll just be honest, I, I get sick to my stomach when I see these numbers. Um, you know, when I'm looking at $79,000 for a vehicle, and I don't know how often it's being used, or that we may have another vehicle sitting there idly doing nothing that could compensate for this. So, I mean, I'm going to go along with it because it's, it's here, but I really need to have my eyes open to what we have, and I know that's not always what you do. You just go for, you know, newer vehicles and you upgrade it, but I need to get a full-blown figure of what we have as a city.
Let me, let me get some clarification for you. Ms. Lewis, this is not, there isn't a time limit on this Sourcewell contract, right? It's there?
Correct.
We, we can buy them anytime.
Yes.
I would be reluctant. If you're talking about not doing this right now?
Yeah, the problem is putting things on back order, because these vehicles are not available. That's like why we needed that Chevy Silverado as a single source. That truck is built, so these have to go on order, and the longer we hesitate, the price may change as well. That's an issue we've been having.
Availability mostly. Places, departments are sitting a year, waiting a year and a year and a half to get vehicles.
It's an important piece of information there.
But again, on, on what my charges for vehicles that I've heard in this nine months and stuff, believe me, all that and send me more, we want to make you happy, because I don't want to cringe every time a vehicle comes up, up, like I, like I tell my department heads and my, we're not doing another vehicle again. So I want to get all that, everything you want to know about vehicles and stuff, out, we're going to be working to get that all to you and stuff, so, so, so all your concerns as we hit this next budget cycle and go are addressed.
Okay, go ahead.
I did want to clarify, I was not, I know how hard it is to get vehicles. I shopped around recently. It's, you don't pick your color, you don't pick your style, you pick what's available and you jump on it, or you don't get it. Well aware of that. Not contesting with that. But there are other areas. In, in this market, it's easier to go from, from distributor or dealership to dealership than it is to just take what's available. Some vehicles are, are sold over asking, and some vehicles are sold under asking. It just depends availability, chips, I mean, there's so many different variables today, so I understand all that. I'm talking about, that I'm sick to my stomach about, keep seeing the vehicles, and then not only are we paying a half a million dollars, but I know you're going to come before us and say, it needs this maintenance and this maintenance, and we keep going up and up and up, and it's just no end in sight. So what I want to do is make sure that we have some logistics on how we're going to go forward, period. That's it.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Uh, Janina, I only have one question. These, these are scheduled purchases that we do every year for vehicles and for our fleets, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll just make some comments in the end that are just incentive-based for the police department and just everything involved with it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions? And we're going to go to a motion and a second, then we'll get to comments if there's any comments.
I'll make a motion.
Motion and a second? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Are there any commission comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, you know, this type of rotation of purchasing vehicles, you know, with our police department, our fire department and stuff, it's actually an incentive that actually helps bring in other police officers and, or wanting to stay here. They like newer equipment, they, you know, they like to be able to drive around in vehicles, and when I had discussed with Major Trill, the, the expenses with the Ford, the Ford Hybrid, a lot of those recommendations was from the Sustainability Committee to try to do some conversion and purchasing some more hybrid vehicles. So those hybrid vehicles do come at a cost, and, and, you know, they, they are the latest, but this is a scheduled purchase that we do every year, you know, for a certain amount of vehicles. Now, I'm definitely open for reviewing other contracts to see prices and getting a, a list of all of our vehicles out there, just so be more organized and, but happy to support it.
Okay. Are there any comments?
All I was going to say is that honestly, vehicles are one of the most, I mean, that my experience, city manager, commissioner, dealing with the residents and what, their observations and what they see and stuff like, is one of the most frustrating things that, that there are. I think when the city manager provides you even the thing, the list of vehicles, all the vehicles that were, that we have in inventory, when he gives you that, I think you're going to be, your, your, your eyes are going to open up and not quite understand, but they are needed, and we could go to the next level as far as their usage. And, and quite frankly, the time to deal with this is not when something comes forward for us to purchase, but it's at the time of budget and to understand. It's the same thing that we pull everything in together. So hopefully, by the time we go to budget, the city manager will have provided you enough information for you to have an understanding. All I know is that this business of buying seven police cars, and I, I mean, are they addition to the police cars or replacement?
It's playing a rotation.
No, we're, we're, we're looking to get rid of the older cars.
Right.
And we base that on age, the mileage, and how much we put into it, like if it's a car that costs a lot of money, we want to get rid of it, if, if the maintenance. We're trying to get rid of the Chargers. The Chevy Silverados is going to, going to be for Detective Division, but one of the reasons we needed that is because it's going to go to the arson investigator who keeps carcinogens in it, and you don't put that in the back of a Camry and drive around with carcinogens in it. So we needed a pickup truck. The Sierra, the 1500 Sierra, we weren't planning on doing that, but what, we talked about availability. We can't get hybrids now, and we can't get Tahos now, until middle of 2023 anyways, and the ones that we already ordered are going to be late in this year. So what we did was, we planned on buying a truck for the special events, because he's towing barricades and all that kind of stuff around, and you can't do that in a smaller car as well. And we were going to purchase that next year, but because we couldn't, we decided to purchase it this year with a totaled-out Tahoe when they rear-ended it and totaled the Tahoe on 19. Now we have that money to purchase it, so we're, we're basically flip-flopping, and we'll buy an SUV for patrol next year, and we just did that this year. But that's one of the reasons why we, we can't get a Prius and drive around, the barricade thing to take out to all the events that we have in the city, and the special events coordinator is going to be doing a lot of that hands-on. The hybrids, we need to do for testing, because of sustainability ask. We've had, we've got a couple before for administrative, but we want to see the feasibility and how well it works long-term for patrol, and if it's going to work out, so we need to test and evaluate those. But they're going to be replacing, so when, what we'll do is get rid of the ones that we don't want anymore. Now, it was brought up that you drive by the police department, there's cars in the parking lot, there's people in the police department that work, that drive cars. There's also, we have to have extra, because when someone's Tahoe goes down, they can't just walk to a call. So they're going to, we're going to have to have a fleet of backup, so when cars go to the shop to get worked on or sent up to, to Chevy that are up there for a week, they need a vehicle. So we need to keep ones that, the best of our lot, we try to keep there, to have that. We have some other ones for administrative purposes and for special details as well.
Yeah. No, I, I, that's, I, I mean, for me personally, I know what you do, I just want to make sure we, there was some comment about there are additional vehicles. I would have been surprised if we weren't sticking to seven vehicles.
No, we're, we're looking to get rid of seven. Now, if we have to keep an extra one, that, but we're looking to replace.
And basically, you've got your pool, you take the best one and get rid of the worst one.
Right.
In the pool.
And, and side note, the chief is driving an old, old car. He gets a new hybrid, just for the record.
Okay. Ms. Lewis, thank you for the information. Did we have a motion and a second on this one?
We do.
Yeah, it's been motion and a second.
So, yes. We had a motion and a second.
Okay, and that was comments, so let's have roll call.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiatus?
Yes.
All right, it's 11:09. The next item is...
Tom can come up and join Janina on this one.
This is the part, right?
Who's taking care of the sweeper?
Okay. Number 10, purchase of vehicles, we got that one. Number 11, this is a sweeper, right?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go to the purchase of the street sweeper through Sourcewell contract.
Good evening, Tom Funtz, Public Works Director. Yeah, looking for the approval of an Elgin street sweeper to maintain the city's current FDEP requirements for stormwater operation. This is purchased through the environmental products of Florida utilizing a Sourcewell contract, 093021ELG, in the amount of $346,898. Our street sweeping program is critical to keep our roads and our waterways clear of debris and trash while meeting FDEP requirements. There's also a lot of annual reporting that must be completed and provide the FDEP in regards to this, this program. There'll be two street sweepers that were sent to auction, number 5998, which is a 2010 Johnson Alonzo, Alonzo, 6408, a 2014 Johnson V2 651, and both these sweepers are often, are unusable because of general deterioration of the aids, parts issues, and both have been severely past their useful life. Now, the newly purchased sweeper will be replaced, be replaced, the two that will be going to auction. The funds, sweeper purchase will be equally split across the following accounts at $115,632.66, between general fund, sanitation, and also the stormwater. We do have another sweeper, we still have, we'll have two instead of having three, so we're actually eliminating one of the sweepers that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Funtz. Does Ms. Lewis have anything to say right now?
I don't think, she'll be ready for questions if it has to do with the purchase.
Let's go to public comment. Any public comments concerning the purchase of the street sweeper? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments concerning the purchase of the street sweeper?
And there is no one in the queue at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commission comments, Vice Mayor Lunt?
Uh, yeah, so I'm understanding you need to keep the street sweeping program up to keep the permit from the state. I've got lines, I guess, I have two questions, maybe. Is there a specific reason that we need this specific model of Elgin street sweeper?
Uh, we felt it was the best one for the, the use we have over here, yes.
Okay, because, the reason I ask is, I kind of Googled around, you know, I'm like, and it seems, the most popular model seems to be the, the Region X1.
Right.
And the prices for the Region X1 seem to be significantly lower than the, the model we specified, which was the bare whatever.
The bare one. The bare one, we feel, this, this model here, we feel is better for some of the heavy materials, like leaves, sticks, things like that. Some of the other ones seem to be a little better on the, on the finer points. There's some mechanical, and this is a mechanical sweeper, too, not, not a regenerative one, which the regenerative one with the air, this is mechanical, so we feel much, much more efficient.
Their delivery date on this one?
Uh, 30 days, I believe.
30 days?
When's available, yes, sir.
Oh, okay, that's...
Which is odd in this market right now, so, yeah.
While we're jumping on it.
Yeah. And the only other comment I've gotten is, is, I think I know the answer. We use Sourcewell for this contract, we didn't shop any other contracts at all out there.
The Elgin was, well, we can talk to that, but the Elgin was the preferred, one we referred, we already have an Elgin, my mechanics are all familiar with it. It made a ton of sense, actually, and this is the best one probably out there.
Well, yeah, I understand the Elgin is the preferred, but there's other contracts that have awarded Elgin as well.
Elgin is the only one who is with a co-op, like the Sourcewell contract.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Elgin is one of the only vendors, the Elgin contract is only on the Sourcewell. So if we want to buy this Elgin type of sweeper, that's how it has to be done.
Huh? I'd, okay. Out of where?
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, if you thought a Silverado was expensive, this really surpasses that, for sure. What's the thought process of going from three to two sweepers, Tom?
Uh, of course, we're going to start, we're looking at program, and we talked about changing out vehicles over here to get this in a rotation. There's no use in having three sitting there. It's, it's, it's a waste of time and money.
Okay, so it's just an asset that more sat in the parking lot than actually was being used?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to read something. The sweeper runs 5:00 AM Monday to Friday on Safford, Tarpin, Tarpin, Safford, Tarpin, Safford, 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 Dodecanese, and I could just continue to go on. They all seem to run in the CRA program area. Why are we not paying for this through some funds of the CRA? This is for beautification.
In, in the past, I can answer that one, because in the past...
I'm listening.
And with past commissions, they really did not like the use of CRA funds for that sort of thing. They wouldn't, you know, they wanted that preserved for more specific things, and it wasn't the course of that commission to be able to come forward and try to use some money for equipment like that. Now, that can change. We've got a new commission, and that can change as we approach the next budget, but, but that was, that was not a preferred thing of, of, of past commissions to use that CRA money for that, and that's the major reason.
I haven't seen the clock sweep up anything since it's been installed. I haven't seen the brass statues sweep up anything since those were installed. This is something what I want to, I want to go through with this. I think this is a great thing to have, but I think it should be supported for what it's used for. And it's used, I mean, if somebody tells me where, I mean, I know it goes through residential areas as well, but I want to spend some of the money to pay for this, for where it's cleaning.
We need to extend the time before we continue.
Motion to extend...
Is there a motion and a second to extend the time?
Motion to extend the meeting till midnight?
Second? Roll call, please. Mr., Commissioner Eisner seconded, is that correct?
I'm happy to, yes, I'll do second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner, Commissioner Kuyas?
I'm happy to support it. I understand we're going a little bit pricey here, but if we could, if I could ask Tom, and it doesn't need to be rushed right away, somehow we could just share a scheduled maintenance of some of the, you know, the roads in town with the, the street sweepers, or a maintenance where you have a list of certain days that are covered, the roads?
Yeah. Excuse me, yeah, we have a schedule. We also have GPS on our, on sweepers, so we can go every day and track exactly where they went.
If we can get the board that list of when they're in the different areas of town and where they're at?
Yeah, we have that scheduled, too, yes.
Yeah, because I, I get frustrated when, you know, residents will come up to us and say, we don't see the street sweeper. Well, I haven't seen the street sweeper in front of my house since I was a kid. That's because I was always at home when I was a kid, so, you know. We just want to be able to have a rebuttal to say, hey, here's a street sweeper, these are, you know, certain days, it's coming by your neighborhood and, and getting the job done, so that's, that's all I request.
Also follow up our mapping, it's right online. We go and say it was in front of your house, whatever day it may be, exactly what times.
Just get that, get that to the board. Get that to me to send to the board.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, all right, I don't have any questions. And so, are there any comments? No comments? If I could get a motion?
Motion approved, yes.
And a second? Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Okay. So, let's go to the attorney services. We've got three of them. A is approved release of requests for proposals for city attorney rebid. City Manager Lacorius.
Yes, I, yes, we've redone, I've, I've, Janina, go over the new bid we're ready to send out.
Okay, so, I took from the last RFP that we sent out and implemented some of the suggestions that came out of the board after the process. And I just wanna, I'll just highlight a few, and if there are any other recommendations that you don't see that I left off, please let me know. The first was kinda try to provide some kind of, um, we wanna kinda see them in action, so we're asking for an internet link or some kind of website address to a minimum of three meetings that they've actually had to participate in, whether it's a quasi judicial, or a reading, or interpretation of rules, so we're asking for that. We're also providing the actual schedule of all the board meetings, and they will be required to fill in exactly who will attend each meeting at the times and the dates. We're asking for a little bit more information on their experience of doing the contracts, what they've done in the past twelve months. We're asking, you know, like, what's the average time to handle certain matters from start to finish? And, you know, maybe they could give us a, an idea. We're also requesting that, well, we're not requesting, but we're highlighting again that if they cannot make the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, that they do have the option to change that or propose the first and third. We're also, I don't think I have it on here, but if, if a firm chooses to do kind of a joint venture or subcontract for other attorneys, you know, where, you know, they're more than welcome to propose that and provide the agreement they have with the other attorneys. And we're asking that during the interview part, anyone that could possibly represent the city, they bring to the interview. And one of the slight changes at the end was, once we get the proposals in, that the board, any of the board members individually can contact the references or any of the firms to validate anything that they've provided us. And from there, I'll turn it back over to the, the board, and if you have any other suggestions or recommendations that I missed, please let me know.
Thank you. Let's go to public comments on this. Are there any public comments on this particular item? Okay, Mr. Jumper, are there any public comments concerning the RFP of City Attorney Services?
And there's no one in the queue at this time.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any questions?
I'm good with this, thanks.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, thanks for the changes. I think they're, they make sense for what we're looking for as a board, based on the past discussions. One of the things that I did have a question about is, so if there's more than three applicants for this, the procurement team would shortlist them based on a set of criteria. Am I reading that correctly?
I don't shortlist. The board will shortlist, so say we get five, five submittals, I'll send them all out to you. You rank them, and then from your rankings, I'll determine which made the top three, and give that back to you before I send it out, and say, here's the top three out of all of your rankings, here's who would make the shortlist.
Okay.
But if we only get four, then there's no, there's really no point to shortlist. I mean, four to three is an acceptable shortlist.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna make sure, because number three talked about that.
Oh, okay, I will adjust it.
So, the top three law firms will be required, so, I just, if there's some flexibility there, I just wanna make sure that it's understood. Thanks for bringing this back and working on this.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner? Commissioner Kuyas?
Just, thank you for the changes, and if I could ask, Janina or City Manager, just try to look at different avenues in posting this request, this RFP, and, and try to hit some of the biggest firms and municipal government there is, and that's my only request. Thank you.
That is on my list, yes.
Lewis, I have a couple of questions on the, on the RFP concerning the provide an internet link website address to a minimum of three current or past city publicly recorded meetings. Is that the attorney that would be sitting with us, I guess, for example? And the city attorney services would also be, not with just us, but with the various boards as well. And for me personally, I don't think I'd need to have three videos of the same attorney. I, I would rather have a video of each, a video of each of the attorneys that we would be, that would be utilized in whatever capacity, whether it's sitting here at the DAAS, or P and Z Board, Board of Adjustment, or, or something. I mean, I'm, I'm a pretty quick study of seeing how that person operates over a two or three hour meeting that would satisfy me, but I also wanna make sure that whatever other attorney that they would be proposing for city attorney services, we have a look at as well from the P and Z perspective, so that's number one. And then the other thing too is, I was kinda curious, the average cycle time per matter, the time it takes to handle a legal matter from beginning to end, is that something that you got from somewhere that...
It was. I was doing a little bit of research on different things that you may wanna look at. We don't have to include it, but it might be something that might interest you if it's a litigation matter, or something that occurs, like maybe it's a, an arbitration matter that we ask them to handle, or just a...
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure, you know, I know it's, it's, it's kind of an innocuous sort of thing, and sometimes things go well, sometimes they don't go well, and, but it's okay to include that, I guess. The one thing I, I don't wanna wind up doing is, is making some of this stuff so challenging to answer that we discourage applicants as well, so I'm not, you know, for me, if this is something that you've seen in a number of RFPs, I, I think it's fair enough to leave it in there. If it's something that may sound like an, you know, a good idea, may have picked it up in one, but several others that you've looked at don't include something like this, I'm not so sure that we would need that either, so, that would be my only observation here, so.
Mayor, if I could, I've never seen that before.
You've never seen it before?
Uh, it, because it's exactly what you said, which is, I mean, I could, I could tell you a situation that, that was resolved real quickly, and then there's others, I mean, they all go on their own.
It goes on for a couple of years. I, I understand that.
And this position isn't really for litigation. It's, so, would you be more handling, how long does it take somebody to draft a contract? You know, I'm, I mean, I think...
Right.
For this position, that's more important.
Yeah.
Uh, turning something around on a contract, turning around an opinion letter, things like that.
Right.
If we've got consensus, the rest of the board on those two things you mentioned, we have consensus on that for her?
To, to take that out?
That one and the first, the first item you mentioned.
Make the change on the first item, yeah. I mean, we can include that in the motion if you want, to accept it with the condition that we eliminate the one as far as...
Eliminate the one, and then only want one for the, one video for each?
One for each of the attorneys and...
Make, to make that approval when you, when you go to, for the motion, to put that in there, to adjust.
Okay, that's all I have as far as the observations, but thank you, Ms. Lewis. I know it's, uh, it's a, it's a difficulty to try and get something like this out and published.
She's done a great, she's done a great job, watching her through all the processes, and she's done a great job. She worked very hard.
A great job and a lot of patience putting it together.
Yes, a lot of patience.
All right. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve with, without, or excluding the average cycle time per matter, the time it takes to handle a legal matter from beginning to end, and to only provide a minimum of one internet link and website address.
For each attorney that would...
For each attorney.
That would be utilized in city, in the city boards and things.
Second?
Yes, that was the second, Commissioner Carr? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Okay, now, item B is the, trying to get all this stuff screwed up. Award RFP number two three zero zero four zero dash P dash JL, litigation attorney services agreement. And that agreement would be with Mr. Salzman sitting to my right. Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, so for this particular award, we went back to Yuna Salzman Jensen. We basically already had their proposal in hand, what they suggested, and what the board came back with was that they were willing to do the hourly rate. The hourly rate proposed was one seventy-five, so that's what we agreed upon.
Okay. Public comments. Are there any public comments concerning the litigation attorney services? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
And there is no one in the queue at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commission comments, Vice Mayor Lunt. Oh, hang on a second, just before we get into that. Mr. Salzman, if I may ask you to give us a, um, on to Ms. Lewis's point, I remember in your RFP was like six thousand, a retainer of about six thousand a month, is that correct?
Right, we would, well, and I think when I talked to the board, we just pulled a number out of our hat, based on, so that is not the number. It's just straight at a, at a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour.
And that was also based, you're okay with that, based on the amount of litigation that you saw right now?
Right, and, and again, I don't see a lot, there's not a lot of litigation going on.
Okay, now, the other thing too is, is I want us to think about this. I went back and listened to the October eleventh public meeting where we got this approved, Commissioner Carr, and there was a little bit going back between myself and Commissioner Carr as far as clarification, as far as the litigating, litigation attorney being independent of the special counsel, and that, that litigation attorney was going to focus on Anclode Harbor. So, we've got the city attorney services that are being rebid, the RFP that went out, and it may have not been written specifically with Anclode Harbor, but I, I think, as Mr. Salzman could tell you, there isn't a whole lot going on with, at least as of right now, with Anclode Harbor.
Right, that is correct.
Right, so, I, I think that the, when we do our motion, and I know you have been using, Mr. City Manager Lacorius has been using Mr. Salzman on other litigation that we have, but that was under the interim contract, right?
Interim contract for city attorney, yes.
So, and then Commissioner Carr brought up the fact that our charter says, you know, the, the city attorney's gonna be doing everything, and then I also got an opinion from another attorney, says that you could have an assistant city attorney for litigation. In other words, that would get us out of this sole thing. So, my point is, when we're approving this agreement, we need to prove it for, based on what the original motion was to go out, we need to approve it for a very specific purpose. To me, I don't, it, it, it's up to the commission with what they wanna do, but if we approve the litigation attorney services agreement, as it was, the motion was made, it would be for Anclode Harbor. There isn't a whole lot going on. I, I guess Mr. Salzman would be okay for that, but it doesn't solve Mr., or City Manager Lacorius's thing with some of the other lawsuits that we've got going on that are not part of the Florida League of Cities, right?
It, it would under the temporary, it would...
You wanna continue that?
I can continue, I mean, my idea was to continue those services under the temporary insurance.
Then that solves it, okay.
Mayor, sorry, did the motion we made was specific? If I could address that one issue that, that was asked about city attorney being the one who has to defend everything?
Right.
And the charter language. While the charter language isn't that clear, I want, I want the commission to understand that, as a matter of fact, you have, if, if you followed the charter language the way it's read, you couldn't even have your insurance company provide you an attorney, so that, when we've looked at these, and I did some research on it, not a lot, but I did some research on it, and as you're well aware, that a lot of times under the, under the city attorney, you get a law firm. You can get a city attorney, you can have them contract with another group, and that falls under city attorney. There is nothing, and while your charter and your code basically are hand in hand in language, there's nothing that prevents you from having multiple city attorneys, which is what you've done in the past.
For different times, yeah.
Because otherwise, as I said, then the league couldn't provide you an, an attorney. Your city attorney would have to provide you all the insurance defense, or they'd have to oversee everything, and that's certainly not the past practice here.
Okay.
So, I, I think you're okay with what you're doing.
No, that's fine, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we understood what we were approving tonight is for a litigation attorney for the Anclode Harbor.
That wasn't my understanding.
I, but that's what the motion was when...
I, I believe the, I may be confused, but the RFP was for litigation attorney. For any litigation, it wasn't covered by insurance.
That was my understanding.
That was my understanding.
And if that's the case, then that's the motion we make, but you go back to your motion for October eleventh, it was very specific, 'cause I, I was a little confused because I, I wanted, we haven't had a separate litigation attorney. The only reason we've decided to have a litigation attorney was for the independence of the special counsel, and that initially we thought maybe the special counsel would litigate anything that may have come out of that investigation, if there's anything. I'm not so sure. We'll see what happens. But the city attorney that we, has always litigated whatever issues have been, whether it's whole, house foreclosures and those that get challenged, and then we have the Florida League of Cities as our insurer. That's who is litigated for us. The independent litigation was the fact that we wanted to insulate the city attorney from Anclode Harbor's, because that seemed to be an issue, because we were using the same law firm that was dealing up here for us, advising us on Anclode Harbor. They were litigating as well on Anclode Harbor, and then also the special counsel, because they wouldn't be an independent. I'm just explaining it. The commission, as far as I'm concerned, I'm okay with it either way, as long as we need to make sure that whatever we make a motion to tonight is very clear as far as how Mr. Salzman's gonna be operating in the, you know, in the future, that's all.
The, the previous motion that was made and, and accepted, do we have a copy of that motion somewhere that we can refer to?
The minutes, the minutes.
Because I'm unsure whether it's specific to Anclode or not.
It is. I mean, I'd listened to it a couple of times, but we don't have the minutes published, and you won't have that as an official record until those, is that, I mean, that's correct, is that right, Ms. Jacobs? Yeah. So, the only thing we have right now is the video to go to.
Well, then I suggest we table this.
And that's okay. I mean, my point is, I, I just wanna clarify this, that that was the intent of the litigation attorney was for the Anclode Harbor concerned citizens, and also the Coulson case. And then Mr. Lacorius was using Mr. Salzman for other things that were coming up, as well as the Anclode Harbor, until we got a, a litigation attorney on board. If the commission wants to utilize a litigation attorney for all litigation, that's fine, but that needs to be clear. All I'm saying is that that's, we're departing from what the traditional city attorney has done in the past, that's all.
Mayor?
Yeah.
And I'd have to go back and watch the video too. I, I thought we were focusing on hiring a litigation attorney for all litigation, and then special counsel would be separate for the investigation, so that was my understanding.
That's what was mine.
You, I, I think, and maybe Mr. Salzman can help in this regard. When you take, you take the, um, and, and I guess maybe there's some advantage to doing that, but traditionally, the city attorney has not necessarily litigated the case themselves. The city attorney has utilized the litigation, you know, they've, they've gone and either subcontracted or something, a litigation attorney, 'cause they specialize in, in that court, and then there's, you know, and, and that's just the way it's worked. In Trask Dagnall, they, Mr. Trask was... And Trask, Dagnall, they, Mr. Trask was our city attorney. Mr. Dagnall was a litigator, I would suspect is his background, or, and he litigated. And all that legal work was contained within Trask, Dagnall. When we wound up getting into these emails and things like that, we recognized that that may not be too good to have a city attorney involved if this Anclode Harbor litigation was going to persist because of the same reasons. In other words, the city attorney involved in the Anclode Harbor litigation for the same reasons why, you know, we, we had the issue with the Anclode Harbor being litigated by the, by the city attorney. So we wanted to make that independent until the special counsel got completed. And then it was the same thing with the, um, with the special counsel, there was some discussion of using the special counsel. I think that was Commissioner Carr's original assumption, if you look at the video. And I said, no, then the special counsel wouldn't be independent, that's why we needed a separate litigator. But I just wanted to point that out to the commission tonight. I'm, we're spending a lot, a lot of time on this, but I just want to make sure that y'all understood that. When you go back to the, because I, I just want to make sure we don't have an issue with this later as far as how we hire, how we utilize our attorneys in the future. And that whoever we hire as a city attorney, you know, I, I don't know what their sense is going to be if they're not involved in or having any say on the litigation, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Mayor, if I could respond, because having looked at everything that you all provided. When I applied, it was my understanding, as was just mentioned, that the RFP was for litigating, that you were going to have a separate litigation attorney for, to cover all litigation that wasn't covered by the league. That's how the RFP came out. You were going to have a city attorney that was going to cover all the other things that a normal city attorney does. I mean, is it unique to this city? It could be, but you have a lot of meetings, for example. And one of the issues that came up when I applied for a city attorney is, who's going to cover the meetings that I can't cover? Right? And so, my, the way it came across to me was that you needed to make sure that whoever you had as city attorney was either going to be a firm or an association of attorneys so that all meetings could be covered and could deal with the daily things, because you have a lot of issues. The litigation attorney, the way I understood it, was just separate for all litigation that would not be covered. And, and the only thing that would, I would tell you is that, yeah, I'm a little unique in that I'm a litigator who, who also serves as a city attorney. A lot of times you'll have somebody like Mr. Trask, who only does city attorney and doesn't litigate. And he'll tell you that he doesn't. So, they happen to have that in its firm, you could do it by, I've seen it by association also. But, but clearly, my understanding was that it was for litigation of any matter that wasn't covered by the league.
And that's okay, I just wanted to make...
I just want to, that, that was just how I thought all the applicants saw it.
And that's may have been the way we did the RP, and that's fine. And I just want to make sure that, that when we move forward, that's the understanding, and we make that part of the record, that that's the understanding. And that's all I wanted to say.
My understanding reflects Andrew's understanding of it. I thought he was going to do all litigation, and the city attorneys were going to do board coverage and, and...
Well, when we, when we did the selection, if you go back and we did, and you, we did the selection, if you recall, I wasn't convinced that, given the amount of litigation that was ongoing, and this was specific to Anclode Harbor, that we needed a separate litigation attorney. This was when we did our selection, the litigation attorneys. But I went ahead and went along with that, just because this is what the commission wanted to do. And I think, as Mr. Salzman also made the observation, there just wasn't a whole lot of litigation going on right now. And so, you know, we had the Anclode Harbor, and what's the three cases going on right now? Three other cases that are very minor.
Yeah, I know what we're doing.
So anyway, I just wanted to point that out to you all. And I think that was the basis of backing off that, the, the retainer approach and going straight to the...
Right, it's just, and I think I've said it, it makes no sense to pay a retainer.
Is there a record showing that Mr. Salzman is doing all of our litigation? Is that my understanding?
Currently, I'm handling any litigation that's not handled by the league. But I, as I've updated the commission, really, I think there is...
Okay, our litigation that's not handled by the League of Cities, et cetera, is what I meant.
Yeah, there just isn't a lot. I think if you saw the last, was it the email that you sent out? That there was a whole lot going on with Concerned Citizens right now either?
No, there's not.
Okay. But that's all, that, that's, I just want to make sure that that was clear to everybody. And when we make the motion, if we can include that in there, that that's what the intent is to utilize Mr. Salzman for all litigation, that's fine. So, I mean, I, I just want to point that out. So that was my comments, right? Help me out a little bit. So we did through the public, we did the public comments, commission comments, and now we need a motion and a second? Do you have comments?
Yeah, I think we got to Vice Mayor, and I don't think it got passed that.
I didn't pass you, okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So a couple of things...
Oh, yes, right, you're right. I wanted to inject based on what you said, I apologize, go ahead.
Yes, okay, just a couple of things in the, in the agreement itself. To note, there's this public meeting held on blank 2022. That date's going to need to be updated, and also from a rate standpoint, there's 175 dot zero zero. It's also had a cross out through it, just from a formatting standpoint. So if someone could actually write out $175 per hour, that would also, I think, be best practices. Just so there's no doubt if there's a copy of this, or if it gets back from blue to, to, to the black, that you understand it to $175 per hour.
We'll clear that.
Mr. Salzman's working for free.
Well, technically, we don't have it signed yet, right? And then the full intent is that, my understanding is, and it may have gotten convoluted in our last, when we approved it, but the intent was to hire him as a full litigation for all aspects.
Okay.
I'm sort of confused, but that's okay. So, would then the special counsel take the litigation on that? Okay, so you're handling that, I got you, okay.
Mr. Salzman's handling it, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was curious, so I have no further questions on it, I am okay now.
Yeah, the whole idea was, the special counsel's going to take eight months. And the whole idea was to get the city attorney onboard. That was my premise, to get the city attorney onboard, then we would deal with the litigation attorney. But then we went ahead and, you know, awarded the RP to Mr. Salzman. And we're here, and I, I just, at my, trying to cross Ts and dotted Is, I wanted to look at the record, the video record, to see exactly what we had authorized the RP to be for, so, and share that with you.
Well, it was just, it was giving me the idea that it was on a temporary basis. So I wanted to make sure that it's not on a temporary basis.
It's not a temporary basis. No, this is a permanent, and, and it is, um...
A three-year, three-year contract.
Two years with one renewal. But it could be terminated. Well, Ms. Lewis, we put that in there, didn't we, terminated with what, was it a 90-day notice, or?
Yes, 16 to 90 days.
You're right, Mayor, two years.
Commissioner Cuyas.
I'd just like our vote to be for all litigation services.
Okay. Any other, go ahead, City Manager LaCource.
Two things, one, can we make sure we change the signature block? Because, because this involves Anclode Harbor too. We need to change it to the, to the approval for the, for the mayor to sign, instead of the city manager signing. And I was looking for, where is that term? I don't see the 90 days in here. I know this contract's got to be fixed up and formalized, and then before you sign, but help me, Janina, with the, the 90 days, I don't see it.
It's not on there.
Could be. We should add that, that should be in there.
And then you have another issue where it's five and five. The term and termination is five, and insurance is number five as well too. So there's a typo, or formatting issue there.
I don't think anybody's found it.
The number five is a term and termination, that's where that would, that's where it should be.
But it's not there.
No, it just talks about this agreement is terminable at will by either party.
No, we did not have it in the agreement, but it is in the RFP, which is attachment to the agreement, but I can put it in the final.
I mean, the whole thing, it needs to be cleaned up, and, and this is, the form is used, but it's got to have all those fill-ins that everybody talked about, so I just want to make sure that...
Yes, we have to correct the dates.
And, and he can make sure everything's in the thing approved.
Well, as acting city attorney, I'll, I'll help that.
Yes, yes, and your capacity there, yes, thank you.
And the 90 days was because we couldn't live with, was it the 30 days was the original approach?
No, that's what we're saying, it's supposed to be in there, it was in the RFP.
I mean, Mayor, I think 90 days makes sense to have on, on there for a clear, obviously you can see how much of an issue it's been for the termination notice, that 90 days I think needs to be in there.
Yeah, the 90 days, Ms. Lewis said that that had to, I don't know whether she said it publicly, but she said it to me that the 30 days was what the original, wasn't it Trask, Dagnall was 30 days, right?
Right, that's unacceptable, that's not an exception for you all to have somebody...
It was 30 days with an additional 30 days if everybody agreed, but there was any agreement on that, so, okay.
All, all attorneys would be 90 days from here forward, yes.
Can I make a motion? Yeah, can I make a motion to approve this?
Yes.
With adding the termination language of a 90-day notice by either party. And then the Salzman group will be handling all litigation services for the city of Tarpon Springs.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. All right, now the last one. Is the special county, I'm special county, special counsel attorney services agreement, item 12C. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, this is the special counsel attorney. I spoke with Carlton Fields, Adam Schwartz, and he has put together an engagement letter. When I spoke to him, they also agreed to waive some of the, like, the travel costs. The fees you do see in there are the fees for the attorneys. They are also, in his engagement letter, he also needs to send me an updated engagement letter. They agreed to remove the, they wanted a prepayment. And they've agreed to waive that for us, so there's no prepayment required, which would kind of be a retainer. They're not asking for that. Second is the payment terms under section E in his, the engagement letter terms. They're going to remove the 15 days to resolve questions. They're going to change that to 30 days because I had to explain to him that, you know, if we get the bill at the end of the month, we don't have a board until the second Tuesday of the month. That gives me like 14 days to get something to you guys, then to get it resolved. So they're going to extend that to 30 days. And then, they did agree to the cap of 160. And that is all that I have on that particular contract. I mean, other than this one, the agreement will have to be updated as well with the signatures, the years and all the terms, but yes.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Are there any public comments? Mr. Delakis, you've been sitting there patient.
Well, Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue, I wasn't going to comment on the other one because it seemed pretty explanatory that it was for litigation services. But when I made my public comments, you made a statement with regards to getting an update. All I heard from you asking Mr. Salzman, there's not much going on. Well, we know there's not much going on because the court denied your petition. So I would have thought at this point in the meeting, or somewhere along the line, the board would either be directing Mr. Salzman to file an appeal, or making a decision as to whether to file an appeal, or to determine as to how to proceed to go forward. So we're in the, kind of in the dark here as to what the city is planning to do next with regards to your request for a stay pending the results of the investigation, where that stands. And I know it's tied to this with the Carlton Fields, based on getting your report back from your investigation. But in the meantime, as I mentioned, we are going to be filing an appeal to the second district. And it would be wise if you are going to continue your previous determination of filing a stay that at least you advise the second district court of what has occurred with regards to special counsel and your investigation. So, it, just sort of trying to get a little clarity as to where the city of Tarpon Springs will proceed with regards to their particular motion being denied. Thank you.
No, thanks for bringing that up. We'll try and pick that up at, at the end of the meeting with comments. And that shouldn't take too long from now. Any other public comments? Mr. Jomp, are there any remote access comments?
And there is no one in the queue at this time.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Lund, do you have any?
There's no 90-day term and termination in this contract either. Do we need that, or it's at will right now?
This contract, okay, in all of the RFPs, they do get attached to the agreement, and they become part of the agreement with those terms in there. But this particular special counsel attorney is pretty much as long as we need it.
Yeah, I understand, but what if they decide they don't want to do this anymore, and they just leave? And then we have to get another special counsel, or?
Yeah.
Yes, you would have to go back out and repeat the entire process.
That are entirely at will, walk out the door.
We just, the answer is yes, and I'm not sure what the circumstances would be for that to happen, but you never know. But the answers would be yes.
The problem, I'm sorry, the problem Vice Mayor would be if you kept them on for 90 days, and they wanted to terminate anyway, they wouldn't do anything.
Understood, makes sense. I have no other questions, that was...
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. So, from a term standpoint, it's a tier contract with an additional one-year renewal option. That seems much longer than anticipated, I forget how many months it was, but I think the goal was to have it wrapped up within
Eight months.
Eight months or so.
Yeah, that's what their estimate was as well.
So, to have a term in there maybe of a year at most, but then the goal should be eight months to have it wrapped up. Really should be a, in the agreement itself. And then there's, there's terms, there's a lot of terms and conditions, standard terms and conditions that Carlton Fields has. I'm assuming they're wanting those added in the agreement as well too.
Yes.
Hopefully, our city attorney has been able to review those. And then also, the, the items that you called out as well too, hopefully those are called out and in an exhibit somewhere. We're not going to be traveling for, or not going to be charging for traveling, et cetera. So just a couple additional cleanup items, I think, in this area of this pending agreement.
Should be spelled out in the new agreement that they're, right?
I do want to say though, on the, the length of the term, the reason we went for the two years was and, and, you know, it's strictly the board's decision, but if something else occurs in the findings of this matter that then precludes to another situation that you may need them for a longer period of service, we wouldn't have to keep renewing their contract. So I'm just putting that back out there for you.
I just want, it just seemed odd, that's all, based on that.
We can, we can...
Yeah, I...
Mayor, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting till 12:10.
Till when?
12:10.
12:10, that's good. Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Any other comments? Commissioner Eisner?
Yes. Hi, Janina, I wanted to ask you, the way I understood it, 160,000 was an estimate. It wasn't a lock-in. So are you saying now that they're locking in to that being the max?
It's a not to exceed.
Yes, well, that's what that means, not to exceed.
That is what Carlton Fields is capping it at. They're agreeing not to exceed 160,000 dollars.
Okay, because I also thought that they, in the discussion, when Mr. Schwartz was up, he had said something about negotiating the, his rate. That was not in the discussion, I presume.
No, kept the rates as is. And I believe that was part of the terms... And I believe that was part of the terms that he sent over.
Do we need to move the time?
12:10, 12:10. We've gone to 12:10. We're all getting a little punchy.
Was that brought up at all?
Yes, I tried. I discussed with him. I said, let's talk about rates. I was trying to get the rates lowered and also trying to get, if he's going to have two attorneys in the room at one time, one rate for one attorney, but they did not waiver on those.
But yet, when he was here, he did discuss that.
What he said he would agree to eliminating was some of the travel fees and some of the incidental costs.
Okay. I just, I heard something different, that's all.
Okay, well, I can, I can go back and look and when I speak with him again and get the updates, we can try one more time. But for now, this is what he gave me back.
Well, I just remember his, it was just a guesstimate. Because it was my question. I asked how much he thinks this could come out to. And he said, yeah, I would say about $160,000. And that being a guesstimate turns into a hard figure.
That's, that's just a cap. I mean, that doesn't mean they're going to spend all that money. It'll depend on the time and effort and the hours spent for each individual piece that they're doing.
Well, at $1,000 an hour or abouts, that 160 will come before you know it. That's all. I just thought there was going to be some room for that as well. But if you'd like to relay that message to me, I would be happy to.
I will, I will get back with Adam. Yes.
No, I was going to ask the question about the two attorneys working together, so we got that straightened out. They've done some negotiating with Janina, and we know this is going to cost money, guys. We're in deep at this point. Let's, you know, get this search going and put it behind us so we can move forward with city business. Thanks, guys.
I, yeah, I mean, bottom line for me is that we've done an awful lot of talking about this. I think that there's a, you know, there's always a lot of questions that came out of the last two years. And the only way we're going to get answers to these questions is to get somebody like Carlton Fields to look into it. If we would have gotten something with a lesser capability, I think that at the end of the day, at the end of the investigation, if we were to call it that, there still may be questions as far as whether everything was done. And I think that, I don't want to say you get what you pay for, but it's, it's something that we need to do thoroughly. We need to do it once. Put it, whatever happens, if something, more work comes out of it, okay. If no work comes out of it, we learned something out of it, we get policies in place. And then just, I think the city is going to be much, much, much better. Any way you look at it, the city's going to be much better off.
I agree.
Okay. With, are there any other comments?
There's, there's no more going back and negotiating prices. We're agreeing to this and we're moving forward, right?
Ms. Lewis can ask, and I'm not sure what the answer would be other than, you know, it is what it is, so. What you're saying is if, if they don't, I mean, I don't want to, is there any more that you want to get to in that regard?
I'm, I'm ready to be set on the price and just move forward.
Okay, that's what you're saying. Okay, yeah, I agree with that, too. I, you can ask, but, you know, the idea is to get on with what we need to do. We've got a special session workshop on January 17th.
Next week, next Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, so they need to be there.
Yes, they will be there and they will go into more in-depth about this engagement letter and what's.
Five attorneys and six paralegals.
Okay, all righty. If there's no other comment, we have a motion, not yet, right? Motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve as written. Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius.
Yes. All right, it's 12:04. We're going to go to comments right now. Major Trill, anything?
Epiphany went well. Thanks for everybody that came out and helped out. MLK Day Parade is the 14th, Saturday at 10, 11 a.m. Although the day observance on the 16th, our parade is on the 14th. Make sure you come out to that. And also during this time, we've had a lot of off-duty, special events, all the stuff that goes on during the holidays. Want to give a shout out to Sergeant Mathis, who did a great job with that epiphany, everything else, the Christmas parade and everything else that's going on. And also a shout out to all the officers that have worked these details, the staff these details, to make sure it's safe, that are working extra when they're, during the holidays as well. So mad props to them as well.
Thank you. Mr. Salzman, I'm going to ask if you can give us a summary on the litigation and what our options are as far as the stay pending.
As, as the board knows, the stay was denied. At this point, until we have some actually concrete findings, I'm not recommending that we refile the stay. It's, we don't have grounds to appeal it right now. It would be nothing more than useless. So I want to, I'm hoping that we'll get some information from special counsel. As soon as we get that information, then I can have grounds to file a stay. Because the way, and when I did the research on it, from a factual standpoint, we notified the court of the investigation that was going on. There's not law necessarily to support that until we find something to give them a reason why this will affect the litigation. It's speculative right now, so.
Would it be a refiling or would it be an appeal?
We can file, you can file a stay at any time.
Okay, but not an appeal.
It would be new, it would be new grounds.
Okay, new grounds, okay. And as far as the litigation with the concerned citizens?
Well, if they're appealing that, you know, that stay, then that will come forward and that'll be continuing on the litigation. Other than that, there's not anything pending, other than we know that right now the developer doesn't have all their permits in place. And so they can't move forward.
But if they, but given that the, I want to, for the purpose of the commission, I don't want to run out of time. But if concerned citizens did not do anything, then our stay pending the outcome of the litigation would be moot. Is that correct?
It would be moot until we have another reason to file a stay.
Which would be, okay.
Down the road, yes. As soon as we get something from Carlton Fields.
But if concerned citizens files another action, then that stay pending the end of the legal proceedings with regard to the permits is still alive? And that if Carl, if.
If they can keep, right, if they file an, they would be filing an appeal of the denial, the rehearing and the stay.
Okay, and then if Morgan Group comes back and wants their permit, then we would have to reconvene?
Right.
As we said we would do.
Right, and we would, honestly, at this point, from a litigation standpoint, we just need to see how things play out and then bring it back before the board.
This commission.
This, this board.
All right, thank you. City Manager Lacorice?
I'll bow to the term, so, nothing.
Do nothing.
I have no comments.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt? Commissioner Carr?
Happy New Year.
No comments.
Happy New Year. The epiphany was the end of the holiday season in Tarpon Springs and time to roll up our sleeves and get back to work. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I've got, I'm hoping I can get this done in two seconds. We've got the special counsel workshop on January 17th. And also I've asked the city, actually Commissioner-elect Kuliannis approached you for being able to have a stay during that meeting as well, right?
Yes.
And so I just wanted to make that known to this commission that that would occur. That's allowable under our rules of procedure, so that, that's going to happen. The. Pardon me? The workshop on the special counsel on the 17th.
Next week on Tuesday.
He'll be a commissioner April, in April. They're in, will be onboard for most of the special.
Yeah, that's true.
So, yeah. If I can just extend it for five minutes, let me finish up here.
Motion to extend it for five minutes.
That'd be to 12:14 certain.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius.
Yes. The other thing I wanted to talk to the commission about was we, a special session on projects. If you go through the projects, say, I had a conversation with the city manager. There's a number of projects that are beginning to get a little, I've got questions on. It's getting to the point where I've got a little, I don't understand. And I think we have to have that conversation, more of a prioritization. We didn't add anything on there to allow some of these things to get out of the way. The one example I'm going to give you, if you look at your project update, the MLK Spring Boulevard intersection is 59% complete. I think if you go back and listen to some of the meetings, we got the impression that we would either be, we would have bid documents about this time. And not this time, but later in January and February. I don't see that happening with 59% design complete. And it's okay, except for the fact that we need to have that intersection done when they start putting barricades in to start working on the bridge. City manager understands that. There's another issue with Gross Avenue. We really need to come to closure on that thing. Either, you know, go out to bid again to finish the work and then sue the bond company. I have no idea. But we need to have a conversation on that, rather than just kind of sitting that and keeping it band-aided at the expense of the, of the residents. So there's several of them like that, and I want to find out whether you have an interest of having a, and I think it would be a special session, because I think we need to vote on a, on a priority, unless you think a workshop would be better.
It can be either, I was thinking workshop, but we can do it the other way.
Workshop is fine, then.
Because you'll give, it's just giving direction on things you've already approved. So, so I can listen to your direction from the workshop. And I've already prepared staff for coming tonight, and all I need is your consensus. I'll start looking for the date to do that, to send out some dates.
I want to find that out from the commission, if that's what you're, if you have an interest in doing that. Okay, so we'll do that. And then.
Not between next Tuesday and the other Tuesday, please.
The other thing, I know that a couple of you, you hear talk, you know, the, and I mentioned this to the city manager today, that the search services RP is going to close, I want to say January 15th, but it was right around that. So at some point later, we'll be looking at who the applicants were for that, those search services. I want to let you know that. That went out late November, maybe the first week in December, and.
For the city manager services, like for the city?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so I just wanted to update you on that. The, there's still a couple of ordinances that we need to get, to get to, the schedule of fees for the consultants and things like that, that I think we need to kind of get at least an idea of where we are on some of those. I know Renee's working, still working hard to get those things out. This is where we back bill or charge the applicants when we have to have consultants at the TRCs, rather than we paying for them out of our pocket. So there's a couple of these, those types of ordinances out there that we need to still bring back. Okay. Other than that, at face value, Epiphany went great. It was wonderful. No, no major issues or accidents or anything like that. It went well. I think Major Trill mentioned that there's a couple of things he's going to talk to some people about, and city manager knows that. I, you saw a letter from me. But other than that, all's well that ends well. And then we'll just move forward into the, into the new year. I wish to really thank the police department because of really helping out when it came up front and close down there at the top of the stairs. So I was really appreciative of that. And this is a new year. I'm hoping we're going to be getting some things done. We got the $2 million for the Craig, for the spring Bayou seawall. And there's some timing issues, East Orange Street, but those are all going to be the topic of conversation at the workshop.
How are we doing on dredging? Is it started yet? The dredging, 12:14.
That, yeah, that's, they're, they're laying the pipe for it right now across the roads.
I thought the pipe was already laid.
No, they still, from the last update, we should have another one in the next couple of days to send out from the last one we sent with the pipe. It's about time for the two-week, two-week update, so.
A bit behind schedule.
Okay.
Little, little behind, but.
Adjourned at 12:14.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.